April 3rd, 2019, meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. The mayor has been excused for the part of this meeting and will be joining us later and then directing the meeting herself. In the meantime, I will try and take her place. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and our closed caption for our hearing-impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications can view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go Vegas app. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the internal Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we will have available a speaker card, which you can complete and submit to the city clerk, who's right here in front of me, or in that little basket there we see are the orange cards. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen's participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has a need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see the city clerk staff. Please note, if you are parked in the parking garage across the street, a new flash parking self-validation machine is located in the foyer between council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine. If you do not have your ticket, see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Bonnie Pauli, Christ Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Yes. Let us pray. Oh Lord God, we have so much to be thankful for this day, but especially the election, the reelection of our mayor. It makes us so warm in our hearts. Let us pray. Oh God, the fountain of wisdom, whose will is good and gracious, and the whole law is truth. We beseech you to guide and bless each member of our city council assembled here today. Give each of them the spirit of wisdom and understanding, that they may discern the truth in all that they undertake. Show them your purpose in all that they do as they exercise their duties as leaders in our city. Teach us all to seek you and fill our hearts with thankfulness as we strive to serve each other. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We're going to begin our ceremonial items with the recognition of the Citizen of the Month. And the first item will be handled by Councilman Starvis Anthony. He has the honor of recognizing our Citizen of the Month.
Thank you Mayor Protem. Well, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning. Welcome to Las Vegas City Hall. Each month, as the Mayor Protem mentioned, a member of the City Council has the honor and privilege to recognize a citizen in the city of Las Vegas who's made a positive impact in our community, and we recognize that person and award them the Citizen of the Month. And today, it is my honor and pleasure to recognize Kevin O'K, President of Summerlin for the Howard Hughes Corporation, as the April 2019 Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas. Kevin, would you please come down here? Give him a nice round of applause. Kevin O'K. As I mentioned, Kevin O'K is President of Summerlin and is in charge of the southern Nevada region of the Howard Hughes Corporation. Kevin has been with the company for more than four decades. He has a distinction of being one of the longest-tenured employees of the Howard Hughes Corporation, having started his career with the company's accounting department in 1974 at the famed Desert Inn Hotel. The Howard Hughes Corporation owns, manages, and develops commercial, residential, and mixed-use real estate throughout the city of Las Vegas. They have been instrumental in transforming the western part of Las Vegas, including my ward, Ward 4, with exciting developments throughout the Summerlin community. Today, Summerlin is home to more than 100,000 residents. Summerlin began nearly 30 years ago and has played an important role in helping make Las Vegas a place to live and raise a family. Just last year, Summerlin ranked as the nation's third-biggest-selling master-planned community in the country. Under Kevin's leadership, Summerlin has opened several golf courses, including two TPC golf courses, if you know what that means, that's a big deal, and is home of the Shriners PGA Open. Further developments include parks, churches, schools, libraries, hotels, a veteran community center, and Summerlin Hospital. Over the past few years, Kevin has led the 1.6 million-square-foot retail dining and entertainment project called Downtown Summerlin. This is also the home of the practice facility for the NHL franchise of Vegas Golden Knights, the city's first professional sports team. The two newest developments include the Las Vegas Ballpark, home of the Las Vegas Aviators, the city's professional AAA baseball team of the Pacific Coast League, and affiliate with the Oakland A's, which will open next, is that Wednesday, or?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, April 9th. Okay, Tuesday. Then they have the day on Tuesday, April 9th. And Summerlin is building a Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department substation to be built at 215 and Far Hills in Ward 2 to provide public safety for the western part of the valley. On behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I want to thank you, Kevin, your leadership, and the Howard Hughes Corporation for all the vision you've had in developing Las Vegas, and I would like to name you the Citizen of the Month for the city of Las Vegas. Congratulations. And I have a plaque here for you that says Kevin O'K, Citizen of the Month, City of Las Vegas, for April, and if you go out to the corner over here, there's a digital sign, and your mug is going to be on there for the entire month of April, so you can go by and bring your family and anybody you want and take pictures out there. How's that? All right, now, a couple of words from Kevin O'K.
Well, thank you, Councilman Anthony, and greetings, Mayor Protem, City Councils, members of the City Council. Look, I've been here for 40 years. I'm kind of a low-profile guy. I don't like publicity, but this is, I'm humbled by this honor. Look, there's a lot of things going on in Summerlin, as the councilman just pointed out. He actually stole my speech here, but, you know, in six days, we're going to open up the Las Vegas Ballpark. I mean, it's state-of-the-art, it's best-in-class in terms of the facility, it's best-in-class. I think we got some pictures on the monitor, right? Yeah, there's a few pictures that we have of it. The food experience is going to be wonderful. It's a family-oriented venue. It's great for southern Nevada. It's going to be something that, it's not only baseball, but it also will include charity, community events. We'll have concerts out there, so we're going to activate that facility as much as you can. You can see, this is a better shot of it, and it gets better every day. As I said, six days, it'll, you know, everyone will be able to see it. We hope everybody takes time out to come out to the ballpark. It's all about family, and that's what the master plan in Summerlin is about. But really, it's about southern Nevada, and we're very proud to deliver this project to the community, so it's very special to us. It has amenities from, you know, berm seating to luxury suites, to you can sit in the pool, have a drink, you know, whatever you'd like to do. There's something for everybody, price range for everybody, so we're very proud of this project for the entire community. That's not the only thing that's going on in Summerlin, but it kind of overshadows everything else. As the councilman said, we've got a metro police station opening up in, at the end of this year, which is at Far Hills at the 215, and we're excited about that. We've got apartments opening up in a couple months, new apartments right across from downtown Summerlin, office building that we just completed that's 100% occupied now, and just a lot of things going on. So, this is a rendition of the, a rendering of the metro police station. Again, that'll be great for the community. The next slide is, this is just one of the parks. This is Fox Hills Park, probably the most popular park in Summerlin. It's crowded on weekends, you, it's hard to find a place to park, but it's got climbing apparatuses. It's a little different than most of the parks that are programmed for baseball and basketball. This is really climbing apparatuses, it's got bungee, not bungee, but zip lines, frisbee golf, things like that, so it's a very popular park. But it's interesting, I, like I said, I've been with four ownership groups of Summerlin, and actually, we started in the city, and the very first project in Summerlin was a middle school. The mayor isn't here, but she was back, she was very much part of that process 30 years ago in starting the school, and it looks like we're going to end in the city. The next slide, if you can, this is really, this is the undeveloped area of Summerlin. We still have 5,000 acres remaining to be developed. It all happens to be, most of it happens to be in the city. So we've got another 15 to 20 years. We've had a wonderful relationship with the city over the 30 years. We've still got another 15, 20 years of that relationship to go, and we've been very pleased with the response that we've gotten from the city and the staff throughout all these years. So, I want to thank everybody for this opportunity, and again, thank you very much for the honor. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin, but I think the most important thing is, on behalf of the residents that live in Ward 4 and Ward 2 in the city of Las Vegas that have decided to make Summerlin their home, I know they love to live up there because it's a great place to raise a family and walk your dogs and take your kids to the park, and it's just, it's just a world-known place to live and work and take care of your family. So, thanks for developing a community that allows people to do that. So, thank you very much. Congratulations. Kevin O'K.
Well, come on this side. Let's come on this side.
We don't need to move.
Chase is here. Chase loves to move, Cody. Are we getting in front of you?
Chase us. And next on the agenda is the recognition of the 2020 Census. And it's my pleasure to invite Arlene Alvarez, a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau, to join us. Every 10 years, Americans are asked to participate in the census, and I cannot overstate the importance of this. It truly is a chance to shape our future as a city, because many federal funding opportunities are tied directly to census information. So I would urge all Las Vegans to participate in the 2020 Census. And Arlene, where are you? Would you come up here, please? I want to ask you to tell us a little bit about how we can participate, but first, I want to present to you this proclamation making April 3rd, 2019, Census Day in the city of Las Vegas. And then I'm going to ask, where is my proclamation? Here. And this is for you to have. And it's from our council declaring today Census Day.
Well, thank you so much. It means a lot to me and all the work that I'm.
Yeah. It sounds a little, you know, staid. It isn't very exciting or sexy, Census Day, but I'll tell you, it means a lot. It means a lot as far as the monies from the federal government are concerned, and even eventually as far as the breaking up of our, the distribution of the wards within our city. So, please, everybody, anybody listening and watching this, and everybody here, be sure to make sure everybody you know gets down on the census. Here you are, Arlene.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Tarkinian, and the council. Thank you so much for your commitment to the census and for our community. That's really what this commitment is about. Historically, the decennial census is the largest peacetime mobilization of the entire country, and the 2020 census will be no different. In preparation, and in my role as partnership specialist with the Community Partnership and Engagement Program, I have been working really closely with community leaders and the city of Las Vegas, particularly with your planning department, to establish the Southern Nevada Complete Count Committee of stakeholders that are involved in our community to ensure a complete count. Additionally, one of the Census Bureau's primary goals is to recruit for the many hundreds of jobs that will be available in our state. It'll be close to 2,000 jobs, and most of those jobs will be in southern Nevada, because our state will only have two area census offices, and both of them will be in southern Nevada. One will be in North Las Vegas and one in the city of Las Vegas. So, these are all great opportunities to get involved and make a difference in the community. Both are scheduled to open this summer. The greatest impact of the 2020 census, however, is long-term. The census will determine funding, as Councilwoman Tarkinian mentioned, programs like Title I schools, transportation projects, hospitals, schools, Medicaid especially, CHIP for children, among so many other, billions of dollars of federal funding is distributed to our state based on this funding. For our state, it's specifically over $6 billion a year, and the census determines that funding for 10 years, so we can't go back. Once the count is done, that's it, and so that will, you know, we're stuck with our numbers and with our funding. The census also determines the apportionment in the House of Representatives. Nevada gained one congressional seat in the 2010 census, and while we're not at risk of losing our seat or gaining one, our state's legislative school and ward districts will be realigned, as Councilwoman Tarkinian previously mentioned. There are many other benefits to an accurate and complete census count. The phrase "data is gold" comes to mind. The data that the census releases to the public is accessible to businesses, government, officials, nonprofits, for them to do market research, policy proposals, and grant proposals. In cases of emergency, census data is also consulted by emergency response teams. Once again, the benefits of an accurate and complete count are essential, and on behalf of the U.S. Census Bureau, I thank you very much for this proclamation, and my information is up here, so if you'd like to reach out to me, ask me how you can get involved, I'll be more than happy to tell you and direct you to, however it is that we can work together. I'm especially looking for community leaders or businesses that also want to get involved, because, you know, everything is interrelated really in our community, so thank you very much once again. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
You're going to take a picture?
We're going to take a picture.
Try and get it where people will see it, so that they will do this.
Yes.
A lot of the things that we get that are extras in the city, we're able to do because of federal funds.
We'll come this way. Yeah, that's okay, we can leave the phone. Okay. Ready? Yes.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
We can help you in any way, let us know.
Oh, of course. I'll be in touch.
I wanted to have my ward moved a little. I kept trying to get some of those Summerlin parks into my ward, but we didn't quite get enough people in the older ward one, and I saw Councilman Coffin looking at the beautiful Summerlin parks, and I knew what he was thinking. I knew what you were thinking, yes, okay. And then, we'd like to have today, and you know, I don't know how we do it at UNLV and here in the city, we're always winning these national awards. Just shows the enthusiasm that's in Las Vegas. So today, we're going to recognize the UNLV Cheer Team and the Rebel Girls and Company. Councilwoman Fiori will recognize these two groups of athletes. These groups, remember, have won national championships, each of them. Councilwoman?
Thank you. This is so exciting. Look at our beautiful Rebel Girls. Yes, well, they're gorgeous, too. Yeah, just come all the way, yeah. This is beautiful. Look at you guys. So today, we have some very amazing people in the audience, and now they're up here with us, and I am excited to be recognizing the UNLV Cheer Team and Rebel Girls and Company for their recent national championships. At the start of this year, the UNLV Cheer Team traveled to the 2019 UCA College Cheer Leading Championships and earned their first Division 1A Team National Championship. UNLV Cheer beat out Mississippi, Bowling Green, California, Minnesota, San Diego State, and New Mexico, taking home the gold for UNLV. Along with the Cheer Team's success, the Rebel Girls and Company earned two national titles at the Division 1A Hip-Hop and Game Day categories at the 2019 College Dance Team National Championships, also held in Orlando, Florida. Not only did they win this year, this is the second year in a row that they have earned a national championship. Yes. And leading these teams is Desiree Reed Francis, Savannah Sibley, and Marcia DeCastroverdi. Can I have the coaches, are they here? Where are they? Here they are. I would like for you guys to say a few words about your teams.
Hi, my name is Brandy Slade, and I coach the UNLV Rebel Girls and Company. These student athletes are just dedicated and hard-working, and we are so proud to represent the city of Las Vegas year after year nationally, and we thank you guys all for your support. And thank you for this recognition. My name is Savannah, I coach the UNLV Cheer Team. Thank you, council, for this recognition. It's such an honor. I'm so excited for the girls, so proud of them, the hard work, the dedication that they put into our program. I can't thank my coaching staff enough for backing me up and, you know, having the support of my decisions, and of course, representing our university, so thank you again.
So, thank you, and each and every one of our girls and boys have their own certificate from the city, signed by our mayor and all of our council, so each and every one of you have your own certificate, and we just thank you guys for being so beautiful, so great, and bringing home the gold.
I just wanted to have a very interesting story. I tried to meet with all the candidates who were running in Ward 1 to take my place, and one of them I met who was a very fine candidate, I thought. Anyway, he told me he was a cheerleader at UNLV during the time my husband was coaching there, and I said, "Oh, you like cheerleading?" And he said, "Oh, yeah." He said, "There was a really nice girl on the team, and I want..." Anyway, that's how far you go, girls. I just want you to know, lots of guys out there.
Thank you.
Those are nice medals, too. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us.
I got to talk close. That was nice, a nice intervention of pulchritude. I used that word the other day, and I had to explain to my grandson, a college graduate, that it meant beauty. So thank you for all the beauty that you brought here today, and thank you for your great work for the teams. And now, for the final ceremonial item, I want to discuss a very important issue. I don't know if you've watched TV recently where you've seen the ad of a mother that shows her little boy swimming in the pool with his two sisters who obviously adore him, and he adores them. He's got his little wings on, and they're in the pool. These are family films, and you can feel the love and the strength of that love between each family member. The movie goes on to show, however, that one day, the mother thought the child was upstairs, the father thought the child was someplace else. She couldn't find the child, and then they realized the child had gone through the doggy door, through the doggy door, to the pool outside, was still alive, but after two, three days, passed away. These little tiny things, we who are parents know, that one second, that...
That was nice, a nice intervention of pulchritude. I used that word the other day, and I had to explain to my grandson, a college graduate, that it meant beauty. So thank you for all the beauty that you brought here today, and thank you for your great work for the teams. And now, for the final ceremonial item, I want to discuss a very important issue. I don't know if you've watched TV recently where you've seen the ad of a mother that shows her little boy swimming in the pool with his two sisters who obviously adore him, and he adores them. He's got his little wings on, and they're in the pool. These are family films. And you can feel the love and the strength of that love between each family member. The movie goes on to show, however, that one day, the mother thought the child was upstairs, the father thought the child was someplace else. She couldn't find the child, and then they realize the child had gone through the doggy door, through the doggy door, to the pool outside, was still alive, but after two, three days, passed away. These little tiny things, we who are parents know, that one second, that two seconds, children just love to explore, and why not go through the doggy door if you're a two-year-old? Why not? Because you saw the doggy do it. That's what children do, they imitate. And so, even though the child was so well-protected when the parents knew the child was in the pool, it's when the child is not. I hope you get to see that, because it gets you right in the heart and makes you realize how very, very important the issue of childhood drowning is. It continues to be the leading cause of accidental death for children in southern Nevada, and yet, it's preventable. It's not cancer, it's not something else like that, that you know we can't help if we get, it's preventable. So each year, we designate April 1st as April Pools' Day in the city, to bring awareness to the dangers of drowning. And I'd like to call Tim Simansky, the Public Education and Information Office for Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, to come up. Tim? There you are. And Tim has worked long and hard on this subject. 14 years I've been on the council, and, Tim, you've been there all the time.
And so has Mayor Protem. She was right up there on the front lines. I'm bringing up members of the Southern Nevada Child Drowning Prevention Coalition, and I just want to talk a little bit about the history of April Pools' Day. It started about 30 years ago on Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. We went out in the community and was trying to push the ABCDs of drowning prevention, A for adult supervision, B for barriers around the pool itself, C for classes, if children learn how to swim, they can't drown in most cases, and also that adults should learn CPR, in case you have a drowning accident. And then, D for devices, and most important is the life preserver, the life jacket. A child should never go in or near water unless you're swimming with an adult without a life jacket on. If you're going to the lake and you're going out on a boat, it should be as normal as putting your seatbelt on when you go into a car. It should be a standard procedure, so if something happens, that child has that life preserver on. About 10 years ago, the coalition was formed, the Southern Nevada Child Drowning Prevention Coalition, by Greg Blackburn, and I'm gonna bring him up here. And instead of just doing it in the one community, we went southern Nevada-wide. On average, eight children die each year in southern Nevada due to drowning. That doesn't seem like a lot of children, but anything over zero is too many. There was actually 51 water-related incidents where children had to be taken to the hospital, and that's children 14 and under, because they had some sort of an incident with water. And unfortunately, it was eight of those that didn't make it. So this is why we do April Pools' Day every year. While you're up here, I want to mention, Mayor Protem has been so involved with this. She is actually on the Board of Directors with the Southern Nevada Child Drowning Prevention Coalition. Each entity has one elected official on it, she's been there, she's always participated in all of our events. The other one, which is not a part of today, is Float Like a Duck.
Yes.
And that's every Memorial Day weekend. And this lady has been there every year at that event since its beginning, and we're there from 12 to 4. Some of those summers have been ruthless, it was like 115 degrees. And she is out there walking around getting pledge cards from adults pledging that they'll watch their children and not leave them unattended. She got door prizes, and it was just fascinating to see her, that she didn't just show up and shake hands, she stayed there the entire time and promoted drowning prevention. So she is really dedicated to the program of drowning prevention here in the city and also in southern Nevada.
He's giving me too much credit. Basically, he and the others that are there are the ones, every single time they're there. And it's held at the Heinrich YMCA. I want to mention that, and it's on Memorial Day. It's all day, and there are people there that if the child doesn't know how to swim, they will help them learn how to swim. And you can't use the big slide unless you do get past that swimming test. So I just want you to know that it's a whole lot of people that work on that. You're nice, Tim, but everybody...
It's, and I'll tell you, it's the Saturday before Memorial Day, I can't remember this year, but it's the Saturday before Memorial Day. It's a free swim from 12 to 4, and there's all kinds of door prizes and stuff like that. And they also teach the children, if, nothing else, if they don't know how to swim, if they fall in the water, they at least know how to float, to stay above the water. So, but I'd like to bring up Greg, who is the chairperson, and he formed the coalition 10 years ago, ironically. And it was to bring everybody in southern Nevada, all the forces together, all the entities, national, state, local entities, we come together once a month and meet at the Clark County Government Center, and we discuss how we can combat child drowning in southern Nevada.
Thank you very much, Tim, I appreciate that. Mayor Protem, if you would come back here, we're not done with you. Again, it's been mentioned before, drowning prevention, pardon me, child drowning is preventable. They'd mentioned the ABCs and Ds of drowning prevention. The simple thing is adult supervision. We do have the cure of the leading killer of children in our community. We have parents, new parents every year. It's not like we train and the task is over. Every single day, it continues. Some of the things, we led the nation in population for drowning. We want to win awards from our, from UNLV, from our community leaders. We don't want to be leading the community, leading the nation on drowning incidents. So with that, I would like to, Tim had mentioned that I helped create, it was a team effort, 100% team effort, with all the communities in southern Nevada, the city of Henderson, city of Las Vegas, city of North Las Vegas, and Clark County, got together and said, "What can we do to help cure the, solve this problem?" We realized what each department had done for drowning prevention, and we wanted to get together and complement each person's efforts. I have to give credit to Mayor Protem, council, mayor and council, city management, the departments that do this work on a continual basis, Building Safety, Parks and Recreation, Fire Department, and Metro, they're out in the community. Don't hesitate to share the message that drowning can be prevented. Teaching teenagers to what to look out for, to watch for children. Don't assume someone else is watching your child. If you're hosting a party, a swimming party, be a responsible host, hire a lifeguard to watch the children. And again, I know we could go on all day, but my message is to, again, to give Mayor Protem Tarkanian a recognition, a certificate for her efforts, and support. Again, support is, speaks volumes. And an award to remind you of what you've done for us and what you've done for your communities. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome. I don't feel I deserve this, I tell you. I really don't feel I deserve this, I will tell you. I see some of you out there, and I don't know if we're breaking through into past the psychological barriers we all have in our minds, but these people work so hard, and just think of a little child you know and that you love, and just think of one minute, 10 seconds, and that child is gone. And that's what the difference is, and that's why we emphasize, we can prevent this. What we can prevent, let's prevent.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to introduce Krista Bilbrey to present the check. She represents the Southern Nevada Chapter of the International Code Council. They have been the leading financial sponsor of drowning prevention valley-wide. And with that, I'll turn it over to Krista and Kevin.
Hi, my name is Krista Bilbrey, and I represent the Southern Nevada Chapter of the International Code Council. This year, the building officials have dedicated $28,000 towards this cause to the local jurisdictions and programs, and we're really proud and honored to be a part of this.
Thank you. Thank you, Krista. I also want to mention that over the past 11 years, the Southern Nevada Chapter of the International Code Council has been involved with the child drowning prevention program and has donated over $175,000 to toddler swim grant programs and child drowning prevention, and we aim to continue this process for as long as we can possibly afford to keep doing it. And we will continue to do it as long as we can. But it's very important, you know, I, speaking for myself, my kids grew up here in Las Vegas, and when they were toddlers, I took them to the City of Las Vegas Parks Department at Garside Pool, and they got swim lessons here. So, I encourage all the parents out there, do the same, and have a very happy and safe summer. Thank you.
We're going to take a photo here, and I was just looking at some of this on the proclamation, which is yours, and I haven't handed it to you yet. Don't go away with it, Chase. There you go. This is your proclamation to make today April Pools' Day. The assets all get close. We're all joining together, that's what I mean. You know, we're all part of the puzzle. The puzzle is getting this to be the best, secure, safest city in the country, and we all contribute to it, every single person here, anybody in junior high, high school, college, senior homes, whatever, we all contribute. There are 101,000 backyard swimming pools in southern Nevada, and most of them were constructed prior to 2003, when a code was changed that then required secondary barriers that would further prohibit young children getting into the pools. But those are the ones we have to watch, so be very, very careful. And now, we're going to take a picture and give a thank you, and here's your, from the, I just want to tell you, this is from the mayor, and from all of the council members who greatly support what you're doing and want to help in any way they can. Thank you.
Thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
If I have a mic, I'll say that that's our final ceremonial item, and now we will begin the regular schedule of items on the agenda. I believe we have to give our people a little bit of time in order to change over tapes or whatever it is technology does nowadays. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oops, there's one more. And that is, if I have a mic, I'll say that that's our final ceremonial item, and now we will begin the regular schedule of items on the agenda. I believe we have to give our people a little bit of time in order to change over tapes or whatever it is technology does nowadays. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oops, there's one more. And that is, if I have a mic, I'll say that that's our final ceremonial item, and now we will begin the regular schedule of items on the agenda. I believe we have to give our people a little bit of time in order to change over tapes or whatever it is technology does nowadays. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Oops, there's one more. And that is, if I have a mic, I'll say that that's our final ceremonial item, and now we will begin the regular schedule of items on the agenda. I believe we have to give our people a little bit of time in order to change over tapes or whatever it is technology does nowadays. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. We're on to Agenda Item Number Nine. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time, if we could, Madam Clerk, at one minute. A major rush, again, nothing. So we will now move on to Agenda Item Ten. Business items for possible action. Any items from the 9:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Are there any other items that the council wishes to bring forward or have stricken table or held in abeyance? Madam Mayor, I just wanted to tell you that for our session, we have Item Number Forty-Three, which is a discussion item regarding the approval of a tavern license for change of ownership from HRE Holdings LLC to Fat Tuesday, Neapolis LLC, doing business as Fat Tuesday at 450 Fremont Street, Suite Number 101. The request by the applicant is to obey to May 1st of this year. And that's your motion? That's my motion. I moved. I so moved. Thank you. That's the motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven. For possible action, to approve the final minutes by reference of the February 20th, 2019, regular city council meeting, Mayor Protem may have a motion to approve those minutes. Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes. Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve the minutes. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Agenda Items Twelve through Thirty-Three on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Okay. Mayor Protem, do we have a motion on? I move to approve Items Number Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen. Twelve through Thirty-Three. What did I say? It's all right. We love you. It's all right. Just numbers. It's all numbers. Oh, excuse me. You want the whole thing at one time? Okay, then. All the way, Twelve through Thirty-Three. Okay. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we're on to Agenda Item Number Thirty-Four. Administrative report by Tom Perigo, Executive Director of Community Development, Representatives from Nevada Energy, Tanaska Power Services, concerning the provision of renewable electric retail power to the city, and discussion for possible action regarding the options for the city's city council selection regarding energy provisions. All wards.
Madam Mayor, I'll be standing in for Tom this morning. Scott Adams, City Manager. I am informing you that as of 9:00 AM this morning, Tanaska submitted in writing a withdrawal of their proposal to provide energy services to the city of Las Vegas. So we're going to highly recommend you strike this item, but before you do, both representatives of Tanaska and NV Energy would like to address the city council. But let me indicate, I think as we've indicated you all along, this was, the intent was to create a competitive process, and that would result in our ending up with one of the providers giving us a better deal on our energy costs. So it is our intent, based on the action that you took at the last meeting, to continue to work with NV Energy through the PUCN process on their new program, which we've applied for, to achieve that, to achieve that objective. So with that, we recommend a striking of the item, but I would defer to representatives of both companies at your pleasure to make a few comments.
Thank you. I see Mr. David Brown there, and appreciate your efforts on behalf of this competition, if you call it that. But you know, anytime there is competition, it's good for everybody, and we appreciate your interest, and I'm sure it's not the end of Tanaska in the West. But please go ahead, and then we'll hear from Nevada Energy.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Dave Brown, 9910 West Cheyenne, here on behalf of Tanaska Power Services. First off, congratulations, Mayor and Councilman Carrion, on your victories last night. Well deserved, and we look forward to you guys being here for another term. Congratulations. Second, I really want to thank staff, Council, or City Manager Scott and Tom Perigo and all their staff, including your representatives, your consultants, did a fabulous job working with Tanaska, and vetting out the information and proposal that we provided to you is very much competitive, and we, it became evident yesterday to Tanaska that they're, that they would be better served to pull their application today. And so that's what we're doing. But we, again, very much thank you for your time and listening to us, and thank your staff.
Thank you very, very much for applying, and we're grateful. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Doug Cannon, President and CEO of NV Energy, and I'm honored to be here today with each of you, and appreciate just a few of your minutes to visit with you. First, Mayor, I want to congratulate you, and of course, Councilman Carrion, on your fantastic election victories last night. We at NV Energy very much look forward to working with you and the council through another term as we continue to move Las Vegas forward on so many fronts. And that's something we're very much looking forward to. As you see behind me, there's a sea of blue and green shirts, and I want to thank all of our colleagues who are here today and our partners that are here. The individuals behind me represent labor, they represent trade, they represent local businesses, they represent Las Vegas residents. I myself am honored to call Las Vegas home, to be raising my five children in this community. They're in the public schools, and we very much love being a part of Las Vegas. I know just as each of these individuals behind me do as well. They understand the importance of energy issues, and the role that energy issues play in our economy and in moving our vision of Las Vegas, your vision of Las Vegas, forward. And we very much look forward to being a partner in moving that energy vision forward. We've shown the ability to do that in the past. We were challenged by your city staff, by Tom Perigo and others, to find a solution to make Las Vegas the biggest 100% renewable city in the country. And through the leadership of staff and through unique ideas of NV Energy, we were able to deliver on that. But that was the first step in what is a much broader journey and a much broader partnership. And we very much look forward to engaging with the city as we move that partnership forward. NV Energy brings to the table competitive prices, we bring certainty, we bring simplicity, and we bring transparency. I'm here today because I want to commit to the city of Las Vegas that we will continue to work with your staff on delivering lower-cost energy solutions to the city. It's important for us, we know it's important for the city, so that you can manage your fiscal affairs in ways that bring the most benefit to the residents of this city. So we are here to tell you that in 2020, we will be filing a general rate case in front of the Public Utilities Commission, and we will be requesting that the Public Utilities Commission cut our rates by over $100 million. And we're committing to that. I'm also here to tell you that we are committed to working with the city to deliver the benefits of the optional pricing program that we've already started to work with your staff on. We will continue to work on that, and we will deliver those benefits for the city. In addition, we will deliver a solution to the city that allows the city to be 100% renewable and continue to be a leader in the environmental and sustainability field in this country. We are committed to being a partner with the city. We appreciate the partnership that we've had for more than 100 years, and we look forward to what the next 100 years will bring for the city of Las Vegas and all of its residents. So I appreciate your time today, Mayor and Councilmembers.
And I think, I think what we have all felt over these years is that you're family. We know this is home, home for us, but as we pull together all the time and do the best we can do, it will only make us stronger and make us more reputable in building a world-class city. And I really want to thank Tom Perigo and our team here for everything that they've worked so hard on to make sure that we are able to deliver the 100% renewable energy for the city. So you're family, and we just are so grateful. And I don't know if council would like to make some comment here? Okay. Yes?
Yes, I'm just very pleased, and I think Ed, you should get a thank you too for all the information you gave us, and great, great Nevada Energy, and great for our labor, and just pleased that we got this settled quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're so grateful. Go NV Energy. Thank you. Okay. Now it's time to go back to work. This is not a pleasure day, just because we're here. Work, work, work. Anyway, thank you. Thank you all. It's just, it's great. Yes, please.
I think I need a motion to strike.
Oh, yes. Wait, we need, don't go so fast. We need a motion to strike. Go for it.
Okay. Before I do that, Scott, so we are, we're clear that we're going down this OPP funnel with NV Energy? We are doing that?
Absolutely. We've submitted our application. It was an intense process to get it in.
Okay.
We will see that, we, you know, the interesting part of this, we now have a team in place to work with us, to work with NV Energy, all the way through the PUCN process, and our hope would be, they get their new program on, and that we can, we can save in our costs through that new program, working with NV Energy.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. So with that, Mayor, I will make a motion to strike, Item Number Thirty-Four.
Thank you very much. It's a motion to strike, Thirty-Four. Please vote and please post. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Councilman. Thank you.
And you know, Mayor, I think we should thank all the people who came today from unions and other places, and they called us on the phone because it showed your interest in having things go well in the city. It's nice you took the time.
Thank you. Yes, no, absolutely. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Thirty-Five. Report by Lorna James Cervantes, School Associate Superintendent, Clark County School District, to provide a status update on various matters in the Clark County School District. This is in reference to all wards. And so Dr. Morris Hibler, I think you're somewhere here. Do you see Lisa? Well, I would say, Ms. James Cervantes, let's go ahead. Oh, here she comes.
Here she, I don't think she could hear you in the back.
She was overwhelmed by Nevada Energy, NV Energy. That's why she couldn't get in.
That's right.
She couldn't get to the crowd, right?
I was trying. Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler, Director of the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation. We are here today as a requirement of Assembly Bill 469 for the quarterly report from the Clark County School District. Since the December quarterly report, Superintendent Dr. Jesus Jara has published the Focus 2024 Strategic Plan, and also restructured his leadership, which you'll hear more about today. With me this morning is Lorna James Cervantes, the School Associate Superintendent, and Derek Bockovitz, the Principal of the Lead STEM Academy. It's one of our newest magnet schools.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, and members of the council. I am Lorna James Cervantes, School Associate Superintendent in the Clark County School District. And with me today, I would like to introduce, and they'll stand up in the back, Region Superintendent Debbie Brockett, and also our newest School Associate Superintendent, Dr. Sam Scavella, who has joined the Region Two team in the Clark County School District as part of the reorganization of the district.
Welcome, welcome.
So just to give a, was it advanced on its own? Just to give a little bit of information as to where we are right now within the district and where we have, and where we have come. Currently, in the legislative session, we're about halfway through. One of the big topics has been the funding for schools in Nevada, as you all know. Currently, Nevada's per pupil funding level is one of the lowest in the nation. And it's important to remember that our funding formula was created in 1967, and I won't tell you who was born that year, but it's somebody here, probably maybe even a few other people in the audience. And so if we make a little comparison or an analogy in our mind, think about, at that time, it was like using the payphones. And kids today don't even know what a payphone is, when you'd have to put a dime in to make a call. And today, the needs of our schools and the needs of students are like a smartphone. So think about that shift in technology. That's what's happening in the shifting in schools and the needs of students, but not in the shifting of funding in Nevada schools. The other concern is that in Nevada schools, we're currently thinking of all students as starting in the same place. However, we know, as Superintendent Jara shared with you in our last meeting, that not all students start at home plate and are able to go around the bases at an even, at an even rate, just like we expect in a baseball game. Some start on first base, some on second, and some still in the dugout. And we know that that means that there has to be a difference and a weight in the funding for those students. So those are, that is one of the important issues that we are speaking about in the legislative session currently. Now to the 2024 Focus Plan. Throughout this past fall, Superintendent Jara met with members of the leadership group within the school district, along with holding several town hall meetings to create what is now the Focus Twenty-Four, 2024 Plan for the Clark County School District. And you'll notice that student success is the center of this plan. It has to be what we're all about. It is our business. Surrounding students are the teachers, the principal, and the staff in the schools that serve them every single day. And in order to support the teachers, the students, and the staff, we have a coherent governance and leadership structure, as well as sound fiscal management from the central office services. And it's just as important to remember that in order for our students to succeed, we need partnership with our parents and with our community, and that's where all of you come in, is that partnership that you are with us in the schools. Another piece of the Focus Twenty-Four Plan was the reorganization of the district. You may have heard that the district is now being divided into three regions. Each of those regions consists of one region superintendent and two school associate superintendents. Then they will also be joined by specific staff in different areas, such as special education, English language learner services, other departments, student services departments, to help to support specifically students within that region of the school district. Another key focus is that by the time we start next school year, all of the region offices will be located in what are the area service centers. So they will be out in the community, in the schools, so that we are much closer to the schools, serving them very closely, and also
...Commission cut our rates by over $100 million. And we're committing to that. I'm also here to tell you that we are committed to working with the city to deliver the benefits of the optional pricing program that we've already started to work with your staff on. We will continue to work on that, and we will deliver those benefits for the city. In addition, we will deliver a solution to the city that allows the city to be 100% renewable and continue to be a leader in the environmental and sustainability field in this country. We are committed to being a partner with the city. We appreciate the partnership that we've had for more than 100 years, and we look forward to what the next 100 years will bring for the City of Las Vegas and all of its residents. So I appreciate your time today, Mayor and Council members.
Thank you. And I think, I think what we have all felt over these years is that your family, we know this is home, home for us, but as we pull together all the time and do the best we can do, it will only make us stronger and make us more reputable in building a world-class city. And I really want to thank Tom Perrigo and our team here for everything that they've worked so hard on to make sure that we are able to deliver the 100% renewable energy for the city. So your family, and we just are so grateful. And I don't know if council would like to make some comment here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes?
Yes, I'm, I'm just very pleased, and I think Ed, you should get a thank you too for all the information you gave us. And great, great Nevada Energy, and great for our labor, and just pleased that we got this settled quickly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're so grateful. Go NV Energy. Thank you. Thank you. Now it's time to go back to work. This is not a pleasure day, just because we're here. Work, work, work. Anyway, thank you. Thank you all. It's just, it's great. Yes, please.
I think I need a motion to strike.
Oh, yes. Wait, we need, don't go so fast. We need a motion to strike. Go for it.
Okay. Before, before I do that, Scott, so, so we are, we're clear that we're going down this OPP funnel with NV Energy? We are doing that?
Absolutely. We, we've submitted our application. It was a, an intense process to get it in. We will see that, we, you know, the interesting part of this, we now have a team in place to work with us, to work with NV Energy, all the way through the PUCN process. And, and our hope would be, they get their new program on, and that we can, we can save in our costs through that new program, working with NV Energy.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to hear. So with that, Mayor, I will make a motion to strike, item number 34.
Thank you very much. It's motion to strike, 34. Please vote and please post. Thank you. Thanks, Councilman. Thank you.
And you know, Mayor, I, I think we should thank all the people who came today from unions in other places, and they've called us on the phone, because it shows your interest in having things go well in the city. It's nice you took the time.
Thank you. Yes, no, absolutely. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number 35, report by Lorna James Cervantes, School Associate Superintendent, Clark County School District, to provide a status update on various matters in the Clark County School District. This is in reference to all wards. And so Dr. Morris Hibler, I think you're somewhere here. Well, I would say, Ms. James Cervantes, let's go ahead, oh, here she comes.
Here she, I don't think she could hear you in the back.
She was overwhelmed by Nevada Energy, NV Energy. That's why she couldn't get in.
That's right.
She couldn't get to the crowd, right?
I was trying. Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler, Director of the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation. We are here today as a requirement of Assembly Bill 469 for the quarterly report from the Clark County School District. Since the December quarterly report, Superintendent Dr. Jesus Jara has published the Focus 2024 Strategic Plan, and also restructured his leadership, which you'll hear more about today. With me this morning is Lorna James Cervantes, the School Associate Superintendent, and Derek Falkowitz, the Principal of the Lead STEM Academy. It's one of our newest magnet schools.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, and members of the council. I am Lorna James Cervantes, School Associate Superintendent in the Clark County School District. And with me today, I would like to introduce, and they'll stand up in the back, Region Superintendent Debbie Brockett, and also our newest School Associate Superintendent, Dr. Sam Scavella, who has joined the Region Two team in the Clark County School District as part of the reorganization of the district.
Welcome, welcome.
So just to give a, was it advanced on the phone? Just to give a little bit of information as to where we are right now within the district, and where we have, and where we have come. Currently, in the legislative session, we're about halfway through. One of the big topics has been the funding for schools in Nevada, as you all know. Currently, Nevada's per pupil funding level is one of the lowest in the nation. And it's important to remember that our funding formula was created in 1967, and I won't tell you who was born that year, but it's somebody here, probably maybe even a few other people in the audience. And so if we make a little comparison or an analogy in our mind, think about, at that time, it was like using the, the payphones. And kids today don't even know what a payphone is, when you'd have to put a dime in to make a call. And today, the needs of our schools and the needs of students are like a smartphone. So think about that shift in technology. That's what's happening in the shifting in schools and the needs of students, but not in the shifting of funding in Nevada schools. The other concern is that in Nevada schools, we're currently thinking of all students as starting in the same place. However, we know, as Superintendent Jara shared with you in our last meeting, that not all students start at home plate and are able to go around the bases at an even, at an even rate, just like we expect in a baseball game. Some start on first base, some on second, and some still in the dugout. And we know that that means that there has to be a difference and a weight in the funding for those students. So those are, that is one of the important issues that we are speaking about in the legislative session currently. Now to the 2024 Focus Plan. Throughout this past fall, Superintendent Jara met with members of the leadership group within the school district, along with holding several town hall meetings to create what is now the Focus 24, 2024 Plan for the Clark County School District. And you'll notice that student success is the center of this plan. It has to be what we're all about. It is our business. Surrounding students are the teachers, the principal, and the staff in the schools that serve them every single day. And in order to support the teachers, the students, and the staff, we have a coherent governance and leadership structure, as well as sound fiscal, fiscal management from the central office services. And it's just as important to remember that in order for our students to succeed, we need partnership with our parents and with our community. And that's where all of you come in, is that partnership that you are with us in the schools. Another piece of the Focus 2024 Plan was the reorganization of the district. You may have heard that the district is now being divided into three regions. Each of those regions consists of one region superintendent and two school associate superintendents. Then they will also be joined by specific staff in different areas, such as special education, English language learner services, other departments, student services departments, to help to support specifically students within that region of the school district. Another key focus is that by the time we start next school year, all of the region offices will be located in what are the area service centers. So they will be out in the community, in the schools, so that we are much closer to the schools, serving them very closely, and also being very accessible to the community. So those are some of the biggest shifts that have already taken place or are in the process of taking place right now. Also, the goals that were set and approved by the school board are centered around four main areas. There are four student success goals. These are making sure that we are meeting the needs of our students in the schools every day, increasing the achievement levels of all of our students in all of our schools, no matter what ward or what zip code they are in, in the city, making sure that we are closing the achievement gaps between the highest and the lowest performing students, and giving all students optimal opportunities to participate in advanced placement, magnet school opportunities, career and technical education, and all kinds of other advanced placement opportunities within the district, as well as ensuring that all of our students are having the opportunity to be, to graduate college and career ready. Also, looking at personnel, making sure that we are hiring the best for every single one of our schools. This has goals centered around making sure that we are attracting, hiring, and retaining the best teachers for every one of our schools in the district. And then, once we do have those teachers and those staff members in our schools, making sure that we are recognizing them, and that we are letting them know when they are doing an outstanding job, and that we want them to remain here in Clark County, as so many of us have. I myself moved to Clark County 28 years ago from Colorado and have been here since, because it has given me such wonderful opportunities. Also, we have several goals around sound fiscal, fiscal management, and making sure that we are using every single dollar that we have wisely within the districts. And you'll also notice that there are three goals around parent and community engagement, because we know that without the community and the parents involved in our schools, that we will not succeed. This is such an important piece of being successful as a district. We have set some very, very high goals for ourselves and for the community as a whole. It is our goal that by 2024, there will be no more one or two star schools. We know this is a lofty goal, but it's a goal we are ready to work toward. And we know that if we don't set high goals, we won't meet high goals. If we set low goals, then that's the highest we're going to get. We also have a goal of a 90% graduation rate for the district as a whole, and a 100% increase in college and career-ready diplomas for our students across the district. Further, we also would like to see a 100% increase in the participation and performance in advanced placement, international baccalaureate, dual enrollment, and career and technical education for students across the Clark County School District. These are big goals. They're important goals, and I think these are goals that are in line with the, the goals and the vision of the City of Las Vegas. And with your partnership, we can reach these goals. I know that you're all tuned in all of the time, but for anyone who would like to see bills that are coming through the legislative session that are specific to the Clark County School District, you can always track those through ccst.net/spotlight, and there will always be updates on what's happening that directly affects the Clark County School District and your children, or grandchildren, or nieces and nephews who are living in Nevada and are in school still. So those are just a few of the highlights that I had to offer, but I know you would like to hear from an outstanding principal who lives in, works here in Las Vegas. So I would, at this time, like to introduce Mr. Derek Falkavage from Lead STEM Academy, and he's here with his, one of his assistant principals, so I will turn it over to them.
Thank you very much. This is my assistant principal and partner, Kristi Ford. We work hand in hand, and I want to thank Mayor, Mayor Protem, and the council members for allowing us this opportunity to talk about our absolutely amazing school that we are creating. And I say "we're creating" because a year and a half ago, we learned that we were becoming a magnet school through a federal grant through the Magnet School Assistance Program. And once we got that information, we saw this as an opportunity to completely rebrand our school. It was Lead Middle School, and the first thing we did was change our name to Lead STEM Academy. We also decided that our three focus areas were going to be robotics, architecture, and computer science. At that point, with help from our community, we expanded those to robotics and manufacturing, computer science and IT and cybersecurity, and architecture and construction management. Because what we realized, and what we decided at that time, was we want to help our children get skills that they are going to need for their futures. And we also want to show them that they do not have to leave Southern Nevada to be successful, that there are opportunities here in Southern Nevada for all of our students in Clark County. So the three areas of focus that we chose are also areas of need of employment in Southern Nevada. And it was absolutely amazing, the outpour of support from our community. We have an advisory board that helps us with our long-range planning. On our advisory board, we have members from Nevada Energy, Southwest Gas, the Nevada Contractors Association, Fanatics, UNLV, Northwest Career Technical Academy, Advanced Technical Academy.
RTC.
Oh, RTC. So with all of those, they're helping us build our programs, so that, again, our students get the skills that they need to be successful. Uh-oh, lost my notes. My phone shut down. So one of the other things that we started doing at Lead STEM Academy is project and inquiry-based learning. So basically, our students, no longer do they need to memorize facts. We have Siri for that. We have Alexa for that. So we're teaching our students how to actually use those facts, and how to incorporate those facts into what they're doing on a daily basis. And they are incorporating all different subject areas at the same time with our project-based learning. We also started doing something called STEM Tank, where our students are doing a project, a large-scale, school-wide project with a main focus, where all of their content areas come together and work towards solving a problem in the community. Our first semester, our students designed and built a toy for children with cerebral palsy. This semester, our students are designing a development, a housing development with green energy in mind. We are inviting you and all of our community partners to come and watch our students actually present. We call it STEM Tank because they do a Shark Tank pitch to whoever comes and watches. And I'm going to tell you right now, because we did it first semester, and we're going to do it again in May, our students will amaze you. You will be floored at the fact that we have 11, 12, 13, 14-year-old children who will stand in front of adults they don't know, dignitaries, not blink an eye, and tell you about their project and their proposal.
Can you make sure that we get that invitation? Because I would love to see that.
Yes, we have them for you. Absolutely, absolutely. And so our, our STEM Tank is one of the culminating projects that our students perform during the school year. So one of the things that we're very proud of is the fact that, again, our community has rallied around us. So when we first became a magnet school, there were naysayers in the community, because we were Lead Middle School, that said, "Well, you're never going to be able to recruit students. You're going to have a hard time recruiting students to come to your school." That first year, we were selling a dream, because nothing was in place yet, and we had over 1,000 applicants, which we raised our incoming sixth graders from 500 acceptances to 600, because we had so many applicants. This year, with only one year under our belt, not even a year, we now have over 2,000 applicants. We have the most applicants of any magnet school in the Clark County School District. So what we are doing, the community is embracing, and they want their children to come to our school. We are working with our community partners to redesign our classrooms. The Nevada Contractors Association has donated labor and materials to redesign our classrooms into collaborative spaces. So no longer are students sitting in rows, they're now sitting on sometimes floors, tables in groups, but they're collaborating with each other, which is exactly what they're going to have to do in the future. We are teaching also the soft skills that go along with the content that they're learning in their regular classes. So we feel as though we are redefining and redesigning education in the Clark County School District, and we hope to be a model for other middle schools, high schools, and elementary schools as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am here, if there are any other questions, or we're both here, if there are any other questions, but we want to thank you all. And I know that Councilwoman Fiore, you really specifically have reached out and supported Lead STEM Academy, so we want to thank you for that.
Yes, thank you very much for your support.
Yes, please.
If I could just say something. Thank you very much for your presentation. The, in the early in the presentation, you talked about the Nevada Plan for, for education in 1967. Yeah, it's old, but it is defensible in the courts. That plan is unassailable in terms of discrimination against district to district. So it's important to remember that some states have lost billions because they didn't care for their small counties. So we have to remember that we can never neglect the small counties, the small school districts, or we pay. On the other hand, everybody needs more money, and every district needs more money, and an efficient use of the money. So I wish you well. I was up in Carson City last week. I think you have a good chance. But at the same time, remember, be very careful to not let people tamper too much with that, that plan. It's long, it's complicated, but it works. Yeah, it's, it's definitely hard to understand sometimes. And I don't know, I wasn't there at the time, but I can tell you that they had in mind discrimination at that point. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for that advice. We appreciate it, Councilman.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
If I might. Now, you are a magnet school, just like the other magnet schools in the district. I mean, you're part of the district, right? You're not a private school?
Correct.
I think that's tremendous, what you've done. Do you follow the same rules as far as admittance is concerned? Do the children that live within two miles, are they allowed to come?
So we, we are...
Because they're supposed to have, you know, more points to get in than children who live further away.
Right. So we are in a 100% wall-to-wall magnet, so every student who comes to Lead STEM Academy has to apply to get in. But we do have a preference for students who live within what used to be our attendance zone. Yes?
I'm a, I'm a fortunate person in that I was able to start the first magnet school at Clark. That's number one. And also, that I have a background in special education. First, I want to say that's tremendous, what you're doing. Secondly, I want to say I know how hard you're working to try and straighten everything out. I do want to say a couple of things, however, rather strongly. And this, I want to say, is every time someone's come here from the CCSD to talk to us, I've asked questions about special ed. I've been told I'd get information. I never got the information. I, I want to tell you that I know that you are teetering, teetering very closely on getting a very huge federal lawsuit, because the city, CCSD, is breaking the law as far as special education students is concerned. I know this because I was a former member, and probably will be a member again after June, of an advocacy group that works to help special ed students. And yet, we hire people to direct these departments in special ed who have no training, no experience in special ed. We take schools where people have worked for years to build up a good working relationship of, including some of these special ed children who have the whole regular faculty and the special ed faculty working together. And then all of a sudden, somebody decides, no, you have to move to a school that's about two and a half miles away, which breaks up the whole thing, even though the school wanted to keep it, the parents wanted to keep it, and no good reasons are given. Now, that's not breaking the law. You can do that if you want to, but it sure doesn't make good sense, because it takes a long time to build up those skills of working together to help these children with special needs. And right now, I'm telling you, a lawyer is being sought out to represent these families, and I'm, I, I don't know if anybody listens to what I say up here, but I have a lot of experience in education. I have a lot of contacts still with people in special ed, and I want, I hope, I hope somebody will look at where we are and what's happening, and really listen to the people who teach special ed and who directly supervise. On the other hand, I want to say, good luck to you, because I know how hard it is. But in the special ed, I'm saying that again, because it's going to come soon if some changes aren't made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem, I appreciate that comment. Lorna James Cervantes, for the record. And I will take your concerns directly back. We will, the three of us today. And part of the reorganization is well put. Dr. Deanna Jiskolsky in charge of the Special Education Division as well, and we will ensure that she has the information that you brought forward, and take your request back as well.
Because listen to the people. All I'm saying is, listen to the people who know special ed, who are absolutely successful already in special ed, rather than perhaps a, a new administrator who looks at, at paper, on paper. Thank you so much. I know you will. I know you're working hard, and I wish you lots of success. And I want to come out to your school, too. Maybe I'll go when she comes up, but I want to come out. That's wonderful. I'm very, I think our magnet schools in the district do a great job. I like the inquiry-oriented curriculum. I just think it's magnificent. I, I used it sometimes when I was a director, and so good luck to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would like to extend an invitation, just not to the STEM Tank, but anytime you want to come to our campus, it is open.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin, then Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really, I'm glad Councilwoman Tarkadian brought that up. You know, I did not hear about this when I was in Carson City last week, and it was on other business, but the point is, if this is true, then it shows, it puts a spotlight on what the federal government did in, with 94142 and the IDEA Act. Provided federal funding in the beginning, and made it slip, slip, slip to where it's, what, 2%, 3%, 4% now of the education budget? So special ed, honorably started, was never backed by the federal government to assist the local school districts. So if it is true that we are slipping behind and subject to lawsuit, then we should be prepared for a tax increase to pay for this, because it will be required. The, the state, all the legislators have done their very best, but there's only so much money to go around. So if it is true, we have a lawsuit going, it could theoretically be successful, it ought to name the federal government as a defendant, because they started this with great promises, and then did not deliver the money that they forced us to spend. So make sure, because it's worth it. It really is worth it. Anyway, I just want to pass that on to you from my own experience. If we're going to get sued, we're going to get a tax increase if we lose. Thank you.
Councilman Creer, newly elected, re-elected.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Once again, blessed to have you. As you know, I represent Ward Five, and the city, under Dr. Morris Hibler's leadership, we have our reinvent school program. 13 reinvent schools, eight of them are located within Ward Five. So as you go through your goals, and I would like to meet with you specifically, and to understand specifically what is the strategy and the plan to bring our schools within Ward Five up to, up to standards. We can talk about broad-based goals all, all day long, but I want to know specifically exactly what is being done for the schools in my ward. I was not, I was somewhat opposed to the breakup of the school district, because of the fact that I vehemently believe that there would become a case of have and have-nots. And historically, schools, even my, my old schools that I went to school with, have been left behind. And so I'd like for you to make an appointment with me, if you wouldn't mind, to discuss specifically where we are, and we're getting our schools up to, up to par.
We'd be happy to do that, and I'll work with Lisa to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your time, that does conclude our report.
Mayor, I think we should just say publicly how great a job you've done, Lisa, really, really good, working so well with the district, and working so well to keep us informed, and we want to back you all the way, did a great job, want to let you know publicly.
Thank you, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you, thank you for coming down, we appreciate it, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Items 36 and 46 together, so I'll read both into the record now. Item 36, report by Robert R. Olmer, Dean of UNLV Greenspun College of Urban Affairs, and Tom Parago, Executive Director of Community Development, regarding a partnership between the University of Nevada and Las Vegas City and Las Vegas to develop a community resilience framework. And item number 46, R-12-2019, discussion for possible action to approve a resolution for a partnership between the University of Nevada and Las Vegas Greenspun College of Urban Affairs, City of Las Vegas, to develop a community resilience framework, and this is in reference to all wards, and I hope you will describe what you mean by a community resilience framework.
Thank you, Your Honor. For the record, Tom Parago, Executive Director of Community Development, and yes, we will do our best to explain that, and I appreciate being able to present this item, because it really is an important part of our overall sustainability initiative. Las Vegas is in many ways a leader in resilient communities, we're constantly evolving our infrastructure, public services, to respond to changing conditions and changing needs in our community. Public safety and emergency management have been put to the test and have proven their resilience in response to extreme events. We have proven that we are a resilient community, we've proven that we are Vegas strong. The world has taken notice of that. Investors and bond rating agencies are increasingly looking at community resilience when making decisions on where to invest, and looking at establishing a city's bond ratings. They want to know that we, as a city, are looking at adapting constantly our systems, our infrastructure, so that we can respond to any shock that comes our way, and more importantly, that we're able to respond and recover. And that's what this, being a resilient community, is all about, and I'm sure Dr. Olmer will be able to articulate that much better than me. But, community resilience is vital to our economy, but resilience requires vigilance. And so, what this partnership does, what the resolution that you, is before you today, with UNLV, we will review the city's shocks, stresses, and capacities, consider current planning and economic development strategies, gain perspectives from public, private, and nonprofit sectors, and identify actionable initiatives to address resilience needs. We, as a city, although we are, each department and all of the work we're doing is helping to build community, make life better, but build a resilient community, we don't have the resources to take this deep dive look at our systems and our infrastructure, but UNLV does. And so, I'm very happy to introduce Robert Olmer, the Dean of the Greenspun College of Urban Affairs, and he will present his commitment and what this means to his university, and I've been working with this group for a number of years, and what they're doing at the Greenspun College is truly amazing, and they're completely retooling their entire college around this idea of building a resilient community. I'd like Dean Olmer to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Parago, welcome.
Thank you very much, Rob Olmer, from the Dean of the Greenspun College of Urban Affairs, and I'm here with Chris Stream, Director of the School of Public Policy and Leadership in the college, and Joel Lieberman, Chair of the Department of Criminal Justice. And, yeah, we're excited about the opportunity to work with the city, we are excited about the opportunity to engage our faculty and our students in resilience opportunities within the community. I think when Tom mentioned the idea of cities being able to take charge of the shocks and stresses that they may experience moving forward, this is an opportunity for the college to work with the city, to have students and faculty use their expertise, to take, get a sense of what the city and what community members feel are potential shocks and stresses, and then consider those and develop a plan for resilience moving forward. So, if you look around the world, cities are going through all different kinds of transformations, or experiencing things from terrorism, to environmental stresses, to things like homelessness and social issues that are chronic stresses, and a lot of cities are looking elsewhere to figure out for those answers. And what we believe Las Vegas is, is a leader in the world when it comes to social activities, when it comes to tourism, when it comes to tourism safety, and so, we'd like to work with the city, engage with the city, engage our students and faculty in those activities. And so, in the college, we have the School of Social Work, we have the School of Criminal Justice, School of Public Policy and Leadership, the School of Journalism and Media Studies, and the Department of Communication Studies. So, we have academic disciplines in which we are ready to promote resilience, ready to develop pilot programs around these issues, and find ways to create the most resilient community we possibly can in Las Vegas.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Olmer, Olmer. And so...
And so, Mayor, just for a couple of examples, and I think we've sort of given you the very high-level framework of what community resilience is all about, but a couple of examples that are fairly recent, when we had extensive drought that dried out the forests up in the mountains, and then we have a weather event that creates a forest fire, and then we have unprecedented rains washing all that debris and all that flooding into our city, that's our flood control. How do we respond to these changing weather conditions, or more extreme weather conditions, extreme drought, extreme storms? And we know that they are getting more extreme over time, we see that in terms of, it's very easy to look up the insurance money that's spent, and the government money that's spent to recover from these major events. And just to say, we have all these stories about how we are constantly evolving and developing our infrastructure to be able to handle those kind of situations, but that we're able to recover. And when businesses are looking where to invest and move their business, they want to know if cities prepare for these kinds of things, and is thinking about and working on it, and they're not going to get hit with a huge property tax bill down the road, because, oh, shoot, we didn't think about flood control. Well, we've been taking care of that for years, and we continue to look at that. How does all of this fit together as a community, and how do we step back and look at it, take a big picture, broad look at this? And that's what the university brings with the researchers, with the professors, and with the students who are very engaged in this and want to participate and help the city, just to take a broader look and make sure that we are addressing our vulnerabilities, that we understand them, and that we're continually adapting. We have done some of this work in the past, NV Energy's been a good partner, they're constantly looking at their systems. As we have extreme high heat days, the transformers and other equipment might start to fail. So, they're constantly looking at ways that they can continually upgrade that equipment to withstand these kind of shocks as well. It all fits together, it's all interdependent, and we need a more of a systems approach to look at this.
And are we doing anything to assist in grant applications, or is it all through the UNLV Urban Affairs?
That's a great question, Your Honor. This, the beauty of this particular program, if you approve this resolution and we formalize this partnership, is it will not cost the city anything, there are no additional resources that we will expend on this effort. In fact, we will now be gaining the expertise of the university to work with us on this, and as a partnership, we will have opportunities for grant money. There's an organization called 100 Resilient Cities, which is a membership of the largest cities around the world, and they have reached out to us, and they have said, if we form a partnership, they would like us to be involved. That will instantly put Las Vegas on the map as a global leader in resilient communities, and that effort is backed by the Rockefeller Foundation, and they are looking to bring some of those resources to our city to help us with this effort.
I think we did get notification in the mayor's office, which I probably passed on to you, but it's a very exciting time, and certainly, the partnership looks great. As I understand, number 36 is just the report, but Agenda Item 46 would require a motion?
Yes, 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 Your Honor.
Okay, is there any further presentation? Wonderful. Are they going to come down to Fifth Street School? Have an office in Fifth Street School, our pretty little Fifth Street School.
What was the question again?
What was the question?
Well, because we have the Graduate School of Architecture in our Fifth Street School, and of course, we've had UNLV down here in City Hall as well.
Yep.
So, just wondering if we're going to have a physical presence here in City Hall.
We can.
Yes, Your Honor, we, and Jorge's been lead on this, but we are constantly in conversation with the university, looking at all kinds of opportunities to bring, you know, parts of some of their, the university downtown, to give students direct access to the courts, to the engineering firms, to the local governments, to, you know, work and intern downtown, as well as learn downtown, so.
Thank you, and Councilman Anthony had a question or comment, please.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is going to be a great partnership, I appreciate you coming to the city and doing this. I just want to mention one thing, though, I have my PhD from UNLV, so I love getting involved in these academic, high-level discussions with my professors back then, and those are a lot of fun, but we just have to remember, those have to turn into something that goes into a neighborhood and makes people's lives better. So, I just want to emphasize that we're doing those sorts of things, we're not just having academic discussions just to do it. So, if you could just comment on that, and just encourage me that those things are going to happen, and that you're going to be doing some great things in my ward, and the rest of the wards, and the entire city.
Yeah, the college is really focused on solutions, and so, we're working on things like youth homelessness with Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth, and we're developing practical solutions around these issues. So, you're exactly right, we want to make a difference in the city, and the goal is not to have necessarily academic discussions about these, but to develop practical, actionable solutions that work, and that's really what resilience is all about, right, is creating networks and conversations, but also developing actionable solutions that will work in communities.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and did Mr. Teeger, do you want to make a comment?
May I?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Edgar Patino with NV Energy 6226 West Sahara. Like Tom mentioned, at NV Energy, we actually are very interested in resiliency and redundancy. We actually incorporate that into everything that we do at the company, it's built into our DNA. We have actually participated in these types of exercises before, and so, to the extent that the council or staff is interested, we'll be happy to lend our expertise and time into this effort, because we believe it's important, because everything that we do, I think, is, as it's tied into energy and into all of the other systems in the community, we'll be happy to help out, so we fully support the idea.
I didn't think we would expect that, and welcome it for sure. Thank you, Mr. Patino.
Thank you.
So, I would entertain a motion on Agenda Item 46, Mayor Protem?
I'd like to move to approve the partnership between UNLV and the city.
Thank you, this motion, please vote, please post.
And Mayor, could I say a word or two, since, you know, I only have two more months left, so I'm making all these comments.
Three months, you have three months.
Oh, three months, whatever, whatever. I just want to say that when I was relatively new on the council, and your husband was mayor, a gentleman would walk past every once in a while, and Oscar would say, who's that? Who's that? And that he'd say, do you work for us? Do you work for us? And it would turn out to be Tom, and he would say, oh, is that what you do? And I just want to tell you, and in intervening years, I've found that you do an awful lot for us, you have put us at the top in sustainability and things like that, so I want to be sure that the mayor emphasizes that tonight at dinner with the mayor, that I remember, who's that, as you would walk by? I didn't know him, I don't even know-
Not only who's that, but what are green chips, for heaven's sake.
Yes, yes. So, in any case, I just want to tell you, Tom, you certainly have done a fantastic job, and this is just one example of what you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those kind words, Mayor Protem, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and we're just, we're very grateful, we'll look forward to this, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item 37, report by John Enslinger, General Manager of the Southern Nevada Water Authority, Tom Parago, Executive Director of Community Development, concerning water conservation efforts within the city and across the region, all wards. Mr. Parago, we have another report.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We also have a star, he's been on Hello Mayor, and so helpful, and I invite you back on, because I think the venue, Mr. Wiggelman, is just to get the information out to the people, you don't have to let your water run all day long while you're brushing your teeth or whatever you're doing.
So, it's very fitting, after having a presentation on community resilience, that now we're going to talk about our most precious resource in our desert community, and that is clearly water. There's a lot of work to do here, so really excited to have Mr. Enslinger, General Manager of the Southern Nevada Water Authority and the Las Vegas Valley Water District, here to give us an update, and then following his comments, I just have a few slides to share some of the activities that the city's doing to support the water conservation efforts. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Enslinger.
Is that Lake Mead water?
It is absolutely Lake Mead water.
I know every time my family goes out and they ask, do you want Perrier, or do you want sparkling soda, we say, just give us Lake Mead.
There you are. I can tell you exactly what's in Lake Mead water, nobody can tell you exactly what's in the bottled water you buy. It's not tested to nearly the same standards.
Right.
I'd like to add my congratulations to Mayor Goodman, Councilman Greer, on your reelections. We certainly look forward to continuing to work with you guys, and as Tom said, I think it's completely appropriate to talk about our water system and our water supply, following a discussion about community resilience, because I think to Councilman Anthony's point, we haven't just been sitting around studying this problem. Our community has taken on-the-ground action over the last 20 years, that frankly, has resulted in Southern Nevada being the most water-secure city in the southwestern part of the United States. So, how did we get there? The Water Authority, sometimes people sort of forget what the Water Authority is, nobody gets a bill from, from the Water Authority. We provide water to the city of Las Vegas, I'm incorporated Clark County, Henderson, North Las Vegas, and Boulder City. We oversee coordinating regional conservation. We're not a regulatory agency, but through our coordination, those plans then get translated into the county code, the city code, water district service rules, so that there's a level playing field for the rules of the road for conservation throughout our community. Water supply planning, we do a 50-year resource plan every single year, so that our community always has a five-decade outlook on what our water supply situation looks like. Water quality, we operate two world-class water treatment facilities at Lake Mead. Infrastructure, by the, by April of next year, when we bring our new pump station online, we will have constructed $3.7 billion in water delivery and treatment infrastructure since 1995. And then stewardship, we've overseen restoration of the Las Vegas Wash, our partners in operating the Las Vegas Springs Preserve, the Warm Springs Natural Area, so we're very conscious of taking care of our natural environment. So, we do have an important job, we supply water to seven out of every 10 people that live in the state of Nevada, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And people think of Las Vegas as using a lot of water, right? They stroll the boulevard, they look at the fountains at the Bellagio, they think we're kind of a profligate water user, but the fact is, Clark County as a whole, with 73% of the state's population, 76% of the state's economic output, uses less than 5% of the water available in the state of Nevada. We are blessed with a highly efficient base economy in our tourism industry, so we actually use very little water to generate the amount of economic output that our community is blessed with.
Could you just say that again, that last sentence?
In terms of the amount of water? So, Clark County as a whole, with 2.2 million people, has 73% of the state's population, 76% of the state's GDP, and uses less than 5% of the water available in the state of So, next time somebody criticizes us for, you know, the Bellagio fountains or anything else, you tell them we'll take the Pepsi challenge against any other economic use of water in the western United States.
Madam Mayor? May I ask you a question? Mr. Enslinger, that's an amazing statistic, and if I hadn't heard it from you today, I probably wouldn't know that, and my wife works for the Water District. She works for the authority. I think when you put it in our perspective, it really is amazing how that is, and is that more through our conservation, conservation efforts, is that just, we just don't use as much water, we, then, as a combination of the rest of the state? Really is amazing. amazing.
Right, well, there, there's a couple of things that go into it, uh, probably the biggest one is, we have essentially 100% indoor recycling, if it hits a drain in Southern Nevada, we treat it, and not we, you treat it, 'cause we don't do wastewater, but the city does, you treat it, put it back down the Las Vegas Wash, which Kiba oversees, we get a return flow credit for that, so everything that hits a drain goes back into the lake, we gotta take it back out, so the only way we lose water out of our system is through outdoor irrigation and evaporative cooling, so we have a very tight system to start with, uh, you know, if you like that statistic, in terms of our base economy, the resort industry in Southern Nevada, so the whole strip, all of downtown Las Vegas, all of our outline, uh, neighborhood casinos, they use less than one-tenth of 1% of all the water available in the state of Nevada, in return for 22% of the jobs in the entire state, so that is why we're so efficient. Okay?
Issues, of course, are agriculture, which uses an enormous amount of water, uh, in the rest of the state, and I think that's the thing, it's the same thing we have a battle with Imperial Irrigation District in California, right?
Certainly, agriculture uses a lot of water, uh, out of the Colorado River, there's 40 million Americans that take water from the Colorado River, there's 5.5 million acres of agricultural land, agriculture uses 75 to 80% of the water from the river, but, you know, the, the people I provide water to also like to eat food, so I'm not anti-ag, uh, I'm just pointing out that we're very efficient, and there are ways to make agriculture more efficient, it's just gonna take investments. Okay, oh, probably, so, but all of that water, 90% of our water comes from the Colorado River, and that is a river system, as you can see from the picture, anybody's been to Lake Mead over the last, you know, decade can see, is imperiled, the, the lake is down about 130 feet, uh, since the turn of the century, uh, this just graphically shows, so the, the left-hand vertical column is feet above sea level, so we turned the century at over 1,200 feet above sea level, the surface of Lake Mead, and today we sit at 1088, so a rather rapid decline, and one that we need to be prepared to continue, this is a, a graphic from the US Bureau of Reclamation, that shows, because of the wet winter we've had, not only locally, but up in the Colorado Rockies and, and Utah, we're probably gonna stay about the same for the next year, but if we get another couple of dry years, the lake could very quickly go down 30, 40, 50 feet, uh, again, so we need to be prepared for that to continue, whether it does or not, because this is what life looks like if we drop another 88 feet, Lake Mead will only have 17% of its capacity left, Hoover Dam will stop generating, uh, electrical power, and the ability to deliver water downstream to California, Arizona, and the Republic of Mexico would be imperiled, so what are we doing locally, I'm gonna go through each of our, uh, actions that we've taken, uh, locally, beginning with water banking, so you see the 244,000 acre foot number, that's how much water we consumptively used from the Colorado River last year, if you stack up what we have in banked resources, and we've been banking water, injecting, uh, water into our aquifer here in the valley, banking it with our partners in Arizona and California, banking it in Lake Mead, uh, since the mid-'90s, and we now have 1.8 million acre-feet of water in reserves, so you add that up, that's seven to eight years of our current usage that we have in reserves, there's no other municipal area, uh, in the southwestern United States does anything close to this, infrastructure, uh, I mentioned, uh, the 3.7 billion, uh, that we've been building, between our third intake and our low-lake level pumping station, by next year, we will have spent $1.5 billion, not making our water system resilient, making our water system immune to the drought cycle, and that makes us able, if you look at that 1075, I'm sorry, at the 1095 elevation, if we're unfortunate enough, to ever see the lake drop that low, that's the point where the Bureau of Reclamation cannot physically release water through Hoover Dam downstream to California, Arizona, and the Republic of Mexico, our pumps and our pipe will still have 20 feet of water over it, so this is what puts us in a fantastic position, we may have gotten the short end of the stick in the river negotiations in 1922, and we have something nobody else has, that's the ability to be upstream, uh, on the side of gravity, I do wanna, uh, talk a little bit, we have a drought contingency plan that the seven basin states, uh, transmitted to Congress on March 19th, uh, we all testified, uh, back in DC last week, and I'm happy to report that, as of today, uh, the US Senate is moving that plan through, uh, on unanimous consent, which means, if you've ever, you know, can imagine this in this day and age, all 100 US senators have signaled yes, that they will move that through, uh, without going through committee directly to the floor of the US Senate, and that is critical, because without that plan, what you see here is, through 2026, without the plan, we have about a 50% probability of getting down to elevation 1020, with that plan in place, we reduce that risk to about 5%, so it's a critical, regional, seven states plus the Republic of Mexico, all agreeing to take less water and bolster, uh, this, uh, river system. So what does shortage really mean, shortage often sounds like people assume you have to use less than you're currently using, but for us, our community's been so successful in our conservation efforts, we've already conserved what we would be forced to pay, so right now, when the lake, uh, is above 1075, we're allowed to take our full entitlement, as the lake goes down, we drop from 300 down to 270, right, in terms of what we're legally allowed to take out of the lake, well, last year we used 244, so for us, shortage is purely a legal definition, and what it really translates into for Southern Nevada is, we have less extra water, so we're gonna have less extra water to put into our banks over the next several years, but a shortage in no way means we don't have enough water, so I talked a little bit about return flows already, so I won't go through it again, the main point being, the focus of our conservation plans is on limiting outdoor use, because limiting indoor use doesn't actually extend our supplies, we're a world leader in urban water conservation, we have a lot of fun numbers, you can take your pick of, my favorite is, we could take an 18-inch piece of sod and lay it 96th of the way around the circumference of the earth, that's how much grass we've taken out of this valley, and the city of Las Vegas, and I know Tom's gonna show some slides, the city of Las Vegas, not just your residents, has played a direct role in that, you've implemented enough projects since 2002 to annually save, I believe it's about 345 million gallons of, of water, so tip of the hat, uh, to the city, and this is the results of that, that populate, or, of the, uh, conservation efforts, since 2002, while our population has grown by 43%, our per capita water usage has declined by 36%, and our consumptive use of water is down 26%, however, we've taken our foot off the gas, and we can't continue to do that, while we've been a world leader over the last 20 years, since 2015, while our population has grown, our water usage per capita and our consumptive use has ticked up, so we need to, uh, reinvigorate our conservation efforts, our entire community is gonna need to come together and take additional steps to control our demand, uh, for water, 'cause if we control our demand, there's not a situation where we're gonna have, uh, a water supply problem in this community, so, why, why did that happen, certainly economic growth, uh, has something to do with it, warmer, drier climate, uh, is driving additional usage, drought fatigue, the Water Authority's been pounding the drought message for almost 20 years, if you think about it, since the drought began in 2002, uh, if you were a high school senior that graduated last year, you haven't been alive when we haven't been in a drought, so that's a, you know, a situation that we have to address, but we have to get, uh, off of our complacency, so, uh, we've started that, we have tremendous community outreach, we've already touched, you know, hundreds of thousands of our customers through social media, uh, bill inserts, direct mailings, I feel like the number-one thing we have to do is get control of our non-functional turf, and a lot of people have different definitions for what non-functional turf is, mine's pretty simple, if the only people or person that ever walks on the grass is the person who's mowing it, then that's a luxury our community can no longer afford, we have about 5,000 acres of turf in this community that we view as non-functional, we have 7,000 acres that we have absolutely no problem with, right, I'm not trying to pick fights with soccer mobs, you know, schools, parks, things that our kids and grandkids play on, that's absolutely fine, but this sort of ornamental turf where a child is never gonna walk on in the middle of a median or a traffic circle, uh, is the kind of thing that we're going to have to address, and it's across our community, this pie chart shows that 5,000 acres, uh, of turf, and it's in residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial, it, it's all over the valley. So, we've increased the, the rebate ceiling, uh, on our Water Smart Landscape Program from $300,000 per project to $500,000 per project to start, uh, incentivizing, uh, that turf to come out, and our board has also directed us to increase, uh, valley-wide enforcement, and that has a lot of public support, uh, these numbers come from our customer satisfaction surveys that show that 63% of our customers strongly support wastewater enforcement, but only 31% think we're doing a very good job at it, so our community supports enforcing our wastewater codes that are already in effect, again, through city and county codes, uh, but we're gonna need to do a better job, uh, with enforcement, so we're gonna track this at every one of our board meetings, uh, going forward, uh, to, or, in order to keep the community apprised of those enforcement efforts, uh, we're also, uh, taking off the, uh, cap, I'm sorry, Councilman Anthony?
Okay, so, so you, you talk about enforcement, so, uh, when I think of enforcement, I'm thinking about putting handcuffs on people, throwing them in jail, so what, what, what is enforcement, what's your enforcement when it comes to getting people to use less water, or get rid of these, you know, the, I, I like your comment about if you're just mowing the grass, it's probably a waste, so, uh, what, what is the enforcement mechanism that you have to do something like that?
Okay, so, when, when we talk about enforcement, that is really, the, the Las Vegas Valley Water District staff will be enforcing within the city of Las Vegas and unincorporated Clark County, C of Henderson staff within their jurisdiction, and North Las Vegas within their jurisdiction, uh, right now, and they all have pretty similar rules, so, for example, as of March 1st, you're only supposed to be watering three days a week, and everybody across the valley has a, has a watering schedule, we can see through our meter data, or we can see when our, our meter guys are out in the neighborhoods, if you're watering on the wrong day of the week, that's a violation, right, if you have a, a leak that's running out into the street, that's a violation, so the, the first thing anybody ever gets is usually a, a door hanger, if, if it's physical, or a, a courtesy notice, uh, if we see it through electronic data, and then if those, uh, offenses continue to be repeated, then you'll be fined, starting at a very small fine, probably $20, and then going up gradually from there, uh, in order to get the, the behavior corrected.
And if they, what happens if they don't pay the fine?
Well, eventually your account's delinquent.
So that, that would be, uh, part of your water bill?
Right, it goes directly onto your water bill.
On your water bill, okay, and, okay, all right, thanks.
Could I ask along that same line, that means your water would probably be turned off, right, your bill's delinquent?
Well, we, we try very, very hard not to turn anybody's water off, um, I mean, we can, we can lean the property, and this goes for anyone who doesn't pay their water bill, right, not just anybody, you know, it'd be the, I'm sure we have almost identical procedures to the city, you know, providing sewer service, you know, any municipal service, if you don't pay your bill long enough, you know, with the power company, or you guys-
I wanted to say, I think you do a really good job in informing people, I, I got a notice, not that I was doing anything wrong, but just saying to me, "It appears that your water was on on Sunday and it wasn't supposed to be", I, and I didn't know, I have a gardener who does that, so I was able to tell the gardener, and I didn't get another notice, so I guess maybe he had made a mistake, but it's a nice notice, I mean, it's not, you know, threatening in any way, it's just telling you, um, and if you have a, a, a regular flow, I don't know, I don't know, for example, if you have a pond with koi in it, uh, if you have water running all the time, uh, it's water running all the time for the koi, um, they have sent me a notice telling me that it seems I have something that's consistently running, would that be it?
Yeah, um, really, that would be a leak, like, if you, even to, even a, a koi pond or a pool only fills intermittently, it only fills enough to make up for the evaporation, if you have a, a running toilet, or if you have a leak in your irrigation system, your meter's spinning 24 hours a day, and, and we can see that, so we send those courtesy notices, those, we call them ticklers in terms of the, uh, the leak notifications, um, because a, a leak in, of itself, you know, we, we want you to know that, a lot of people, you can have a big leak on your property and have no idea if that's just the water bill you're used to pay.
But I just wanted to let you know, I think you do a good job, and I think the way you do it is very friendly.
We, we're, we're trying very hard to work with the community to, to achieve these goals, but I do wanna point out, by our estimates, if everyone would just follow the existing rules, without any new regulations or anything else, if everybody followed the existing rules, our community would save about 37,000 acre-feet of water a year, I know you guys don't think in acre-feet like I do, but the maximum shortage we face under federal law is 30,000 acre-feet a year, so we can save 150% of any shortage the federal government can impose on us, simply by following the existing rules in terms of water usage. So we've taken off, uh, the ceiling on our water-efficient landscapes to be able to apply it to parks, like I said, we don't have any problem with parks, but we think there's an opportunity with some of the older parks in our, uh, community to make them look a little bit like the newer parks, right, where they still have plenty of playable turf areas, but also have a lot of new amenities, we, we have millions of dollars in our budget to look at playgrounds and sports courts and different areas to replace some of that turf, uh, with more water-efficient, uh, landscape and, and amenities, uh, in order to help save water, so that's something we'll wanna work closely with your staff on, uh, we do want to work across jurisdictional lines on looking at prohibiting the installation of more non-functional turf, right now, some of the existing development agreements, right now, some of the existing codes within the, the local jurisdictions require a certain amount of, you know, they call it open space, but by the time you slice it up, they're not all parks, they're, they're medians, they're pocket parks, they're not functional areas, and as we're paying, you know, we've paid $230 million to take turf out of our community over here, and over here, our cities and counties are forcing people to install more, and that is a part of, of what we would like to address, so that we stop, uh, incentivizing or even requiring the installation of non-functional turf, so this just shows overall our, our population growth and our water usage, so you can still see, we're in a very healthy place, uh, we're not standing up here sounding alarm bells, what we're saying is, the uptick we've seen in the last couple of years won't be sustainable for the next 10 or 20 years, we're, we're gonna have to reverse that trend line and start bringing our per capita and our aggregate usage back down, uh, in order to continue the kind of robust economic development we've been seeing in this valley, uh, so just a couple slides I know have gone on for a while, these are directly from our resource plan, and what this shows is, the red line is population growth through 2069, those are the Center for Business and Economic Research population projections from UNLV, combined with our conservation goals, to show what our water demands will be by 2069, this shows a 20,000 acre foot shortage on the river every single year between now and 2069, and shows that we have absolutely no problem, this one shows if we double the rate of population growth and double the amount of shortage that we would take every single year, that we could have to bring new resources on by the mid-2040s, but if we take those same fairly dire circumstances and reduce our water usage by eight gallons a day more by 2035, we push the need for new resources out into the mid-to-late 2050s, so conservation demand management is within our control and really does give us the key, uh, to controlling our own future, so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions that the, the council has.
Thank you, Mr. Enslinger, absolutely great report.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Or comment, or?
Miss, that's a Councilman's dream.
I just want to say, you know, when you see it in presentation form and perspective, really puts it more in line to exactly what is going on and all the work that you guys are doing. And I want to applaud you and your team for continually, you know, keeping the foot on the pedal in terms of our conservation efforts. We know, I don't think many people sometimes realize how important this is. You know, without water, water's life, and if we don't maintain it, then we're just shooting ourselves in the foot. So, thank you guys very much. And also, is there something the city could be doing more? Or something, things that, I know you guys might have private conversations with Mr. Parago, but is it something that, you know, initiatives that we are implementing that we could be doing better on, or where we could go? Maybe that's a deeper, longer conversation, but I would love to try to understand that.
Well, I know Tom's going to make a presentation on what you've already done, and by all me, I think the city deserves, you know, an A, you know, on your report card for what you've done in conservation already. Your, you know, input into, you know, what the Water Authority has done, the actions you've been willing to take, I don't have a negative thing to say about what the city has done. What I would say about moving forward, what I'm asking every city, every county, I mean, it's one county, but every unit of local government, my request to them is, we take a hard look at our development codes, and we take a hard look at previously entered into development agreements that perversely incentivize people to put in grass that's simply going to waste water. So, that's number one. And then, number two, be able to work with your staff on city facilities, you know, parks and other areas to see if there are water savings opportunities where we'll invest the money, but hopefully it can result in better facilities for your citizens at the same time saving water for the entire community. So, those are my two asks of you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, and I would definitely ask the plea to go to the county with the explosive growth in the Southwest, with all the sports that are coming in, and hundreds and hundreds of apartments that are going in there, and knowing the fields we're putting in, the effort really has to go to the county to understand and get the message out to anybody who's new to our community that these are things that you can do to affect conservation.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, in our ward, in Ward 6, we worked diligently with you guys with our Providence area on getting turf out with the Knickerbocker Park. So, with Southern Vada Water, we did, you guys, we did amazing things together.
Oh, thank you. And I hope I'm being clear. Everybody's been tremendous. Everybody's done a great job. It's just not a time to rest on our laurels. We have more work to do. That's my main point for everyone.
And we're going to do nothing but grow. Population's going to do nothing but grow, and it's up to each new person to take on the responsibility in this area. And so, it's to get the word out to them to do your part.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And Mayor, could I ask, you, the, what you showed us today, you gave us a copy of it, didn't Scott? Did we receive a copy of his presentation yesterday at our CMO briefing?
Yes, I, Mayor Protem, I handed those out yesterday.
You did, okay, because I didn't get a chance to read through all of it, and it is very good. And I want you to know, I think what we did in our medians was a brilliant idea. I want you to know that came from Ward 1, and Jerry Walker's tremendously talented people, but it has worked, and the people are very happy, and I think it helped conserve some water, too.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, my time's almost up here at the city, but for eight years, I have really enjoyed serving on the Water Authority as the city's representative, and I'm sure whoever is appointed to take my place will be equally diligent, because I'm an old-timer, 1951 arrival, we did not have any Lake Mead water then. I think Henderson, the defense plants got a little bit of it in a small pipe, but it was like the mid-'50s when we started to get water from the lake, if I'm not mistaken. Am I very far off on that?
1971.
So, but we got some in the '50s, it just had to expand.
The BMI line came in during World War II, and then the main city lines came in in 1971.
The point was, as a child growing up here, I was used to, the population was used to, living off that, what we now call 10%, oh, I'm not sure that's the well water, I'm not sure we're really using, you know, that number. But I think we were used to the water police. We were used to the people driving around in the little motor scooters, watching to see if your water was running onto the street. And everybody was conscious of that. Everybody pulled together, and everybody had Bermuda grass. Literally, you let it go brown in the winter, and you didn't worry about it. And the city parks did, too. We just played on them as they were. It was no harm at all. People got hotels, they got the new grass seed for the hotels called Hotel Mix, and then everybody wanted green grass all year long. And so, by then, the demand grew. So, we have now got to stay on top of it, as I like what was said about the pedal to the metal by my colleague, Krieger. It's not, no question, we've got to stay on it. The thing is, is we've converted some money, some land at our house, and we're going to do more. And there's nothing like shade trees, really, for this climate, anyway. You know, turf doesn't help you as far as that goes, but shade contributes to a lower power bill, contributes to so much with such a little bit. So, I really encourage people to try to pay attention to this and drink Lake Mead like the mayor does. I always ask for Lake Mead with a lemon to soften it just a little bit, but it's perfectly fine. And thanks to our city sanitation efforts, you could darn near drink the water after we process it and put it into the wash. We're only one step away from being able to drink our own water. But the perverse problem is, we lose, I heard some oohs and ahs, or people, we're only one step away, but we lose credit if we use our own water. It's the darndest thing. So, that part of the treaty is perverse, because there's no encouragement to go further in the treatment process. We would lose a whole bunch of our water credit. So, someday, we're going to have to ask for, or find a way to renegotiate all that. Am I wrong on that?
Basically, it's a push. If we treat it, put it down in the Las Vegas wash, and take it back out, we get a gallon back.
Yeah.
If we treat it, put it into a purple pipe, and the City of Las Vegas uses that to irrigate a park or a golf course, we get a gallon back. So, reclaim, reclaim, doing it all the way to direct potable reuse wouldn't actually be any different than our return flow credit.
Wouldn't it, if it was, I'm talking about consumable water, not about use on grass. I'm talking about where humans can, go ahead and drink it, it's perfectly fine. You could almost drink the water we process right now. Anyway, okay, I stand corrected.
Thank you. Mr. Parago.
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. Just real quickly, I think it's always important to do a quick reminder of all the things that we're doing at the city. So, and it's been in partnership with the Southern Vada Water Authority and the Water District and all of their experts that have really helped us be very strategic in this. 3.2 million square feet of turf reductions, and like Mr. Ensminger was talking about, we're very aggressive at reducing passive turf that is only there to be mowed and spend money on. That saved us 60 million gallons annually. Reduction in sportfield turf, not sports fields, but converting to artificial turf, saving another 140 million gallons of water annually, and of course, through drought-tolerant landscaping and the median landscaping, as Mayor Protem talked about, another 100 million gallons annually through some of these efforts. And then, the operational improvements, and, you know, you talk to the folks that work for Jerry Walker in operations and maintenance, these people have a PhD in water conservation and maintaining our facilities, because we have the most beautiful landscapes, the most beautiful shrubbery and flowers and everything else, and we're constantly saving water. So, tip to the folks at operations and maintenance, for sure. And you can see, then, over time, the impact. This kind of shows the city's water consumption for city facilities. Now, you see this uptick in '17 and '18, and that's because we took the BOMO plant offline, which used to provide water for Freedom Park, and so, that increased the amount of water we were getting from the Water District. But what this doesn't show is, in '19, we're seeing that trend back down because of the conservation efforts and everything else. So, we're getting that back on track. Every once in a while, there will be a blip as we do some of these improvements. And of course, we are fully implementing, when we develop and build a new facility like Mr. Ensminger was talking about, we're really conscientious about the turf we put in. So, we try to put in artificial turf for playfields where we can. We use for some of the buffer areas, drought-tolerant landscaping, and limits the turf, we do put into just turf that's functional, that's going to be used, that's going to be played on, that's going to provide an opportunity for picnics or whatever. And so, we're very careful about how we design those parks. We've also been very involved in all of the regulatory framework that's developed. And again, this is unbelievable leadership from the Water Authority over the years to help all of the organizations in this community, as Mr. Ensminger said, come together to implement regulations that have made a huge difference. So, through this, we did a quick kind of back-of-the-envelope estimate, but 42.7 million square feet of turf has been avoided because of these regulations, just in the City of Las Vegas in residential development. That's 2,000 acre-feet of irrigation use avoided, which, again, extends our growth profile, and those charts that Mr. Ensminger showed at the end, that pushes off that need for some of those drastic measures into future years. Also, the city has adopted regulations, you know, we all have limits on when we can water, we have limits on using fountains and all this other stuff. Those are regulations that the city's adopted. And so, next steps, and this is very important, we are already working with the Water District, Mr. Ensminger, everything he talked about are things that we're working on, really going after that non-functional common area turf, prohibitions on medians, slopes, neighborhood entryways, and so on. And it's interesting, as we're going through the 2015 master plan effort right now, the feedback that we're starting to get from stakeholders and from the community, we're seeing that drought and water conservation are rising to the top as concerns and on the minds of all of our citizens. So, some of the comments we've heard about, we have to keep it at the forefront, it's there. People who live in this community understand how important this is for our future. And so, that's sort of just some of the highlights of the things we're doing at the city, the successes we've had, but absolutely echo Mr. Ensminger's comments that now's the time to be vigilant. We have to keep this at the forefront, on everybody's mind, and we have to continue taking action to protect our future.
Thank you, Mr. Parago. Comments, questions?
I would like to ask, on that last slide that you had, or the next to the last one, where you talked about what you're going, the next one, it's the next slide. Well, yeah, Freedom Park, Wooster Park, what, when you say conservation upgrades, can you give me some idea of what you'd be doing at Wooster, since we're just reorganizing that one, renovating it?
Sure. So, I can't speak specifically to the actions, because I don't know specifically, but those were put forward as examples where, in all of these older parks, we're looking at updated irrigation systems that are more efficient and reduce leaks, looking at opportunities to replace, again, those non-functional turf areas, which consume a lot of water, with things like shrubs and flowers and plants, things that don't use as much water, drought-tolerant, but create a lot of beauty in those parks. So, those are the kinds of things.
So, it might be upgrading the irrigation system, and then, at Wooster, we needed the grass for the dog park areas. You do have grass in your dog park areas, right?
Yes, and I won't get into that. That's a conversation with Mr. Walker, I think, because there are options that, but it gets a little controversial, but there are certain types of chat that don't use water that dogs love.
It gets very controversial out near Wooster Park, I will tell you that.
I know.
But anyway, I understand, but we are redoing the irrigation system, so maybe that will balance it out. Thank you, I just wanted to get an idea.
Thank you, they do have alternatives. My family uses the alternatives for their dogs and their pets very successfully.
Yes, yes. And I'll, Mayor Protem, I'll make sure to follow up with Mr. Walker and Mr. Jansen to, to give you the information on Wooster Park specifically, exactly what we're doing.
Thank you very much. This is a report only and requires no action, and again, thank you so much. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to be turning the meeting over to Mayor Protem again, but I'm going to pull forward addenda, addendum item one, and I would like the city clerk to read that into the record, please.
Madam Mayor, can I just have one moment before we move forward to the next item? I just want to recognize some individuals who are in the audience. We have a group of students here, from South Academic Center, and led by their teacher, Ms. Janet Hurd, and they're down here just, you know, looking at civic engagement, and I wanted to welcome you guys. Guys, stand up, the other ones from Southwest, I mean, from South Academic Center. Welcome to City Hall. We love having you guys. And we look forward to seeing you guys at a future City Hall meeting. You don't have to come with your teacher to come down to City Hall, by the way. Thank you.
Unfortunately, because of technology, we have to take a five-minute break here in order to bring this forward. So, as soon as we're ready, our clerk will read it into the record, and we'll go from there. And Councilwoman, these are all yours. All yours, thank you. And this goes to...
We are now back from our recess, and also a short lunch that we were able to have, because it was the only time we were able to have lunch. We will now have item number 38, discussion of possible action regarding a new five-year contract agreement between the Las Vegas Peace Officers Supervisors Association and the City of Las Vegas. $576,000 from the general fund, and can we have someone from staff, please? Mr. Tarwater on that.
There's a little bit of irony in this. Scott Adams, city manager. State law, chapter 241, obligates the city manager to provide a report to the public on the issues of both parties that were discussed during contract negotiations. And this particular agenda item is the labor agreement between the City of Las Vegas and the Las Vegas Peace Officers Supervisors Association. The scope of discussions were a range of articles, six articles, seven, nine, 10, 12, 20, 21, regarding compensation, hours of work, holidays, sick leave, discharge and disciplinary procedure, and grievance procedures. The city and the LVPOSA, the union, accepted the fact-finder's recommendations resulting in the contract that you have before you on the agenda today. And the fiscal impact of that contract over the multi-year term of the agreement is $576,000. If you have any questions regarding it, our team is here to answer any questions.
Anybody, does anybody on the council have any questions relating to this? Our team, did you have to say anything else? Obviously, you think it's a good contract.
Dan Tarwater, Human Resources Director. I do think it's a good contract, and it looks very much like some of our other contracts here at the city. But most importantly, I wanted to recognize Lieutenant Herman Russell, who is in the audience today. He is the president of LVPOSA. Herman?
Can you raise your hand, or? Oh, there you are. Nice to have you here.
And I just want to, I want to thank them for all the hard work. This was 22-plus sessions, and it's lasted over a two-year period, so it's been a lot of work.
It's been a lot of work, and it's good that it's where it is now. Thank you very much.
Your Honor?
Yes.
My move for approval.
The motion has been made by the esteemed Councilman Coffin. And the motion is for approval. I said, well, either way. We have an unanimous vote on it. I should have said post, and then, now the vote, it has approved unanimously. We'll now move to item number 39, discussion for possible action to approve a petition... Discussion for Possible Action to Approve a Petition for RIT Relief in 180 Land Company LLC versus City of Las Vegas, case number A17758528-J in the Eighth Judicial District Court, and this includes all wards. And is Mr. Jerbic here?
No, Mayor Protem, but I can do the item. Deputy City Attorney Jeff Dorkak for the record. If Mayor Protem or any member of the council wants to discuss this item, we'll have to go into closed session pursuant to NRS 241 because it's ongoing litigation. However, if no discussion's needed and anyone's prepared to give a motion, we can proceed right to the motion out here, and City Attorney's Office recommends approval of this item.
All right, the City Attorney's Office recommends approval. Do I have an emotion, any motion from the...
Your Honor, I move for approval, item 39.
The motion has been made for approval. Will you please cast your vote? And the motion has again been approved unanimously. We'll now move to item 40, which is a discussion for possible action regarding a second amended and restated cooperation agreement between the City of Las Vegas and the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, in which the city will provide the agency's staff assistance, supplies, and services, and the agency will reimburse the city for all costs incurred for services. Redevelopment Areas 1 and 2, Wards 1, 3, and 5, Tarkanian, Coffin, and Krier, and the item is related to RDA item 5. Yes.
Bill Lawrence, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item is related, as you indicated, Mayor Protem, to Redevelopment Agency Number 5, and I would like to incorporate all of my comments from that item herein. This is to fund three services for the city using Redevelopment Agency funds. Funds are available, and staff recommends approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? All right, may I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, move for approval.
A motion has been made for approval. Please vote and post. And of course, it passed unanimously. Thank you. Item number 41 was, it's not in this book. Is that because we're doing the budget later, or?
Correct. We're trailing that until after item number 69.
Okay, so the budget is being trailed. That's item 41. And so we'll move to item 42, which is Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Approval of a Tavern Limited License Red Wolf Dead LLC Doing Business as Beauty Bar at 517 Fremont Street, Suite Number 150, in Ward 3. Mr. Coffin? Yes, Ms. McElhone?
Good afternoon. For the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director. The Beauty Bar was given a temporary license by City Council pending the outcome of the suitability investigation, with the condition that the director could issue the permanent license pending a favorable outcome. The suitability report at Roxy Amaroso, the owner, came back from Metro with an outcome that was not favorable, as an air of concern report was issued. The Planning Department is here today to discuss that suitability investigation and request a denial of the permanent license. The Beauty Bar has been operating on a temporary license since they opened August 2, 2018, and the following concerns have been identified in the report. On August 6, 2018, four days after they opened, Metro responded to a battery call at the Beauty Bar. An argument started with a member of a hired band member and the security guard named Caleb Caldwell. Two witnesses in surveillance videos confirmed a chokehold tactic was used by the security guard and the band member. And while Metro detectives did deem self-defense was justified, the chokehold was deemed unreasonable and excessive. Two months later, on October 5, 2018, Metro responded to another battery call with the same security guard, Caleb Caldwell. He repeatedly punched the victim in the face. Video surveillance revealed the victim never hit or attempted to hit anyone, and the attack was unjustified. The manager of the Beauty Bar, Mr. Wildenbeck, was uncooperative when police officers tried to enter the Beauty Bar and questioned Mr. Caldwell. Mr. Caldwell was later cited for misdemeanor battery. Mr. Wildenbeck was served with a notice of noncompliance for not going forward as the manager of the Beauty Bar and not updating his work card. Later on in the day, Metro officers conducted a follow-up investigation with the owner of Roxy Amaroso. Ms. Amaroso was served with a notice of noncompliance for duties to cooperate, and for an employee being uncooperative with Metro officers during a violent incident, and also was cited with unlawful designated nuisance for an employee being involved in a violent incident causing a public nuisance. On November 2, a month later, Metro detectives spoke to Ms. Amaroso, as they were concerned that Mr. Caldwell was still employed after two violent batteries had occurred at the location, and the last one even required the victim to be transported to the hospital. Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Wildenbeck were finally let go. Then on November 16, 2018, an undercover detective approached a security guard at the Beauty Bar and had inquired where he could purchase marijuana in regards to a marijuana dispensary. After finding out that the undercover detective wanted to buy an eighth ounce of marijuana, the security guard walked up to the disc jockey, who was employed at Beauty Bar, and obtained the marijuana. The security guard then sold 5.4 grams of marijuana to the undercover detective for $30 inside the restroom of the Beauty Bar. On November 30, the security guard was arrested by Metro for selling. On December 11, 2018, Metro detectives contacted Roxy Amaroso. Metro had some concerns that they had been notified that the Vagos, an organized motorcycle gang, was hosting its Christmas party on December 15 at the Beauty Bar. Roxy Amaroso denied any knowledge of this event. She stated it was scheduled behind her back with her previous partner. She had also shared with Metro detectives a membership interest transfer agreement, which was dated December 7, showing that she had bought her business partner out. The City of Las Vegas Business Licensing Division had no knowledge of this transaction to change ownership, and this is a requirement of licensing. On January 30, 2019, Ms. Amaroso received a correction notice for not reporting this change of ownership to the City of Las Vegas as required. A recent inspection on March 8, 2019, disclosed a new security company had been hired at the business. However, the security was working without alcohol awareness cards, which are required, and these employees, these new employees, were not on the employee list. The bartender also stated to our business license officer that Roxy Amaroso was no longer than owner of the establishment, which indicates that a change of ownership may have taken place a second time, which is not allowed without approval from the City of Las Vegas. So in the eight short months that this operation has been open, the Beauty Bar has had problems with the security staff and general management obeying laws and regulations, including incidences that have involved Metro and have included lack of cooperation. Ms. Amaroso has not demonstrated that she is capable of operating a nightclub with a Tavern Limited license. On Monday, April 1, an eviction notice was served on the Beauty Bar issued by the Las Vegas Justice Court. So the Beauty Bar, as of Monday, is now closed. Ms. Amaroso was probably notified of this meeting today, and that her license would be heard before City Council, unless she showed up in the last few minutes since I've been reading this. She is not here today. Metro is here today. We do have two officers that are here that are very experienced with Beauty Bar and what has been going on, and they're available if you should have any questions for them. We, recommendation-wise, we recommend the revocation of the temporary license and the denial of the permanent license. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there anything else you wanted from anybody else? If not, any questions from the council? And if no questions, then, Mr. Coffin, will you make your motion?
Well, it's regrettable, Your Honor, that we've had troubles on East Fremont, and I don't know whether it was a lack of experience on the applicant, but the applicant knew that there would be problems if she didn't observe carefully the rules of how engagements occur between people who work for her and patrons. You know, not very many innocent people down there on East Fremont at any given moment, but it's like anything else, you've got to be treated right. It's a condition of our license, so I think your recommendation is to revoke this license. Is that correct?
That is correct. She's operating under a temporary, so the motion today would be deny, deny the permanent license.
Your Honor, I move to deny the permanent license.
The motion has been made. Please vote. And the motion is approved unanimously. We'll now turn to item number 43. Oh, did someone...
Item 43 was held in abeyance?
It's in abeyance. So item number 44, since 43's obeyed? And item 44 is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number 1485, Alta Drive Landscape Maintenance for year 2020, Ward 1.
Good afternoon, Your Honor and Council. Alan Pavelka, City Engineer for the Department of Public Works, and I have with me Alicia Hawke, SID Manager, also with the Department of Public Works. So this district consists of 37 parcels along Alta Drive between Rancho Drive and approximately 275 feet west of Lacy Lane. This SID covers the annual maintenance costs of landscape maintenance and utility services for the period from July 1, 2019, through June 30 of 2020 of next year. The total assessment will remain the same as it has been in recent years at $75,800 and is paid 100% by the property owners. No written protests have been filed in the city clerk's office.
And we have received no calls pertaining to this. We used to years ago, but we have not. And I think part of it is because in recent years, we've had bitter gardening, so I just want to let you know that the people who are taking care of that area are doing a good job. And I would also like to emphasize what you said, and that is, it's 100% paid by the people who live along that area, so that if anybody feels we favor Alta, I know it was done before I got on the council, but please understand, they pay for that. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or anything from other people here? And I make the motion that we approve.
It's a public hearing.
And we'll move on to item number 45. No?
You need to open it for a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to open this for a public hearing? There is nobody who's stepped up for a public hearing? So there's nobody else, there's nobody wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and move on to item number 45.
For item 45, Alan Pavelka, City Engineer for the Department of Public Works. The assessments for the district will be suspended from July 1, 2019, through June 30 of 2020 due to a surplus of funds acquired through previous assessments. Although no assessments are being levied, NRS 271 requires a district to be levied each year. The maintenance of the district is funded 100% by the property owners through this SID. This public hearing is just a formality to abide by the statutes of NRS 271, and no written protests have been filed by the city clerk's office.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I now declare it open. Is there anybody wishing to make a comment? Seeing none, is there any comments? If not, then let's have your motion.
Your Honor, before we vote, we have to consider voting on 44 first, I think, and then we would do 45. Is that right?
No, 44 and 45 are report-only, so there's no motion needed on the other one.
Super, thank you.
So we'll now move on to item number 47. Item number 47 relates to boards and commissions, that we have a discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of nominee James Wright to the Southern Nevada Health District Public Health Advisory Board. Laquan McDowell previously held this seat with the term expiring of June 2019, and he has resigned. Unexpired terms on this board must be filled. Mr. Wright is eligible and wishes to be appointed. And on this, I believe, Councilwoman Fiori, you're prepared to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My motion is to approve.
Your motion is for approval?
Yes.
All right, let's vote on the motion. Do I need to do something else? Okay, we're going to wait just a second. For technological reasons? We have it now. Please vote on the item.
Well, it does pass unanimously. I'm not sure why it's not showing.
Can you tell us what the vote was?
A unanimous vote in the affirmative.
So the unanimous vote in the affirmative on the motion will now move to item number 48. And this includes recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at this meeting. First bill number 2019-6 amends the land use tables contained in the LVMC 19.12.010 to provide that the use, crop production, is allowed in the C1 and C2 zoning districts as a conditional use, and that was sponsored by Councilman Stephen Soroka. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes.
Will you please have the bill read?
Bill number 2019-6, in ordinance to amend the land use tables contained in LVMC Section 19.12.10 to provide that the use of crop production is allowed in the C1 and C2 zoning districts as a conditional use and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Let's please, there was a motion for approval. Will we please vote? And the motion carries unanimously. We'll now go to item number 49, bill number 2019-7, for possible action, it amends LVMC 19.06.060 to reduce the minimum lot size for development within the RE zoning district from 20,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet. It's sponsored by Councilwoman Fiori. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes. Bill number 2019-7, in ordinance to amend Section 19.6.60 to reduce the minimum lot size for development within the RE zoning district from 20,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Please vote on the motion. And post.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, you had a question?
I have, I have a lot of questions, because I don't, I don't understand what this is and what we're trying to accomplish here, and why are we lowering the lot sizes for residential estate zoning? And how does this affect, for someone that lives in a rural neighborhood preservation area, and that, and a lot of my constituents live in rural neighborhood preservation areas that are looking to maintain that, why would we go and lower the amount of square lot size down to this, instead of maintaining what it is? So that we can put more homes on a, you know, you can put two more homes on a subdivision versus, is that the case?
Madam, Madam Mayor Protem, the councilwoman who's sponsoring the bill can, of course, respond. This doesn't necessarily change density in the RMP. It does allow for an adjustment to the development standard from a 20,000-square-foot lot to an 18,000-square-foot lot, but the density would still be restricted by the general plan designation. So in the case of the RMP, which I believe is at two units per acre, that still is the mandate. So while someone could develop technically a smaller lot, they would still have to adhere to the develop, the density limitations that are established by the general plan. This 18,000-square-foot is consistent with how Clark County does their RE lots, and is the minimum lot size that's allowed under the inter-local agreement that we have with Clark County, particularly affecting the area in the northwest where we've had some annexations, and we still have some owner-initiated annexations to balance out the development between what happens in the county and what happens in the... the development between what happens in the county and what happens in the city, and of course, the sponsor can add to that.
Yeah, so, I don't, I just don't think that we should, it is increasing per se density, because if you can, if you're taking two thousand square foot off of a lot size, then potentially, if you have, you know, if you have ten lots, and that's twenty thousand square feet, that means you can put another home or another area, which would in turn increase density. And so, I, I don't believe that we should be trying to increase, increase it, and I don't think we should be lowering the, the minimum lot size. I think twenty thousand square feet has been established for RE, and I haven't heard any justification of why we would change that. Does this, does this bring back a different zoning level now, from like a RPD three, or is this?
Madam Mayor, Protem, through you.
You gotta turn your mic on.
Sorry. So, Madam Mayor Protem, through you. So, councilmen, to answer that question, no, this doesn't affect RPD three, it doesn't affect any other zoning district, it merely adjusts the minimum lot size, and again, that's the thing to stress as well, it's the minimum lot size for a lot that may be developed under the RE residence estates development zoning standard. So, it doesn't, it doesn't impact any of the other districts, it doesn't impact the standards for RPD three or anything like that.
Yeah, but it technically would increase, though, density. Just my, my example of if you had ten homes and you really used two thousand square feet lots, then you can add another twenty thousand square foot lot if you have a ten lot development.
So, correct, councilman. So, technically, if the underlying general plan did allow for that additional lot to occur, then yes, with this reduction, if you had a parcel big enough that you were previously, you only had nine lots, and now because of the extra two thousand per lot, you're able to get to an eighteen, an additional eighteen thousand square foot lot, then yes, that subdivision would technically have one more developable lot, but it still must adhere to the underlying general plan designation, and that sets the density limitation.
Yeah. I, I just don't see any compelling reason why we would change this. I don't.
So, yeah, so the reason why I've asked for this is because generally, when we do have people that are working in that ward and constantly comparing what the counties do, with, with this change, then our staff, it's, it's our norm, it's the same as our interlocal and our county, so it's not constantly staff recommending denial when the county recommends approval. So, it's more of a uniform, it doesn't change how we do business in, in our ward, especially Ward six, this is where this big area is, and we don't do a lot of density in Ward six, our neighbors dictate that. So, if there was an issue, the neighbors would, would, you know, would complain. So, this is why we're doing it.
Excuse me, I couldn't hear if you were finished. I'm sorry. Were you finished? I just wanted to say that I have, as Cedric has, older areas that they don't want to lower the amount that this bill would, would lower as far as the amount. And I know the county does it, but the county does a lot of things we don't want to do.
So, you know what? Why don't we, why don't we obey this, so we can go through it a little bit more? Why don't we obey it until May, our May meeting, and then we can talk about it a little bit more?
Okay. Could you make a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion to obey this till May, so we can go through it a little bit longer.
One second, Councilwoman and Mayor Protem. When was this published?
It was published on March twenty-first.
Okay. Yeah, so we're good into May, if you want to set the date. May one, is that what you want?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the motion is to hold in abeyance until May first.
That's the motion, and please vote. And we see that unanimously, that's approved. So, now we'll move to item number fifty-one. Bill fifty? I think we have that in here. Sorry, it might have gotten stuck. Item number fifty, Bill number two zero one nine dash eight, for possible action. This amends the interim downtown Las Vegas development standards set forth in Appendix F of the Unified Development Code Title nineteen, to adopt specific wall and fence standards for Area Two of the Downtown Las Vegas Overlay District. And this is sponsored by Councilman Bob Coffin by request of staff. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes.
Bill number twenty nineteen dash eight, in ordinance to amend the interim downtown Las Vegas development standards set forth in Appendix F of the Unified Development Code Title nineteen, to adopt specific wall and fence standards for Area Two of the Downtown Las Vegas Overlay District, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Post. And again, a unanimous approval of this item. And now we move to item number fifty-one, which is Bill number two zero one nine dash nine, for possible action, it amends LVMC nineteen point oh six one two oh, to remove the building height limitation generally applicable to main buildings in the R-four zoning district, and it's sponsored by Mayor Carolyn Goodman. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes.
Bill number twenty nineteen dash nine, in ordinance to amend LVMC section nineteen point six point one twenty, to remove the building height limitation generally applicable to main buildings in the R-four zoning district and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
The motion has been made to approve this item. Would you please vote? And post. And the item has passed unanimously. Now, we move to item number fifty-two. Bill number two zero one nine dash ten, for possible action, it amends various provisions of LF, LVMC Title six and nineteen, to establish the licensing and land use means and limitations by which brew pubs and ancillary brew pubs may sell malt beverages for off-premise consumption, sponsored by our favorite drinker, Councilman Bob Coffin.
Seems like a pleasurable kind of motion. I'm all in favor of it. I move for approval.
Okay. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read? I did that a little backwards.
Yes.
Bill number twenty nineteen dash ten, in ordinance to amend various provisions of LVMC Title six and nineteen, to establish the licensing and land use means and limitations by which brew pubs and ancillary brew pubs may sell malt beverages for off-premises consumption and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Madam.
Did we have someone who wished to speak?
Madam, Madam Protem, and I apologize, probably, I was not at council briefings yesterday, which this question probably would have been answered, but can someone explain to me specifically what this is? When you say off-premise consumption, and where does this, so you can have a brew pub, and you can buy something at the brew pub, and then you can take it off? When you say off-premises, where are off-premises?
So, so Madam Protem, if I may, so yes, so this would allow for them, consistent with state law, for a brew pub that brews their own product to actually sell for consumption at your home, for you to buy their product, their product only, at their location, and take it home for consumption.
Like a growler?
A growler, exactly. So, that's the off-premise piece of this. Currently, they can do tastings and things, and they can have a setup at the location for on-premise consumption, but this will allow us to update our, our language in both the Title nineteen and Title six, to allow you, Councilman Coffin, whoever, to go in, you like their, what they brew, you will be able to take your growler, have it, and take that home.
Okay. So, we currently, I used to, I know that, because I used to run Barley's casinos out in Henderson, and we sold growlers of the beer that was manufactured there. So, you're saying currently in the city of Las Vegas, that's not possible? So, Chicago, I thought Chicago Brewery over on Durango in Sahara? You can get a growler already. Is that in the city?
For the record, Mary McLeone, Deputy Planning Director, to you, councilmen, through Mayor Protem Tarkanian. So, just a little clarification, right now, if you're an established brewing your own beer at that location, patrons can come and purchase growlers to leave, to take the, the product home, to consume at home. What this actually does is, this actually allows a different location, so let's say you're Tenea Creek, which is located in the city, they could open up a second location where they're not brewing, and it would be under beer wine cooler, basically, the beer wine and cooler sale license, and they could sell for off-site consumption their product. But they don't, it doesn't have to be brewed on site.
Okay. So, Tenea Creek has a brewery on where they are, and you're saying that if they open up another tavern, some other place within the city, they could, they could brew their brew at here, and then they can ship it over to their, or tap it at their, at their other location, but then this would allow them to sell a growler at the ancillary location?
Exactly. It also allows, it doesn't have to be originally located in the city, it could be a brewery in Henderson, anywhere in the state, because it's a state license, and then they could set up an ancillary location in the city of Las Vegas.
Okay. And currently, they couldn't do that?
Currently, they cannot do that.
They could only have a, get a growler from where it's brewed?
That's correct. It has to be brewed on site.
Now, does it have to be their own product that they?
Yes, it has to be their own product, and it is limited to a growler or a six-pack.
Great. Thank you for the clarity, and I apologize for.
You don't have to apologize for inquiry.
Yeah, I would have, but if I was yesterday, I would have been there, I would have answered those questions.
And we do not have to have a public comment at this time, but I'm not going to be like that group in California that got in deep trouble when the poor man couldn't even talk. And I'm going to ask you, would you like to speak?
Madam Mayor Protem and councilmembers, my name is Wendy Forrest. I currently own Craft House Brewery in Henderson, Nevada. So, I just wanted to, first of all, thank Councilman Coffin for listening to our concerns about our local industry here in Nevada. We are greatly behind the national trend, but this does allow us to take one step forward and to help us become current with the national trends. So, what we're looking to do is open up a secondary tasting room, and the law does not allow us to have people enjoy our product at home.
Thank you very much, and I bet Coffin appreciates that, too.
There is a motion.
Thank you. We have the motion made. Will you please vote? I'm the only one left. All right. Everybody has voted for that again unanimously. And now we'll move to the next item, and that is Bill number, this is fifty-three. Bill number two zero one nine dash eleven, amends various provisions of LVMC Title six and Title nineteen, to establish a new alcoholic beverage licensing category designated tavern restricted, to be available only along a limited segment of West Sahara Avenue, and to establish licensing land use and gaming regulations and restrictions pertaining thereto, sponsored by Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian. Councilman Anthony, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes.
Bill number twenty nineteen dash eleven, First Amendment, in ordinance to amend various provisions of LVMC Title six and Title nineteen, to establish a new alcoholic beverage licensing category designated tavern restricted, to be available only along a limited segment of West Sahara Avenue, to establish licensing land use and gaming regulations and restrictions pertaining thereto, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval of First Amendment.
First Amendment, please cast your vote on the motion. And it has been approved unanimously. We will now move to item number fifty-four, and these are recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Items number fifty-four and fifty-five, Bills number two, twenty eighteen dash six one and twenty nineteen dash five, will be heard at a later meeting, and we will move on to new bills. Item number fifty-six are new bills. Item number fifty-six, number, Bill number two zero one nine dash twelve, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. City Attorney, would you read the new bill?
Yes, Mayor Protem. Bill number twenty nineteen dash twelve, in ordinance to amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual, to allow the use marijuana dispensary in specified land use districts by means of special abuse permit, adopt clarifying language regarding the waivability of certain special use permit requirements, and provide for other related matters.
New bill two zero one nine dash twelve is assigned to the April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen recommending committee members, Councilman Anthony and Coffin, and Councilwoman Fiori. If any so designated are unable to attend, the clerk's office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at the mayor's direction. Thank you. The morning session of the city council meeting is now in recess. We'll start the next session at eleven AM. I just said that for fun. I just thought you'd like to see where we are on it. So, we will now move on to the planning committee.
Item fifty-seven.
You know, we have to have a little fun. Item number fifty-seven, yes. This is for possible action. Any items from the eleven AM session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time.
I have two items, item number sixty-six, SUP seven five zero three three, applicant owner Precision Assets, three oh eight West Terry Avenue. The applicant has asked that be obeyed till May first, two thousand nineteen. And item number sixty-seven, SUP seven five one five zero, applicant owner Anna Ortega, eight nine zero zero Condotti Court. Applicant has asked that would be withdrawn without prejudice, and that's my motion.
I don't have a place to vote if, okay. And post.
Well, that did pass unanimously.
It passed unanimously. We have a little bit of technology today that just feels free spirited. Now, we are on item number fifty-eight. Items number fifty-eight through sixty-three are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine, and they're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Mayor Protem, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items numbers fifty-eight through sixty-three?
Move for approval.
Motion has been made to vote for approval. Please cast your vote. And we now have a unanimous vote on those on the consent agenda. Moving therefore to numbers sixty-four and sixty-five. This sixty-four is Z O N seven five one one five, on a request for rezoning from an R-one single-family residential to a P.O. professional office. Item number sixty-five, S D R seven five one one seven, on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed two-story, sixty-five hundred square foot office building with waivers of Title nineteen point zero eight development standards and Title nineteen point twelve parking standards. The applicant is Sylvia Esfarza Law, and the owner is Downtown Sanchez LLC, on point one six acres at seven two eight Garsis Avenue, R-one single-family residential. Zone proposed is the P.O. professional office. The planning commission and staff recommend approval on both items. These are in Ward three. Mr. Coffin, and our public hearings, which I now declare open. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor Protem, so, the rezoning is.
Excuse me. Sorry, your mic's on, Director.
Yeah, I got it.
We can't hear it.
I keep clicking it, it's not working. It's that technology problem she was talking about. The, Madam Mayor Protem, so the rezoning of the subject site to P.O. professional office is appropriate within this area of the Founder's District, and the proposed office adheres to the objectives of the Vision twenty forty-five master plan for downtown Las Vegas. Therefore, staff has recommended approval of the request, did site development plan review, subject to conditions. In this request, there's a reduction in, there's a way. In this request, there's a reduction in, there's a waiver for parking. Parking being proposed is comparable to other projects that have been approved via variances in the past. And that is one of the distinctions on this project. Now that this is in the downtown master plan area, the, the standards that apply here are a little different than how they've applied in the past. And so that's why you're, you're seeing transition from older development patterns to this. And so again, this is in keeping with the master plan vision for the Founder's District that has been endorsed and adopted by the City Council. And so staff has recommended approval.
And we have the applicant here.
Yes.
And we'd like to have you speak to the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon. A little bit about myself. My name is Sylvia Esparza. And I'm a mother of four, two children of my own, two stepchildren. I'm an attorney. I'm an immigration activist. I'm also a native born of Las Vegas. And we're really excited to move to this proposed location for, to a couple of reasons. One is because most of the client base needs assistance. And we are underserving the community as it stands right now in Las Vegas with immigration attorneys. The ICE office is downtown. The Immigration Court is downtown. And the federal courthouse is also downtown. There are major transportation routes that make it accessible for the community to access legal services. There are not that many immigration attorneys in Las Vegas. So we're bringing some legal diversity to downtown. Also, by being part of the revitalization, we're also bringing more jobs to the community and also needed service that is in really high demand. Another reason for the expansion that is really close to my heart is to be able to do more community service by doing free workshops, doing some trainings, and some community meetings that I haven't been able to do because my office is very small. So expanding it to 6,000 square feet would really allow me to do that, to partner up with other community members. Also, when we hired Cora Architecture, which will, I'll hand it over to Alexis Bailey in a second, we looked at the surrounding neighborhood to make sure that it was consistent with the 2045 Master Plan. And it is really consistent with the objectives and the goals and what we're trying to do for the future. And, you know, that's why the staff recommended approval. So just thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, council members Nathan Taylor, 8414, West Farm Road, representing the applicant. I'm going to be very brief, which I know you guys will like. I wanted to first say that we're really excited about this project. We're just respectfully asking that you follow staff's recommendation for approval and Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. Six people attended. We, we respect some of the neighbors' concerns. But we just ask that you follow staff's recommendation. This is a beautiful project. And I will turn it over now to Alexis Bailey, who will talk about the actual design.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Alexis Bailey. I'm part of the design team. We designed the building in an effort to complement the already amazing projects that are going on downtown and the urban fabric that exists there. We used high contrast, neutral colors that would enrich the design without straying from those historical buildings. We also have what we're calling the porch, which is a beautiful entrance here. That is a nod to the Founder's District. The lower level will be the parking garage, but we're screening that with box hedges, which will add a nice organic element to it and also a natural pop of color. It's also going to complement the pedestrian realm. That's going to be added as part of the project to the front of the building that runs along Garcis. Currently, there's just small shrubs there now. So we're going to be adding an eight-foot wide walkway as well as mature trees and additional plants beneath. The entire second floor is going to be the offices as well.
Okay. We do have some people who wish to speak on this item. First, Roy McMahon. Are you in the audience, Roy? Uh huh.
There are a number of us here.
Well, I have Roy McMahon. I have Robert Marshall. And I have Craig Sutton. And I don't know if you're all together or separate, but...
Yeah, we're all together.
Do each have an opportunity to speak?
If I have something that needs to be shown on the screen, do I need to be over here? In the middle. Thanks. Craig Sutton, 9420 West Sahara, on behalf of the adjacent landowner, who will come up right after me, Roy McMahon. The opportunity to have the zoning changes, we're in complete agreement with that. The issues that we have is nonconforming parking, where there's preferred 22 spots, but only nine are going to be on the site. My applicant or the owner next door, all the additional parking for this will go in front of his building along Garcis and overload an area that already has some difficulties with parking.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you reintroduce yourself?
Yeah. Craig Sutton, 9420 West Sahara. Then the building that is directly adjacent is 1,362 square feet. There are seven parking spots in the back, two on the driveway. So there's as many parking spots on our site. Our building is only 1,362 square feet. This building at 6,500 square feet has only nine spots, exact same number. We're in favor of the 2045 plan, and we're actually in favor of the zone change. The issue is the size of the building. What we have here is the Founder's District where we're at. And going to a different city meeting, we noticed that adopting soon is a form-based code. The form-based code has a little bit of an overlay determining where each of the types of T3, T4, T5, or probably a little bit of a blend between a T3 and a T4. And I have a couple of examples here. Showing here a T form, the actual urban core. The T5 is much more dense than what we have here. That would be kind of the footprint, footprint placement of the building that is proposed, which would be something like the low-rise. The T4 is a little bit less dense. More along the lines of a T3 building, which is a residential look. And we do believe the Founder's District is in the T3. There's a little bit of ambiguity on that. So I'm not 100% sure. But we look for a little bit of clarity. Our issue is not with the zone change. If an application can be split to a zone change, we're 100% in favor of the zone change. We're not in favor of the building being oversized for the site that it sits on. The site next door, where my friend's building is at, would have a 32-foot wall with only three-foot setback. So the wall would cast a shadow over the building and not be a, anything that's conforming to the general building sizes for the area.
All right. Thank you. Did Mr. McMahon or Mr. Marshall? Yes. Give your name, please.
Roy McMahon.
Roy McMahon?
Yes. And, and my address is 724 South 8th Street.
Right.
I own the, the lot and building next door to the site on the north side. I have been a business owner on 8th Street for the past 25 years. And I actually own two buildings on 8th Street. I'm in favor of growth and development. I understand the need sometimes for a zoning change, but not as drastic as the size and scope of this nonconforming design. This design creates a building with a large 30 to 35-foot high wall with only a three-foot property line setback next to my property. The wall runs the entire length of my, south side of my property line for 140 feet from the front sidewalk to the alley at the rear. This will block completely the sun on our site and any visibility to the corner from my building. This design will create a blemish for the neighborhood. There are no other buildings in the immediate area of similar design. And you have to go north of Clark Street to find another building like this. This is, let's see here. This, this street and those around it mostly consist of residences that were converted to professional use. All you need to do is drive down the street to appreciate it. This area is known as a T4 neighborhood in the Founder's District area of the Las Vegas City Master Plan. I quote, "Small to medium building footprints and medium intensity, intensity building types." So a massive building really doesn't fit in. Professional zoning in this area requires the maintenance of the residential character of the area. To achieve this goal, you need setbacks, landscaping, and parking, not zero lot line. This proposal will feature a garage that empties right onto the street. There are no buildings like that in the area. There's, like I said, I'm in favor of development, but this proposal needs to be redrawn to fit the site and the neighborhood. A building this size needs literally twice the lot. My neighbors have built large new buildings of similar size as being proposed here on larger lots with proper setbacks and parking, and they look beautiful. This building, though new and as proposed, will bring down values of the other buildings on 8th Street just by the unconnected look that it will have to the rest of the neighborhood. Its design would fit best in a T5 zone, which is, would be 4th Street or 3rd Street north. This brings me, this brings me to the parking issue. As you all know, this has always been a problem downtown, and we've been dealing with it forever. 6,500 square feet with 15 offices in this building, a conference room, receptionist as well, with only really eight parking spots and one handicap, where 22 should be the code. Will they be carpooling? I really doubt it. Do they expect not to have any clients visiting their office? When I opened my business next door on the exact same size lot, I was required to provide nine parking spots for my building. And it's 1,362 square feet. I did it to meet code, and I met code. It has three offices, kitchen, reception, in 1,362 square feet. But 6,500 square feet on the same lot is crazy. I support the City Master Plan for mixed use. I support any creative use that is at least compatible and able to support daily staff and client parking. Currently, limited street parking is available due to owners of both aging, single-family homes and small businesses. An objective is walkable use, but the use as a giant office will most likely produce few walking employees or clients. I would be glad to support a new building, one that is significantly smaller and like the other buildings in the area in size, character, size and character. Thank you.
You're welcome. Could I ask, Planning, is a variance requested for the, only the three feet? I thought we had five feet between a, a wall and a house.
Madam Mayor Protam, so there's no variance here because this is in the downtown master plan. They're not, this isn't, again, this is an area of transition where you are going from some older development standards from when, again, like the parking standard, for instance. The parking standard that was quoted in our staff report would be if we treated it as if it was standard suburban-type development, 22 spaces would be required at that square footage. Taking into account the fact, the location, and the fact that it's in the downtown master plan area, that's why staff supported the request to have nine parking spaces. So for instance, so in this case, they are requesting as a part of this action, a waiver to allow a three-foot rear yard setback as a part of the request.
So you are giving a waiver for that setback?
Correct. There is a waiver as a part of that request.
And how about for the parking? Because it is hard to park in that area.
There, again, they are, as a part of this request, asking where the code would otherwise require, I believe it's 22 spaces, to allow them to have nine spaces. So that is a part of this request. Yes, again, consistent with other requests in the area, and again, consistent with the fact that in downtown, part of the vision that the council has adopted is that we are going from a less parking or auto-intense activity on individual lots and more to communal parking, more other modes of accessing the site like bus and, and things of that nature.
Tell me, are we going to it? Or are we wishfully thinking that the public is going for it?
Well, again, we, this is a, one more time, this is a district in transition. So it's starting that. And you can see, again, not necessarily on this block, but on other blocks, north and south of this block, where some of that transition has already occurred to larger, larger projects, larger buildings, less parking onsite, and more expectation of using communal parking or other modes of transportation. This block hasn't had that on this frontage. But again, just south of Garcis on the, the opposite corner, we have a larger building. Additionally, north of this site, we have several other, the transition we're seeing is more from a law office to a law firm office. And a law firm generally requires more people and therefore bigger offices, whereas the home conversions were more able to accommodate a law office or a single practitioner-type practice.
And you're now using the form-based code there?
We are not yet using the form-based code here.
I wondered.
Yeah, no, no. So that's another thing I want to be clear on. And I'm, you know, I'm overjoyed with the fact that the community is embracing that and using that as their examples. We have not deployed form-based code here yet. The Founder's District is one of the districts. We would be looking to do a form-based code. But we do not have that standard yet. As the one gentleman indicated, we have to do the calibration to determine, you know, what exactly the transect would look like and what standards we would bring forth. Whether it's going to be in the four or the five ranges is still up in the air.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see, that, we had Roy, right? Roy was last. So, oh, ma'am, did you turn in the full?
I did.
You did?
I did. Trish Levitt is my name.
But that's all right. Tell us your name and please proceed.
My name is Trish Levitt.
Yes, that's right.
Hi.
Hi. I didn't even recognize you down there.
It's my new hairdo for the day.
Okay. Please proceed.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Trish Levitt. My husband and I, Andrew Levitt, own a law firm at 633 South 7th Street since, for a good while. Anyways, now we also have one next door to that, which is 627 South 7th. And then we have a residential at 621 South 7th Street as well. We have four parking spots at our law office, three in the front portion, and also one on the driveway, for a total of four. And additionally, off the back of the building, we also have one handicap parking space and two additional spaces. Along Garcis, a lot of our clients are able to park on Garcis on both sides because that is not metered. We've owned the law office since 1985, at which point we turned into a commercial building. We are against the size of the proposed building and the restraints that would come with the proposed request. Parking is a major issue. And if this building is allowed to be built, it will destroy the value of the surrounding properties, including my properties on South 7th Street as well as 8th Street and Garcis.
So you obviously do not approve of this. It sounds like a, it looks like a beautiful project.
It really is.
It's a beautiful project, but you're feeling it's overbuilt.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now this is Robert, I'm assuming?
Robert Marshall, Your Honor.
Yes.
If I may, I have come here with the names of 42, 42 signatures in the neighborhood. Is there a way to distribute this to the council?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. These are the names of 42 of the neighbors in the community. These are people who own land in the community or work in the community or live in the community. The community being just simply the block of, of 7th Street and the block of 8th Street. So these are all people who are within 150 to 200 yards of this building on a, of this proposed building on a daily basis. Can I go to the overhead?
Yes, certainly. It's right there. You just place it on there. That's right. We can see it.
This is a building that I built directly across the street from what is proposed. This is a 6,600 square foot building. The building that you see before you, my building, is the same size as the building that is being proposed. The distinction is the building that is being proposed sits on half the land of the building you see. In other words, the proposal does not adhere to any setbacks at all, and it does not adhere to parking. And it, the proposed building will destroy the value of the properties around it if it is allowed. This is... This is Don Campbell's building, built a block away. He also adhered to parking. I'm sure there's a few waivers, but he adhered to parking and setbacks. This is Lloyd Baker's building, who is a few blocks away. He adhered to parking and setbacks. The, if I could express anything to you, and this is the building that you're looking at, which looks nothing like the community, it does not adhere to proper setbacks or parking. What you're really looking at is, and they're asking for a waiver of thirteen parking spaces for this building, and so what they're really saying is that every little house that could be developed in the downtown community should have an entitlement or an allocation of twenty-two parking spaces, and if you start running the numbers, the minute you build a few of those, you destroy the value of everything around you in the community. And so, as a community, we are very strongly against this. I will note for you that former City Councilman Wolfson has voiced an opposition to this. I will note that Don Campbell and Lloyd Baker, and the Kinney family, everybody that has built in this neighborhood recently has voiced an opposition to this, particularly with signatures. And I thank you for hearing me. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from the council? Is there anybody else who, from the audience, that wishes to be heard on this item? All right, Councilman Coffin, do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I have looked at this now for a couple of months, trying to figure out how to do it. I've heard from all forty-two people, I think by phone or by letter, so, and a lot of them are my friends, so longstanding. But we're in a bit of a box here because there is parking on the street. I've driven down there quite a few times, and generally speaking, the parking along Garcis and on Eighth is abundant. On the other hand, I'm sure there are times when it could get crowded. But the thing is, is that I feel like I'm in a bit of a box here because the application was taken and found to be in order by our staff. The Planning Commission examined it thoroughly and approved it unanimously. I don't know what objections were raised at the Planning Commission, but it has received this kind of approval from people that know the law. They know our ordinances, and the fact that we're in a transition, and I think the word transition may not have ever been communicated to the people who opposed it, and that is that it's happened, it's been happening. Robert, tell me why in the world we took this?
I need to forward.
Yeah, because I see, the thing is, is you gave them a, you gave them a way to go because you had to, I think is kind of where I'm looking. Is that correct?
I apologize, sir, the, I couldn't quite hear you with the air.
The permission, the process moving forward, yeah, it looks like it's too small of a lot, in a sense, but we don't mandate parking in that area. We don't really mandate, we have it, but we exempt it, correct?
Correct. Well, so what we have is, we don't have an automatic application of our parking standard. That used to be the language. Now what we say is, because this is in what we call Area Two, so the Founder's District is Area Two, this is an area that wasn't previously covered by the Centennial Plan, but is a part of the downtown master plan area. So we haven't updated those standards yet. We're incrementally working through that process. And so what we allow, what the council has adopted, is an ability for people to ask for a waiver of those parking standards. And staff, you know, again, if we felt that the project as proposed was underparked, we would recommend denial as that would be the situation. Again, looking at the history in this area on Seventh Street, on Eighth Street, we have a number of variances that have been proved by this council, past councils, going back eighty-four, eighty-six, eighty-eight, the nineties into the two thousands, and even fairly recently, to allow variances for parking here, understanding that this is an area immediately adjacent to downtown that is transitioning from the old residential neighborhood that it used to be into the law offices that still have some residences interspersed in there, as was mentioned. Right over on Seventh, there is still folks that are living in one of those single-family homes, but it is definitely an area, as I said, in transition where parking is available on the street, as you would expect in a lower intensity but still urban area that this is. And based on the program, nine spaces is probably appropriate for this location, which is why staff and the Planning Commission had recommended approval of this item.
Mr. Coffin, if I might make a comment? Just as much as the parking, I'm concerned with the size and how it impinges on the other buildings next to it. And you know, it's a modern building, one of the, one of the draws of downtown is the older buildings they've taken, and they make them beautiful and useful, and it seems you've got a lot of it on Seventh and Eighth. And now what you're doing is you're putting a really modern building in among the others. Well, that's one thing, that's a matter of choice, but to impinge so closely on the other lots, I, I'll tell you what, if I lived there, if I had a business there, I wouldn't like it. And I don't think any of these people would like it if they had it that close to them, but maybe they don't care, I don't know. I'm sorry, I just.
We could always call for more testimony on that, too, if you want.
Yeah, well, and you know, we talk about transition, well, where were you transitioning? I thought we were transitioning our downtown area, taking some of our older buildings, which are beautiful, renovating them. And to me, well, that's what I tried to do on Charleston. I didn't have much, and we have quaint little buildings that are offices. I don't see it, but I know it's your district.
Madam Mayor, so your concerns, just because I think it's, we obviously appreciate the neighbors' concerns, but I think that simply it's just not true. If you could see the camera, this is Mr. Marshall's building on the right-hand side, and this is another building on the left-hand side. This is on Eighth and Garcis. So there is currently a very large building taking up several lots, and it is a modern building. This is the back end.
And how many lots does yours take?
It takes up one lot.
See, that's the difference. The one lot and the several lots, I think, is the difference.
Right. But it takes the same percentage. It's maximizing those three lots, and the front of it is also modern. And then in regards to the renovation, there's the Sixth and Bonneville, which is also modern, and it's maximizing also, taking up all of the street.
This is on Sixth.
We're requesting lots of waivers, so the trend is towards having some modern buildings. But even if this wasn't the trend, this was already there. Seven oh-three's already been there, it's been there for many years. It's there right now, and they approved it. This is not, so our building is nothing really different.
I don't know, but I think the city should pave that street. Re-oil it or reseal it or something. I'm sorry I interjected, Mr. Coffin, but I just wanted to point out those questions.
That's okay, because it does, looks like it needs it, but at least our maintenance is up to date because it's not getting any worse, that, that's why you see that sealer. Robert, do you have anything to add?
Again, Councilman, this is in keeping with the transition. To Mayor Protem's point, it is a different scale compared to the, a couple of the neighboring buildings, but we've seen that every time one of these buildings goes in, it is at a different scale than the neighboring buildings, and so we're going to see that effect occur in this district as it evolves, as it continues to grow, and those businesses continue to grow, and they kind of grow out of that footprint. To the Mayor Protem's point, in this district, we will probably see quite a bit of this tension between the adaptive reuse of existing buildings and requests for new buildings that may have a modern or may hearken back to an older architectural style, but that's, that's what's going to happen in the Founder's District. It's just the way the development is kind of progressing.
All right, thank you. So there is no mandate to change or to have an appearance as a residence, maybe a large residence, but nevertheless?
Not for, not for this district, not at this time. As we, as we move into the form-based code and we're looking at those standards, as we hear from the community, there may be some interest in doing some of that, but as it sits right now, we don't have any standard on the book that would require that.
Thank you. Your Honor, I don't think I have much choice except to go against my friends, which is to say this is in transition, and transition means a lot of things, and it probably was announced to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission may have heard the same arguments and voted unanimously for whatever their reasons were, but I'm going to go ahead and move for approval.
All right, Councilman Coffin, that's your motion. We watch planning very carefully in Ward One, by the way, with our older districts. And let's vote on the motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
And it has passed, and now, congratulations, and I hope you consider those neighbors as you build, and we'll move on to the next item.
That's sixty-five. That's a related act.
We need a second motion on sixty-five, please, Mr. Coffin.
Move for approval.
He has moved for approval, please vote. And post, and the vote remains the same. It passes, and we will now move on to item number sixty-six, sixty-seven. And the subject is SUP 75150, an abeyance item. And there's a public hearing.
Madam Mayor, that item you took care of in housekeeping, that item was withdrawn.
So that's taken care of?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Item number sixty-eight, WVR 75200, public hearing, the applicant owner, Michael Eric Catmull, for possible action on an appeal of the denial by the Planning Commission on a request for a waiver to allow a three-foot side yard setback where five feet is required and zero parking spaces where four are required for a proposed two-family dwelling at 415 North Ninth Street, R3, medium-density residential zone, Ward Five, Krier.
Good afternoon, my name is Lisa Demille. I am here representing the owner of 415 North Ninth Street, Michael Eric Catmull. We are requesting a waiver for zero parking spaces where four are required. I'm sure all of you are aware that they're revitalizing that's taking place in this area, and he would love to be a part of it.
Can you hear?
So his plan.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you, we cannot hear Bill.
Sorry, is this better? Okay. So, his plan is to renovate the property and turn it into a duplex, which happens to follow the pattern of the neighborhood, as there are two duplexes and a fourplex within a mile of this property. Please keep in mind that all renovations will be interior-only. Given the fact that each unit will only have one bedroom, Mr. Catmull does not suspect the number of cars to increase versus a single-family home, which is currently. Also, if you take a look, the two properties next door all to rely on street parking as they don't have any driveway. So this is our property currently. As you can see, we have half a driveway. The neighbor to the left has no driveway or any parking on the premises, and the neighbor next to them. So the side and rear neighbor have no complaints of this renovation. As you can see, the rear neighbor actually wrote an email to Councilman Krier regarding this issue. And Mr. Catmull has explored the idea of using the rear yard for parking. Unfortunately, because the neighbor to the right of us, or to the left of us, depending on how you look, their side yard is actually going over the property line from Mr. Catmull's property, and, which I found on the county assessor's website, which if you can look here. So the way that it is, is this is the neighbor's house, and this line would be where our property line is. There you go. So as you can see, our property line is going over their side yard.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Catmull would try to, would really avoid wanting to cause any distress to that neighbor by having them remove their side yard.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Summerville.
Madam Mayor, so the applicant is proposing to convert a single-family residence into a duplex residence, as indicated. The existing structure does not meet the required setbacks from the side and rear property line, and no parking is provided onsite. As the site is located in Area Two of the downtown Las Vegas overlay district, these discrepancies have been addressed via the waiver request rather than a variance. As a waiver, it is not necessarily subject to the same determinations as a variance. However, the applicant has to provide, has provided no evidence of a hardship related to the site to warrant upgrading the site from a single-family residence into a duplex, and therefore, staff has recommended denial as these, the exacerbation here with no parking is completely self-imposed. Thank you.
All right, the Planning Commission has voted six-one, staff recommended denial. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here other than the applicant who wishes to speak?
Previously, we did have the neighbor that has his house and his fence built on our property. He did come down, if you remember, if everybody remembers, he was here saying he didn't want to have his property torn down. I really don't want to cause any distress to him.
Am I losing my hearing, or are we all, are you having difficulty down there, too? I'm sorry.
I think it's been all day, actually, with those microphones.
All day we've had that, haven't we?
Yeah, those microphones are not.
Our microphones, I should have said.
Are not turned up enough. Luckily, I don't have that problem. Mind if I take over, Madam Mayor?
Oh, no, no, certainly. I just, I just couldn't hear.
Yeah.
I didn't want to think because of my age. I didn't want coffee.
No, 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 it's not you. So, Madam, Madam Mayor Protem, I want to move for approval on this. I did speak with the gentleman and his team. I do believe there's a hardship there with the, with the side lot that's there. And downtown is booming, we need to get this building revitalized, so there's no other discussion, I can move for approval.
All right, the motion has been made for approval. Any other discussion from the council? Please vote. Something has been wrong with our mics, and they should be looked at for next meeting. You see how needs differ in wards? The difference between the one ward and the other ward is very interesting because...
You mean some can hear you, something?
Mayor Protem?
I can't hear you.
Yes, we have, have we voted?
Yes. The vote passes unanimously. For some reason, the post dean function is not working.
We better have somebody look at the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Because we've been having trouble with that all day, so you're very fortunate, thankful to Councilman Krier.
Thank you.
He really helped you out there, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone, thank you.
Can I just ask, did we do item number sixty-seven? Did we, not you, sir. You leave now because you're ahead.
That was withheld without prejudice.
That was withheld without prejudice, okay, and we did sixty-eight, and now we're on sixty-nine. SDR 75333, applicant owner NSA Property Holding LLC, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-hundred-and-two unit, thirty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot mini-storage facility with a waiver to allow a zero-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the west, south, and east property lines where eight feet is required, and a ten-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the north property line where fifteen feet are required, the perimeter landscape buffer along the north property line where, excuse me, fifteen feet is required on 1.49 acres at 3301 Need Avenue, M Industrial Zone, Ward One, Tarkanian. And could we have the applicant give us the information, please?
Certainly. My name is Michael Pansero. My address is 7485 West Azure. I am the architect representing the owner, Store America.
All right, did you want to tell us anything about the project?
Certainly. So the owner had previously a two-story building here that was in some form of dilapidation, so they've, in an effort to help revitalize the neighborhood and improve their asset, they've gone through, and we've already removed the existing building, and we're putting a building up. and we're putting a building up roughly the same size and footprint. We will be enhancing some of the landscaping and, I won't say off-site, but the perimeter, public adjacent features for the site.
Right. And I and my staff did visit your area on Mead, and we saw you have an, almost an impossibility to put landscape on certain sides. And none of the others near you have landscaping along the sides or the backs. So, we understood that problem. However, we did ask Planning to make sure that you have, what is your, an enhanced landscape in front? Because we are trying to build up the looks of the area, even though right now, it's just looks industrial. We wanted to make it look as nice as possible. And the only way we can on your property is in the front area.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Protem, and we've spoken with the applicant, and we've requested that we get some additional trees within the front buffer, and they've agreed to that. And when I do my staff report, I have a condition change to articulate that.
So, does the applicant approve of that condition of extra lush landscape in front?
My understanding is yes. My staff reached out, and we're requesting additional trees within that landscape buffer. And we believe that provides that more lush landscaping that you've requested.
Okay. And did you have any problem with that?
No, that's totally correct. I was contacted, I did reach out to the owner. And so, I understand that we're going to put four more trees in the front to further enhance that, and my client has no objections, and we gladly do so.
You'll be the best-looking lot there on Mead.
I do agree that to be correct.
This is a public hearing. I now declare it open. Is the app, well, you did it already. And Mr. Summerfield spoke already. Did you want to speak anymore?
Let me just give the official staff report. So, the, Madam Mayor, Protem, so the subject site was previously developed as a mini-storage facility per a plot plan review and special use permit from 1988. Staff has determined that the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding development in the area. Further, staff finds that the requested waivers to allow the reduced landscape along the west, south, and east perimeter will have a minimum negative impact to the surrounding industrial area, as Mayor Protem, you yourself have already discussed. Therefore, staff has recommended approval of the project, subject to conditions. Staff would like to do, if approved, we would request that an amendment be made to Condition 7 to include the following additional language. "The technical landscape plan shall include the following changes from the conceptual landscape plan. Add one 24-inch box tree to the landscape buffer west of the north drive aisle, and three 24-inch box trees to the landscape buffer east of the north drive aisle." And with that, we recommend approval.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and my motion is for approval. So, please vote.
Subject to the amended condition.
Oh, yes, subject to the amended condition. Vote and post, if we can. All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, good luck to you.
Appreciate it.
And now, we move to item 70. Is that correct? We were on 69? Are we, well, I thought the budget was at the very end. Have we reached the end? Oh, excuse me, the end of planning? So, guess what? We get to hear the budget, with all those exciting numbers, and not enough money. Thank you, Gary. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. For the record, I'm Gary Amling, your Chief Financial Officer. And, let's see if we got the slideshow up here. Don't see it. Okay, there we go. First off, as way of introduction, I'd first like to recognize and give thanks to Finance Director Vannetta Appleyard and the folks in the Finance Department, as well as the department heads and their staff that worked tirelessly in putting together this tentative budget for fiscal year 2020. Together with the City Manager's Office staff, we believe that we put together a budget that responds to all of the things that are shown on this slide, primarily your council priorities, the citizen survey, and the employee engagement survey. Unfortunately, as we've talked about as part of our budget discussions over the course of the last 12 months, we are finding ourselves in a position where we don't have enough funding to be able to fund everything that we would like to. So, we've had to make some hard decisions in putting together the budget. Our emphasis continues to be on expansion and revenue development in priority areas, primarily in public safety and homeless issues. Although I will point out at the beginning of the presentation that we have not fully funded all the things we'd like to in terms of homeless issues. That's why we submitted a bill draft request to the state legislature to try to add to our revenue portfolio, to be able to fully fund...
I think you have to speak closer to the mic. We're having trouble today. And this is very important information, I know you have.
Microphones are better for shorter people, so I apologize.
I know, I know, that's the problem you have, if you want to be tall.
I may have to stand up taller and stretch every now and then. It's too far away, unfortunately.
The speaker will work?
I will do the best I can to stay close to the microphone. As we've discussed, we are doing whatever we can to try to address our structural budget deficit. We've talked about our vacancy management system. We'll be talking about that in some of the slides that come forward. We are looking for new revenue sources. And then, we did put together the Team 2020 effort, which we talked about in your briefings this week. That is yielding some results, although some of the results that we're hoping to yield from that effort won't be realized until either next year or perhaps other fiscal years down the road. First up, we'd like to give you a little bit of background information about how we're performing for this current fiscal year. So far this fiscal year, I would say that the economy has been performing pretty well. Our revenues have been coming in above budget. We're currently projecting to end the fiscal year about $17.7 million above budget. As we've talked about in your council briefings, consolidated tax has been performing above budget. We're currently projecting a $6.2 million surplus in that account. Property tax, we're about on target with the budget. Licenses and franchises, we're about $6 million above budget. And then, other revenue sources are combined about $5.2 million above budget. On the expenditure side, we're currently underrunning the budget. Our estimate for year-end is about $2.2 million. Primarily, the savings on that, in that regard, are the result of the frozen positions, as a result of our position freezes. And we'll talk more about that as we get into the later slides in the presentation. We are recommending the use of some of that money to try to fund one-time requests that were asked for as part of the FY '20 budget. Also, to fund capital projects that don't have other funding sources available to fund them, and to help build up our reserves, particularly in the liability fund and the Employee Benefits Internal Service Fund. Looking at the fiscal year '20 projections for consolidated tax, we are expecting to see growth continue. However, I will point out that the budget now basically is in expansion. But we are likely to see at some point that expansion to end. In fact, this June, we will pass the expansion that started in March of 1991 and ran through March of 2001, which was a 10-year expansion period. This June, the current expansion will pass that expansion period and become the longest expansion since World War II. Most economists are predicting that at some point, probably in the next two years, that expansion will come to an end, either through a slowdown or perhaps entering into a recession. Although, most economists are not predicting that it would be a very deep recession. And so, we are building that into our five-year forecast, but we don't see that being a major issue in fiscal year 2020. In terms of property caps, property tax caps, the primary caps are 3% for residential and 8% for non-residential properties. Because of the secondary cap formulas for fiscal year 2020, that will be the full 3% cap on the residential property. But the non-residential property would cap at two times the CPI, which is 4.8%. With new construction activity that's going to be rolling into the assessment roll, we are estimating a 4.5% growth for fiscal, over fiscal year 2019. We are bringing forward expanded requests in your priority areas. And right now, currently, the budget is showing a surplus of $5 million, which we're recommending to file for the tentative budget. And that, that excess is primarily due to our frozen list, which currently stands at about $7.6 million. Looking at a little more detail on the revenue side, I mentioned C-tax, we'll have some slides to look at that in a minute. Property tax, we did see an assessed value increase of 9% for this coming fiscal year. But again, those tax caps are restricting that growth. And so, the excess amount that's over and above the caps becomes what's known as a baited tax. And I'll show you that in the property tax slide. But that baited tax will now be up to $40.7 million. That's an increase of $7.2 million over the amount for fiscal year 19. In licenses and franchises, we are projecting a slight decrease for this coming fiscal year. The primary reason for that is due to some one-time monies which came in during fiscal year 19, which we're not anticipating would be repeated in fiscal year 20. Fines and charges for services and other revenues are expected to increase by 11.4%. The primary driver there is the Medicaid monies that we're anticipating to come in, that we're planning to receipt into the general fund to help support public safety operations. That's about $6.5 million. The rest of the Medicaid monies are anticipated to help support capital projects and vehicle replacements, and will show up in other funds. And then, the contribution for the Redevelopment Agency is estimated at $1.9 million. And that's the item that you approved in your RDA meeting this morning. This first chart in the presentation looks at the consolidated tax history, starting with fiscal year 2006 on the left-hand side of the chart, and going through the projected budget for fiscal year 2020 on the right side of the chart. The one thing you will note, and I know some of the numbers are probably not readable from where you're sitting, but one thing you will note is the steep decline going into the Great Recession. We were sitting at $264.3 million in fiscal year '06. Just four years, four years later, that had dropped right about $60 million, or 24% down to $201.5 million. And that's why we get concerned when we talk about the budget, because many of our revenue sources, particularly the largest ones that we depend on, are very economically sensitive. And so, when the economy does go through a negative cycle, that revenue can either slow down or decline. In fact, when we saw that decline of $60 million, obviously, we had to take dramatic actions to be able to continue operations of the city. It did take, one thing other to note on this is it did take a full 10 years to get back to the level that we were at in fiscal year 2006. It wasn't until fiscal year 2016, in fact, when collections caught up to and passed what it was 10 years earlier in fiscal year 2006. Property tax is another economically sensitive revenue source. And you can see, again, that the peak, which occurred in fiscal year 2008, was followed by a pretty steep decline. This chart actually separates out the property tax that we receive, which is shown in the yellow at the bottom of each pie, of each stacked bar chart item. And then, the green part on the top is what was known as a baited property tax, the part that is on the assessment roll, but we don't get to collect it. When the peak occurred, we were at $134.7 million in fiscal year 2009. That dropped a few years later, down to $88.2 million. We are still, in fact, if you go all the way out now, what is a full 11 years later, we're projecting to be at $110.4 million next fiscal year. That's still a full $24.1 million, less than we collected back in fiscal year 2009. It's that type of thing that has made it challenging for us to try to balance our budget and meet the service demands of the city moving forward. Looking at the revenue sources for the city, and primarily, this presentation, at least the first several slides, deal with the City's General Fund, the fund that provides the majority of the day-to-day services of the city. This slide shows you the major revenue sources for the City's General Fund, the consolidated tax being by far the largest in the bluish color on the right-hand side of the pie chart, totaling about 54% of our overall revenues at $336 million. Property tax at the bottom left-hand side, in the deeper orange color, totaling about $110 million. Together, those two revenue sources by themselves make up over 72% of our projected general fund revenues going into next fiscal year. So, you can see, those being the economically sensitive revenues, that if the economy does start to teeter a little bit, we need to be very prepared for that. And that's why we have reserves. And we'll talk about reserves later in the presentation. The other primary revenue sources by category are licenses and franchises, about $98 million. And then, other revenues that have been categorized together, $74.5 million. Some of the major expenditure assumptions for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020. Obviously, we're intending to try to sustain as many programs as we can, while at the same time, expanding in priority areas of the City Council. We are currently in collective bargaining with our major bargaining units, all except for the CEA Group. IAFF, POA, and PPA are currently in open negotiations. And we've had some discussions about how that's been going. But we hope that it'll be finished up here in the next few months, and we'll have more certainty moving forward about how much money we need in the budget for those items.
Madam Mayor, Protem? Are we allowed to engage in questions as we're going through the budget?
Certainly.
Great, okay. So, as we look at the expenditure assumptions, as we spoke in briefing, and I just want to make sure that we get this on the record, because as we look at expenditures, there's a few things that I've requested. And I just want to make sure that the other council members receive what I've requested, since we couldn't be together all in the briefing at one time. But for the last 12 months of exit packages, there's been rumblings of some excessive exit packages. I think that the council, as the council, we set policy and budget. You know, we've discussed, you know, how the city is run. And as we look at our budgets, it's very, very important that we are very aware of what's happening. And also, I would like to see the differences between 2017 and 18, as we've moved people around from director to chief to... So, we've moved people, we've moved positions. There's been an access of up to $50,000 in different salary ranges from 2017 and 18. And I think it really needs to be pointed out, because as we look at these budget numbers, it doesn't, it's not crystal clear. So, I just really would like this budget to be crystal clear with us up here and, and seeing where a lot of the dollars are, the hard, the hard dollars are. So, that's the first thing.
Thank you for that. And we did receive your request, and we should have something for you in the next few days.
And you might mention that whatever you send to her, you send to the other council members, too, so they'll get that.
Absolutely, that's our practice. We are including in the budget the increase in O&M cost that's based on the assets being turned back to the city from third parties, primarily taking back Cashman Center from LVCEA. The Woodlawn Cemetery contract is going to be expiring late next fiscal year, and we have to take that over in the month of May. And then, the Central Library, we're taking that over in the next couple of months. And so, that's budgeted. The operating costs associated with those facilities are budgeted in the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. We are working towards some accounting changes to realign some of the costs that have been previously captured in our Employee Benefits Fund. We have been concluding in that, in that fund, not, what we call non-productive hours, basically, people's sick leave and vacation leave. That has been confusing for people, and as well as for myself. And so, we're moving that back to the funds where those people actually exist, so we have 100% of those costs captured in those funds.
Well, that's part of the request, Gary, because a lot of times... So, so, again, as I'm looking through the budget and trying to figure out why we're giving big fat checks to people that aren't taking vacations, I really need to see that. I mean, that's huge, and we might have to change a policy there to make sure we're just not, you know, writing $30,000, $40,000 checks because people aren't taking vacation.
Yeah, certainly, it's, it's your prerogative to give us direction on what you'd like to see in terms of that policy. Those collective bargaining groups, collective bargaining agreements that I mentioned earlier cover 90% of our employees, and so, we are paying in accordance...
I'm not talking about our union employees. I'm not talking about collective, I'm talking about us. I'm just talking about regular folks that are not union employees, that are not part of collective bargaining. We've gotten some fat checks out, and I just want accountability for them.
The budget also includes the full funding for the third group of marshals that we talked about over the three-year program for funding the additional marshals. Last year's budget included the second tranche of those marshals, as well as a half-year of funding for that third group. This year's budget for fiscal year 2020 will include the full amount that's necessary to pay for those marshals over the course of the full fiscal year. We also are including staffing for Fire Station 103. As you recall, the firefighters and their staff from Fire Station 3 have moved over to 103 during the reconstruction of that fire station. Once that fire station is complete, then they will move back, and we will fund up the Fire Station 103 through additional 13 firefighters, engineers, and captains. We have also included, for the first time in several years in the operating budget, a $5 million contribution towards capital. One of the things we've talked about is the fact that some of our capital projects do not have a dedicated funding source to be able to pay for them. So, we have included an effort to try to fund up those capital assets so that we can stay caught up with what we need to do in terms of maintaining our infrastructure. Vacancy rate has continued to be applied to all departments. This assumes a 3% vacancy rate for all departments, with the exception of the Fire Department, the Fire Department, which has been budgeted the last couple of years at a six percent vacancy rate. We talked about the Metro increase. The Metro increase was requested of us for fiscal year twenty twenty was a six point four percent increase, which worked out to about nine point six million dollars over what we contribute for fiscal year twenty nineteen. We have been informed just late last week that Metro has upped their revenue estimate for their property tax, as well as reduced their ask for some of their civilian positions. So we're just in the process right now of getting some new numbers that we will incorporate before we come back with the final budget discussion in May. But we think that's about a two million dollar reduction over what they previously had been asking for.
And I would just like to point out that lots of times, they get their new police officers, and they end up on the strip, and we need to have them in our communities. We need neighborhood policing. We're having to, and that's why we have Shetland wanting to close off, and we have so many break-ins. So I just want to make sure that if they're, we're going to pay that much money, which originally, before you got the reduction here, was almost ten million dollars, I think we better make sure that our needs are taken care of as well as the strip. That's all.
Thank you, and I know that we did hear your request at the budget workshop last week, and we are getting you some information on the deployment of those officers by area Also, the budget includes the transfer of certain positions that are currently budgeted in the general fund over to the sanitation fund. This is primarily related to downtown sidewalk, storm drain, cleaning and sanitation efforts that are appropriate to be charged to the sanitation fund due to NPDES requirements. In terms of the dollars associated with the expanded requests, the additional thirteen marshals, that's about two point two million. The addition of the engine company for Station one oh three is about one point nine million. I also wanted to mention that we have implemented the recommendations from the ICMA studies that were done for the Department of Public Safety and the Fire and Rescue Departments. So part of that is the addition of this third item, which is additional public safety and fire staffing positions, as well as an increase in our medical supply contract, which is about two point five million dollars. We are increasing parks and medians maintenance funding. We have some additional parks that have come online, so there's funding for the park maintenance, as well as the utilities in those parks included in the budget. I previously had mentioned taking back some of these properties. Cashman and Central Library maintenance will cost about one million dollars, at least until we can find a new tenant for those properties. The increase in the Metro funding, I previously discussed, at nine point six million dollars. The cemetery, we're hopeful that we might be able to find another operator for the cemetery in the future, but currently, the contract is expiring next May, and so we do have to put some money in the budget in case we're not successful finding a new operator. We have some miscellaneous contractual and ancillary items, which are increasing in cost, about one point seven million dollars. And then we are asking for some monies to fund requests such as rate studies and additional vehicles for the new positions, and again, including the funding for the downtown loop program and the Animal Foundation's life-saving mission. The total of this list is about twenty-two point nine million dollars. And I should point out that the budget briefing notebooks that we provided have a tremendous amount of additional detail on all of these items, and I know there was also some additional requests to receive some of that information electronically so that you can sort it and look through it in various ways, so we're getting that information together for you as well. In terms of the additional positions recommended for this budget, we'll see in a few minutes how we're planning to fund these positions, but we are recommending thirty new positions be added to the general fund. There is a records position, the City Clerk's Office. There's eight new positions in the Department of Public Safety that are primarily for administrative support, but what they allow us to do, and this was part of the recommendations from the ICMA study, is it allows them to therefore free up work that marshals are currently doing that takes them off the, off their beat, so to speak, allows them to get more, more time in the field by having these administrative positions take over some of that work. The Fire and Rescue positions, again, are for Station one oh three. In Fire and Rescue, there's also additional positions, a senior management analyst, Fire Admin Battalion Chief, communications specialist, senior business specialist, and a Fire Fleet Supervisor. In the Operations and Maintenance Department, an additional maintenance worker and irrigation systems repairer, primarily that's for the new parks that are coming onboard. And then the Planning Department, the Historic Preservation Officer, which is being funded by the Centennial Commission License Plate monies. In the other funds, there's twelve point five additional positions recommended. The first seven or so of those are in the sanitation fund, two in Public Works, and five in the Operations and Maintenance side of that fund. In the Parking Fund, there's a zero point five FTE increase that's funded through parking fees. And then in the Development Fund, Development Services Fund, there's four additional positions that are necessary to try to keep up with development activity.
Can you define those a little clearer for us? Not right this second, but, and I just, I really, those positions, I would really like to have them defined a bit more.
The building and safety ones?
No, no, the last one that you just said, the development.
Yeah, so those, the three and the one that are listed as building and safety. So those are additional inspectors-
Okay.
-to be able to stay up with the building activity that's happening. So right now, we're in a peak of development activity.
Okay.
So in order to satisfy the needs of the development community who are paying the permit fees, which are paying for the cost of these positions, we have to add staffing to be able to keep up. Now, we know that the development cycle will come to an end at some point. We think it's going to run at least three years, based on the pipeline projects that are in place, and so as we see the development cycle start to come to an end, then we would be attritioning back down to a more normal amount of staffing, given the workload at that time.
Okay, and could you just give me an idea of what that starting rate is?
Sure, we can get that for you.
Great, thank you.
And Gary, if I might, please, not necessarily on these that you've given us today, but in the past, could you let us know more? You have the term, I think it's administrative analyst. Is that the term that's used over and over in our budget or in our positions? And we don't understand what that is, because it's in different departments, but we keep hiring new, what's it called? Is it administrative analyst?
Well, we have a management analyst, and then we have a senior management analyst. We have two levels. We have a management analyst, one and two, and then we have a senior management analyst position. And those positions are prevalent throughout the departments because the job description is fairly broad and allows those positions to support the department needs.
And that, you know, you asked us to look at maybe places we could cut, and I don't know what they do, so I couldn't analyze that. Maybe you can just let us know.
Sure, we can certainly get you those job descriptions and have a discussion about that.
Because those are the, those are part of the email that I had said, you know, on those, it said we had, we were looking at putting three different people in those positions. So they have to be clearer, and because, so what I'm learning in the last year and a half being on this council is lots of people, we're moving people around, we're changing positions, their pay, their pay scales going up to six figures, and I'm just really not sure it's warranted. So I just really need to be crystal clear, and as the council, we set budget. So it's my big concern to making sure that we are putting people in the appropriate positions or not putting people in the non-appropriate positions.
And then the last position on this slide is an Internal Service Fund for Fire Communications. It's a communications specialist supervisor position, and that fund is paid for by both the city, the county that contribute towards that fund. This slide shows you what I was alluding to earlier, which is as part of our efforts to address our structural budget deficit, the city manager created Team Twenty Twenty and reinstated what we call the Position Justification Committee, and we talked about this, I think, at your budget workshop last week, to be able to review all of the open positions as they come available. We have not been able to fund all of our expenses and all of our council priority areas, and the only way that we've been able to try to achieve the objectives that you set forward for us is to unfortunately have to make some reductions in other areas to be able to fund the things that are your highest priorities. And so what we've been doing with the Position Justification Committee is, as positions that have come open, that are not in critical areas, that are your top priorities, we've been freezing those positions in an opportunistic way to try to generate some savings to pay for some of the costs associated with the more important positions that you've asked us to fill. We are also now to the point where we've reached close to what our target is. Our target is to try to get to ten million dollars, and I'll show you why when we get to the five-year forecast numbers, but we're trying to get to that target. We're currently at about seven point six million dollars, and we're trying to get to the point now where, instead of being just opportunistic, we're going to be much more strategic. And so as we talked about last week, we're intending, starting next month with the Position Justification Committee meetings, as we have new positions come vacant that are not as important as some of the ones that are currently on the frozen list, we'll start swapping them out so that we get to a point where we're funding the most highest priority needs of all the city's departments in accordance with the priorities and the policy direction that you're giving us. So that's where we're heading with that. Unfortunately, it's unfortunate that we're having to do it because it's been somewhat painful for the organization to go through this exercise, but with our overall goal to not have to do any layoffs and yet still want to try to add positions in priority areas, it's the only way that we've really been able to achieve the objective of trying to fund up and staff up those priority areas without having to make reductions in staffing that have caused layoffs.
Well, thank goodness, we haven't created layoffs. But again, for the past year, I know that Mayor, the Mayor Protem, myself, I can't speak for other council members, but I know we've looked at positions. I know we've, we've sent our requests in, and I know that they just fell on deaf ears. So this time around, I'm just requesting, as the council, as the council that sets the budget and policy forth, that our requests do not fall on deaf ears.
I think he'll provide all the necessary information that you need.
So what we've tried to display in this chart is that the additional positions are in the new column on the left, and so you can see forty-two point five positions, thirty in the general fund, twelve point five in the other funds. And I'd mentioned earlier, there's a transfer of twelve positions that went from the general fund over to the sanitation fund. But the one thing I wanted to point out is, on a net basis, if you consider the frozen positions as being gone, which is what we're considering them to be, we're actually down positions as compared to the prior fiscal year. Even though we're adding forty-two point five positions, we currently have frozen seventy-seven positions, and it would take about roughly ten more positions or so to get to our overall target of ten million dollars. And then this next slide shows you the city's employee history over the course of the last dozen or so years, starting with fiscal year two thousand eight. At that point in time, you can see how the positions split between the blue portion of the bar, which is the non-public safety positions, and the public safety positions, which are the red portion of the bar. Now, since the, obviously, the top priority of this community, as well as pretty much every community across the country, is public safety, generally speaking, those positions were not, were basically held harmless during the Great Recession. So the majority of the reductions during the Great Recession came from the non-public safety positions, which is the same thing that happened in the previous two cities that I worked at during that period of time. But what you've seen coming back out of the recession is that the public safety side has actually grown and is now higher by about twelve percent of the level that it was at prior to fiscal year two thousand eight, while the non-public safety section, it came back somewhat as compared to the low point, but it is still about nineteen percent below the levels that it was at in fiscal year two thousand and eight. That's the struggle that we have with trying to fund all of the various service demands of the city.
And could I ask a question? When you ask your departments to cut, do they, at one time, we cut, every department had to cut a certain percent. Did we do that this year, or did we do it a different way this year?
We did not do that this year, because we had done that to, I think, two of the last three fiscal years. And at that point, we needed to make somewhat deeper cuts, so we had, I think, a two percent cut last year. I think we had like a half a percent cut three years ago. This point, we needed to cut the budget by about six or seven percent.
I mean, did every department, did public safety, did fire, did they all have to cut the same percentage, or did they?
Well, when we did the cuts, we actually held harmless the public safety departments. So I think for the most part, they were not cut last year.
And did you include, after one of our last conversations, a public meeting, I think it was, the fact that we think that there is public safety involved in Walker's Department as far as parks, safety in parks, repairing equipment?
We are working on responding to that question that you asked us. Right now, the Operations and Maintenance Department, which is the one you're referring to, that Jerry Walker is the department head over-
Right, right.
...has a number of positions on our frozen list, and obviously, having less positions makes it more challenging for him to run that department and try to maintain everything that he's obligated to maintain.
Right, and I know that he wasn't, you told us that wasn't considered public safety at the time, and at the time, then we mentioned to you some of the public safety concerns, for example, the benches I had that had rebar sticking out of them. I know a boy who was killed because he fell against rebar. And so, you know, that's public safety, and we also had to do some medical expenses once for someone who sat on one of our wooden benches in the older parks. It's just, it's just public safety is involved in a lot of different things.
Well, certainly, the challenges that we have and then the ability of our management team to try to figure out the best way to make reductions in these other departments to be able to fund the additional needs in the public safety departments and the homelessness efforts has been extremely challenging. We're doing the best that we can. We don't have it a hundred percent dialed in yet, but we're making progress towards getting where we're trying to get to. We have heard your concerns.
Okay, I just want to voice them again, because I know Michelle feels sometimes we're not listened to, so I'm saying it over and over again. It's just that, quite honestly, I'd take some from the homeless and make sure that the taxpayers who are paying the money to take care of the homeless have safety in their parks and places. Thank you.
Thank you. So the other thing I wanted to mention with respect to this chart is, we've had to live now for about a dozen years with significantly fewer positions in the non-public safety area. One of the things we've been able to accomplish, I think, is figuring out ways to work more efficiently and to be more effective in being able to provide a good level of service for our citizenry, but dealing with the restraints that we have on the revenue side. One of the things that we're putting money in the budget next year for is to try to bring in a consultant to help us re-engineer some of our programs and some of our efforts to figure out better ways to do things, given the new lower staffing levels that we have. And for example, in the Operations and Maintenance area, I know that Director Jerry Walker is looking at various ways to try to reduce some of the costs associated with our parks and streetscapes so that we can still have a high level of quality, but perhaps have lower costs. So we are making a lot of strides and progress towards those things, but they have been a big challenge for us. These next couple of pie charts show how the general fund expenditures break out. The first one is by category, and on this chart, you can see that salary and benefits is by far the largest category of our expenditures. And in fact, the gray slice along the left side of the chart, which is listed as Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, that slice, together with our salary and benefits slice, really is almost entirely salaries and benefits costs associated with staffing, either our own staffing or the staffing at Metro. And those two slices together add up to about seventy-nine percent. I think we were at eighty percent last year, so we're in the same ballpark as we were previously. This is not unusual for a city's general fund. The general fund primarily provides services that are provided by employees, and so this is by far the largest cost for our city's general fund. So anytime we start talking about trying to find ways to reduce costs, unfortunately, since eight out of every ten dollars of the general fund is related to salary and benefits, you really can't reduce costs dramatically without affecting the number of positions that you have in a city. The next largest slice, the non-labor slice, is primarily supplies and services and consultant contracts, and so that is where the next largest portion of our expenditures are by category. Looking at it by function, and these functions are the functions that are described and mandated to us by state law, and one of the things we added to this chart is a way to try to capture some of those homelessness costs in addition to the public safety costs that are required to be categorized by state law, and Councilman Coffin, this was your request. So if you look at this, the public safety slice along the bottom right-hand side is right about two-thirds of our overall city's general fund budget, but however, as pointed out by Councilman Coffin, that has not included all of our homelessness efforts. And so if you look at the box at the bottom left of this slide, we tried to give you a caveat that helps to include that, but we spent about fifteen million dollars on homelessness costs in fiscal year two thousand eighteen, so if you had added that to the public safety slice, that would bring that up from about sixty-seven percent to just about seventy percent.
Your Honor, I could ask a question. I'm not sure I would make this a question, but thank you for putting that in there, because at least it highlights what we have. I suppose you could do a pro forma and say, well, now, if you add that fifteen point two in there, then our public safety expenses are X and X.
It's a little tricky, because some of those costs are outside the general fund and are paid for by our Community Development Block Grant Program, but we certainly are spending, we're probably spending closer to twenty million dollars this current fiscal year on homelessness efforts, not even including the capital effort to build the homeless courtyard. And so what we're looking for now with the homeless courtyard is try to find funding to pay for the ongoing costs associated with the, with a new courtyard.
It's always good to remember that, and I don't know how much attention other people pay, but it's like homelessness is public safety, because it is, it's a curse on all the neighborhoods. That's, of course, it's a curse on the homeless, because most of them don't want to be homeless, but our agreement with the courts is that we've got to have a place for them, and that place, we have decided through all our actions for the last two years, is the courtyard. So we need, we need more money for it, which means we need to try to get some more support for AB seventy-three and on and on and on. Anyway, thanks for the portrayal. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. This table shows you the city's general fund, looking at a comparison of the actual costs and revenues for fiscal year eighteen, the estimated year-end for fiscal year nineteen, and then the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty. A couple of things to point out. In the fiscal year nineteen column, I mentioned during my presentation on fiscal year nineteen's year-end estimates, that we had basically an over-collection of revenues compared to budget, and we were slightly under budget in terms of our expenditures. There's two numbers on that fiscal year nineteen I wanted to point out, and they're towards the bottom of the ex- of the expenditure section. One is the transfer out to capital of thirteen point nine million dollars. And then the second one is the one-time augmentations. The capital will help us fund some of the backlog of capital projects that we have. And Councilman Coffin, again, this was one of the areas that you were concerned about. And then the six million dollars is going to help fund some of the one-time augmentations associated with some of the requests for fiscal year twenty, as well as trying to build up the fund balances in a couple of our internal service funds to get to appropriate reserve targets. The fiscal year twenty column does include the effect in the expenditure side of the seven point six million dollars worth of positions that are currently frozen. And so you can see that, even though there's a five million dollar surplus listed at the bottom of that column, that if we did not have those frozen positions, we would actually be in a deficit position of about two point five million dollars, which is the primary driver behind why we've taken actions during fiscal year nineteen to prepare for what we see coming in, in terms of a slowdown in the economy coming into the next several years. This chart just shows you kind of a trend over time. You can see that our revenues, which are displayed in the green line on this chart, declined fairly dramatically during the Great Recession and the several years thereafter. Therefore, we had to reduce expenditures accordingly to try to stay within the ballpark. We did rely on reserves pretty heavily during that time period, which is one of the reasons why it's appropriate to have a good amount of reserves. And we'll talk about reserve targets later in this presentation. As we come out of the recession, you can see that we've experienced fairly healthy growth. But at some point, we know that the economy will slow down again, and that we'll have to be prepared for that action. I mentioned the five-year forecast, and we went over the five-year forecast with you a couple of times, I think, over the course of the last couple of months. We have updated the five-year forecast based on the numbers that are in the tentative budget. We do continue to update the forecast as we get new information. And we do keep our ears to the ground in terms of trying to listen to the economists and what's happening, both regionally, nationally, and internationally, because they all come into play in terms of what happens here in Las Vegas, being a very tourist-dependent economy. We do see that when projecting out further on into the forecast period, that we are projecting a slowdown in some of our economically sensitive revenue sources. Not in fiscal year twenty, but in fiscal year twenty-one, we dropped the growth rate for consolidated tax from five percent down to one point five percent. Not a decline, but a slowdown. And then for property tax, the following fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty-two, we dropped the growth from four percent down to two percent. Again, not a necessary, not necessarily a recession, but perhaps a slowdown. This moderate slowdown in the economy, coupled with a imbalance in our growth rates between expenditures and revenues, has caused these red bars to show up on our five-year forecast. You can see in this first chart, which includes the effect of the frozen positions, that even with the frozen positions reaching the level of ten million dollars in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, that we would still project a deficit that fiscal year of about four million dollars. We have, during the course of this five-year projection horizon, an average revenue growth rate of about three point five percent per year, and an average expenditure growth rate of about four point two percent per year. That doesn't sound like much of a difference. It's about a point seven percent difference between the revenue growth rate and the expenditure growth rate. But point seven percent on a six hundred and forty or so million dollar budget works out to be about four or five million dollar shortfall every year. And because the budget, this number would compound, we would have to basically rely on reserves to be able to fund operations at the current level during this forecast period. The next chart shows what would happen if we didn't have the frozen positions. We would already be in a deficit position. We have currently about seven point six million dollars of frozen positions in the current fiscal year. If not for those frozen positions, we would currently be in a deficit. And then going into fiscal year twenty, we'd have to find other ways to reduce the budget, or not fund some of the priority areas of the council, to be able to balance the budget going forward. So that's kind of the challenge that we're facing when looking forward and seeing what's happening out there in the economy. This next couple of slides deals with the capital investment program. And so Jorge Cervantes is here to present those slides to you.
Thank you, Gary. For the record, Jorge Cervantes, Chief Operation Development Officer. So in putting together your capital improvement program, we use various funding sources. And this is a listing of what those sources are. Now, some of these sources come with certain restrictions. You can see a listing of some here, like the FISA at the loan tax, which is restricted for only improvements to city facilities, buildings. You see the one percent room tax that can only be used for transportation-type improvements. Community development block grant can only be used within those restricted areas. So some of these sources limit us what we can do with them. And then you see some other sources that are available that are more flexible, don't have some of those restrictions. Those include funding that's left over as we close out projects that were funded in previous capital programs. As those are closed down, there's a fund balance left over. We're able to transfer it into the new capital budget to continue allocating needs. You see a transfer that Gary referred to earlier, the thirteen point nine, that's really, we're anticipating being left over for fiscal year nineteen, that we're pushing over to meet some capital needs. And then in your capital, the operational budget for fiscal year twenty, you saw a line item for five million dollars that were recommended to go into the capital project, again, to address some of those infrastructure and, and city facilities that we were trying to catch up on. And then the medical reimbursement of nine point five million dollars that came out of fiscal year eighteen. Some of the major projects that we're looking at recommending this, recommending for funding this year include some fire service apparatus. These are the fire trucks that the fleet needs to continually be refreshed, and also some firefighting equipment, such as some of the respiratory equipment or some of the communication equipment that's reached the end of life cycle. We're also recommending some funding toward the corridor or Hope Courtyard, to finish off the funding that we need to be able to add the medical clinic to that component. And then last year, you funded the downtown courthouse, but that was for the funding of the building itself. This year, we need to fund the actual furnishing, fixture and equipment, as well as the security system for that building. And then some strategic land acquisition, we're recommending five million is put aside. So as those opportunities come up for some strategic land, whether it's for city facilities or for some economic development purpose, we have that ability to move quickly on that. So in your capital twenty plan, we have a total of about forty-one million dollars that we're allocating. Now, this forty-one million dollars doesn't include funding that we get from outside funding agencies. There's regional funding agencies that provide money for capital programs. Some of you sit on some of these boards, like the Regional Transportation Commission, Regional Flood Control District, some of these other funding sources that provide money for infrastructure. And you all, those boards, provide the money and we just carry it over into our program. Some of the major allocation we're doing this year with the forty-one million dollars, you see that seventeen million dollars goes to our public safety, which is about forty percent of our budget, again, trying to address those priorities that we hear from you. And so forty percent's going to our public safety. Another thirty percent, or twelve point one million, goes to city facilities, which is, again, trying to maintain our assets that we have, that we don't let them reach the point where they're no longer usable, but try to keep them in a, in a usable manner. And then the rest of it's going into neighborhood recreational facilities and other needs by our departments. So in total, we're funding sixty-four new projects for fiscal year twenty. But again, because this is a five-year program, our actual five-year program is about one point one billion dollars. And that's where a lot of the outside funding sources come in. That's the major funding source that we have for capital that goes into a lot of our infrastructure needs. And so with that, I'll turn it back to Gary for the redevelopment agency.
Thank you, Jorge. Next couple of slides deal with the city's redevelopment agency. In terms of fiscal trends, the assessed value has increased at a good clip over the last several fiscal years. And we're anticipating that to continue for the next several fiscal years as we get through the development cycle that we're currently in, which, as you know, has several very exciting projects, particularly in the downtown area and in Symphony Park. So we should see that AV growth continue at a good clip over the next couple of years. In terms of the tax increment revenue growth associated with that, we're expecting a seven point five percent increase in tax increment for fiscal year twenty. We will see the Smith Center continue to pay back a twenty million dollar note between the Smith Center and the redevelopment agency. We're expecting five million dollars during fiscal year twenty-twenty. We'll continue to market the medical district, Symphony Park Development, the office tenant incentive program. We are pursuing some additional funding for new market tax credits, and we have some additional allocation left to spend from the previous allocation as well. The contribution from the city which you approved this morning, or to the city that you approved this morning, is one point nine million dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty. And then we are still in the process of working through the canopy replacement project. And so as we look at the numbers on the next slide, you'll see how that plays through in our terms of our budget for the last couple fiscal years. The city hall park development across the street, there's some money that you talked about previously for acquisition of land associated with that. And then trying to fund up some of our smart cities efforts at the Bank of America Building and the Fifth Street School. This chart shows you, as we did with the city's general fund, the actuals for fiscal year eighteen, the estimate for fiscal year nineteen, and the budget for fiscal year twenty. As I mentioned, the Fremont Street Experience Canopy Project has made these numbers look a little bit strange. I wanted to explain why, why the numbers are what they are. If you look at the, the third row down of numbers, it's titled Other Contributions. In fiscal year eighteen, toward the end of the fiscal year, we issued bonds to pay for the canopy project. That was for the redevelopment agency and the FSE's share of the canopy project costs. The LVCBA, who is our third partner in that project, is paying us cash contributions towards the project. And so bonds came in in fiscal year eighteen, which was the reason that the, they're showing a large surplus in that fiscal year. And those bonds are being spent down over fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty, which is why you see what's shown as a shortfall in red in the excess shortfall line in both fiscal year nineteen and fiscal year twenty. But don't worry, because that's just the expenditure of those bonds towards the canopy project. The overall health of the RDA is in good shape. Wrapping up then, in terms of the total city budget proposed for fiscal year twenty-twenty, this chart shows you the general fund, which we talked about at great length, as well as the other fund categories, which were detailed in the budget detail books that we provided to you. In terms of a couple of colorful comments about these numbers and why they're up or down. In the special revenue fund area, we are making some recommendations on the fiscal stabilization fund, which I'll talk about in a couple minutes. The, the FSE project expenditures are primarily in fiscal year twenty, which is part of the driver behind the increase in that fund category. And then we've had some additional federal funding, which has also driven the cost and the revenue side up in that category. On the capital program, the carryforward of projects which weren't complete in prior fiscal years is the primary reason why the budget looks much higher than what we're actually spending in the current fiscal year and the prior fiscal year, as well as the contributions that we receive from those outside agencies that Jorge Cervantes alluded to a few minutes ago. On the debt service numbers, you'll see the rather large increase. So several years ago, in two thousand fifteen, the council authorized us to do what's called an economic defeasance of the city's bonds for the city hall project, because we have not yet reached the call date for that bond until fiscal year twenty-twenty. That money has been sitting in reserves. In fiscal year twenty-twenty, however, we will use those economic defeasance proceeds to pay off those original bonds for the city hall project. And so that's the primary driver behind that large increase in that category. In the internal service fund category, I mentioned that we're working on an accounting change to try to basically reduce the types of things that are accounted for in the city's employee benefits fund. And so, as I was mentioning, we're no longer accounting for non-productive hours, meaning sick leave and vacation leave, in the employee benefits fund. We're counting for those hours directly in the fund where that employee is housed. And we're also direct charging purse costs, starting next fiscal year, to the fund where those employees are housed. So we have more of the costs that are not double-budgeted, because in the past, they've been double-budgeted. They're budgeted as an internal service fund charge, let's say, in the general fund. And then the actual costs associated with the benefit have been budgeted in the benefits fund. That inflates our overall city budget. We're trying to try to streamline and make it more transparent, so that we can see those costs in a, in a better way and explain them better. So overall, our overall budget proposed for next fiscal year is one point eight billion dollars. The staffing level, which is shown here, is, as you see, up forty-two point five positions from the previous fiscal year. But as I mentioned, because we have those frozen positions, the actual number of positions that we're funding are down from the previous fiscal year. And then you can see how the city's population has grown over time. And so one of our challenges is trying to fund our services with an increasing population, but with less resources that are more, more difficult to try to balance.
Your honor, I have a question of Gary, if I could ask. Gary, the population numbers that you're using here seem low to me. Of course, thirty to thirty-three, and just, I can't tell if that's a year-to-year, or if it's a partial year to another year. Then it jumps up eleven thousand in FY twenty, but I have a feeling it's, it's higher than that. What are we using? What kind of estimates are we using?
So these are the official state demographer numbers that are the driver behind, for example, some of the state shared revenues, like the CTAX formula. So we use those numbers in our budget presentation. I know our planning department may have some slightly different numbers. We'll find out some real numbers, perhaps, when we get the census information after the twenty-twenty census. But these are the official state demographer numbers that we're using in this presentation.
So we won't, we won't get those official numbers for a couple of years. But county, doesn't the county have a pretty expansive and reliable population count they've been doing for a long time? I mean, I, I used to rely on it before I came here. I used to rely on it quite a bit. But maybe they don't assume that role anymore. Because I know we've got the utilities that do a pretty good count and an estimate, you know, all of them, because they need to know that. I just had a feeling we're a lot larger than this.
So we'll get you an answer to that question.
Thank you, Gary.
The last area that I wanted to talk about before we wrap up the presentation is that, you know, as part of our overall due diligence associated with the budget, we looked at pretty much everything that we could figure out how to address and, and make sure that we were in the best, budgeting in accordance with the best policies possible. There are some guidance. The Government Finance Officers Association provides guidance on overall fund policies and budgeting policies. The last time the city's budgeting policies came to the city council for review, we're in fiscal year, we're in fiscal year twenty-fourteen. And at that point, you adopted a resolution, adopting budget policies. They were primarily unchanged from the previous years. We have re-looked at those, and I've got some recommendations that we'd like to float out today and discuss over the course of the next six weeks before we come back for the final budget adoption on May twentieth. In the general fund, we currently have a fund balance target, a hard target of twelve percent of revenues, and an aspirational target of twenty percent of revenues. Most cities address their general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, because what you're trying to accomplish is having money set aside to be able to pay for the continuation of services, should your revenues become short of what you're estimating. And so one of our proposed changes is to change that target from as a percentage of revenues to a percentage of expenditures, which would make it in line with the Government Finance Officers' recommended budget practice. And then to set the target, since we're now at twenty percent, to set the target at a hard target of twenty percent, because we're currently at that target level, which I personally think is an appropriate level. The GFOA actually recommends that there's some variation in terms of a target for general funds, based on the economic conditions and, and the economic, the economy of that particular jurisdiction, and how prone it may be to natural disasters. For example, a jurisdiction may want to have a lower fund balance target or a higher fund balance target. Because we are in an area where we're highly dependent on the tourism industry, I think it's appropriate for us to have a twenty percent fund balance target, which provides us somewhere between two and three months of cash to be able to fund services, should we find ourselves in a declining revenue situation.
May I ask one more question, Mayor Pro Tem? Gary, it just dawned on me, and thinking in my mind, so I, about the county islands within the city limits. I have a feeling that our official figure does not include the population in there. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're only including those that are within our jurisdictional boundaries.
Okay. Then that does bear a subset, because there might be a hundred thousand people living in those or more. We're servicing them.
We are.
We are providing, you know, everything that they need. We just break down in budgets certain services that we don't, but it's generally everything. I think we should be considering what it would look like if we, if we really included all those people. Nobody else is servicing them. Well, they're in our, I'm sorry, a question came, how could you?
Well, I know, the county believes that they are, that they're servicing them.
I know, we need to make note of that.
We do provide sanitary sewer services for those county islands, but I'm not quite sure about some of the streets and parks and things like that.
Well, it's the roads they travel. It is the way in and out of those islands that uses all our services. And so there is a way to carve that up, and I, I think we should pay attention to that.
If there's, excuse me, if I might just state, also, I, there's got to be something we are able to do. I mean, we've got to think hard about it, because it isn't just the roads. I've talked to the county about the roads and things. We went through that last thing, and they'll say, well, you use our parks. And of course, they use our parks too. But the thing is, their problems are not solved by county people. Our office, and I bet you your office is too, get calls all the time. Because they're, they don't take care of the problems of individual, it doesn't seem they do anyway, of people who have, residents who have individual needs. And, and should we just say to them, no, you don't live in the, you don't live in the city? So we're not going to work with you? No, we help them out. But there's, there's just something we should be able to work, although they are mean. We tried one time to set it up so, you know, they would cover their cost of half of a street. We had half, they had half. And then the county people just drove through our ballast. Am I saying the right word? Yeah, they just, there's got to be some way that we can handle that. Maybe when we're off the council, we can just sit and think about that. There might be a way.
Thank, thank you for those thoughts. One of the other things that we have that's basically a safeguard for the general fund is a fund that was established during the Great Recession period called the Fiscal Stabilization Fund. That fund was funded up with monies that were cobbled together by taking cash out of other funds and closing many other funds in the funds and closing many other funds in the city. That fund currently has had a $13 million fund balance, basically, for the last five years or so. We believe that the general fund's current fund balance of 20% is sufficient for a general fund fund balance. And so, one of the things that we're going to be recommending is to try to figure out a way to basically close that fund out and use that cash that's sitting in that fund to fund some other things, primarily capital projects that don't have other funding sources to be able to support them, as well as to think about a creative way to try to establish a, what we're going to call a sinking fund, that would be a place that we could put some of this money in to help pay for some of the services that might otherwise not be able to be continued during the economic downturn. For example, we put a couple of them on this list, the Animal Foundation's Life Saving Mission. We've brought that forward to you as a decision-making process every year and asked you if you wanted to continue funding it. We've got the money in the budget, the same half-million-dollar level that we funded the last several years. But looking at the deficits going forward, we don't really see a way to fund those kinds of optional things moving forward without maybe setting aside some money now, when we have the cash, to be able to fund them over time. So, we're proposing putting some of that money in what we're calling a sinking fund, to be able to fund those kinds of programs that might otherwise be cut during a downturn. We have these internal service funds, and I'm going to go through a couple of them that we're recommending some changes to. The automotive internal service fund is where we pay for the maintenance costs associated with our vehicle fleet, as well as the replacement of that fleet when those vehicles reach the end of their useful lives. There currently is a fund balance policy of 10% of operating expenses and 25% of capital expenses from the prior year. Our recommendation is to change that slightly, to continue to be 10% of operating expenses, but to fund two years of projected capital in terms of the fund balance policy.
Hey, Gary, quick, thank you. When you say 10% of operating expense, is that 10% of overall operating expense, or 10% of operating expense of, of the department that the automotive of operate, and does that fall under operations and maintenance?
So, this is, this is, it does fall under the operations and maintenance department in terms of where it's managed out of, but this is sitting in a separate internal service fund. So, this fund has mechanics and supplies associated with maintaining the fleet of vehicles. And so, the operating costs are the people and the supplies and the equipment. And then, the replacement costs would be the money that's set aside for replacing those vehicles. Every year, we have a charge to the department that's actually the user of those vehicles to pay for, for example, the fuel costs associated with that vehicle, the maintenance costs for the replacement of tires and the tune-ups that those vehicles need during the year. And then, they also make a contribution towards the replacement account for that vehicle, so that when the vehicle needs to be replaced, the money has already been set aside. On average, we replace, you know, four to five million dollars or so of vehicles per year.
Right.
But it comes, it comes in peaks and valleys. It's not always smooth over time. So, the purpose of internal service funds is, they have, they tend to have spikes, and so, you put them, you put the money aside in internal service funds, it handles those spikes through having reserves appropriate to be able to fund those spikes when they do occur.
But it would be for that particular department, though?
It would be just, just for that particular, just for the people from that department that work in this internal service fund. So, it's the mechanics that are working in the vehicle replacement.
Yeah, and that's where the 10% of operating expense is for the 10% operating expense for the?
For the automotive.
Automotive, yeah.
Internal service fund.
Thank you.
Right. Each of these funds has a similar policy, as we'll see going forward.
Gary, could I ask a question also? We replace, for example, fire engines or trucks we use. Do we do it at a certain number of years of the truck?
The answer is, it depends. And so, we have a fleet manager that handles most of the city's fleet of vehicles, and then, one of the asks that we asked for as part of the budget going forward is actually for a fleet manager to manage the fire fleet of vehicles separately from the regular city fleet of vehicles. And so, the answer is, it depends. Certain vehicles, which are high-mileage use vehicles, may be on a mileage basis. Certain vehicles, which are not used a very number of miles per year, may be more on an age basis. But the fleet manager has various criteria that he uses to try to determine the overall lowest cost, life cycle cost for those vehicles moving forward, based on the salvage value of the vehicle, when the best time is to replace it.
I asked that question because I read of us, where a city needed to do what we're doing right now. And I forget the number of years, but every certain number of years, they usually changed the vehicles, because that was what they averaged out. However, in order to save money, they just added two more years, unless, of course, it was really something that was decrepit, they wouldn't keep it. But, and that might be something, we might add another year, and that might save some money, too, because that costs a lot of money when we replace the vehicles.
Right. There is, there is a sweet spot, and there's an answer that's more right than other answers, but there is no one answer for that question. I've worked in now four cities, and there's been slightly differing policies based on the determination of those fleet managers and the type of usage that those vehicles are getting. And so, we're fortunate that we have a very good fleet manager, who I think is doing an excellent job of trying to figure out where that sweet spot is, to try to get the most salvage value, value from a vehicle that we're replacing, but also trying to minimize the major repair and maintenance costs associated with that vehicle. Obviously, you want to get rid of it right before it needs to have an engine overhaul. But figuring out when that is, is kind of tricky.
Madam Mayor Protem?
Yes.
So, and also, you know, as I look at these words, right, they're just not crystal clear. It's like proposed, 10% operating plus two times the average of the last five years workers' comp claims paid. Give me a number. Don't, I don't want to do the math, I'm not Gary. Give me, give me a real number. So, is it 35%? Is it, you don't have to give it to me today, but I'm just asking. Like, be clear, this is not clear.
And you probably wouldn't like the existing council adopted policy, then, because the council adopted policy is 10% plus 25%. It doesn't have any numbers in it, because it's a percent-based policy, but.
So, it's like 35%?
Well, it's 10% of one part of the budget.
Right.
25% of another part of the budget. So, we will get you some additional information. We just wanted to kind of float these ideas out and start the discussion, because we have the next six or so weeks to work on the budget before we come back. On this page, the employee benefits fund is one of the larger funds of the city, or at least it has been. We have been including in that fund not only the major things you might think that are included in that fund, like our city's health benefits program and our purse costs, but we also have been including those non-productive hours, which was a very large expenditure item. But there's no real reason that it needed to be in that fund. It can certainly be in the funds where those people are actually receiving their salaries from. So, we had a 25% fund balance target in the current policy. We're recommending that be reduced to 10% of operating costs, plus two times the average of the last five years for the workers' comp component of that fund. That fund pays for all of our workers' compensation costs. Those compensation costs can fluctuate greatly over the course of several years, and so, we're recommending that the policy be established based on the average expenditures for workers' compensation costs over the previous rolling five years. And then, you'll see the same recommendation on the liability fund below, to move towards two times the average of the last five years, because there's a lot of spikes in those costs, and you need to have some reserves associated if you do have a year that's worse than what you might expect. Oops, I think I forgot. The bottom one on this slide is the reimbursable expense fund. This fund is a fund that's established to basically pay for the costs that are in the general fund that are associated with the redevelopment agency. So, they're just primarily pass-through costs. So, we had the same fund balance policy of 10% plus 25%. But we really don't need to reserve for operating costs for salaries and benefits, because we're just passing those costs through. So, when we have a payday, we pay the employees out of this fund, and we immediately pass the costs through to the RDA. So, we don't need to have the fund balance policy be that high. So, we're suggesting that we lower it to just the non-personnel costs. So, those are the kinds of changes that we're recommending to the policies, and it would take an action, a resolution action, to update those policies. So, we'll be continuing that discussion as we move forward in the budget discussions. In terms of the calendar, the state's required dates are shown on this slide. April 15th is the date that we have to file the tentative budget. So, the proposed budget, tentative budget that we brought forward to you today, we will file that in the next week or so. We will get you a complete copy of that budget book that we file with the state. You already have the two large notebooks, and we know you've asked for some additional materials to be able to help you with your deliberations. We're happy to help you in any way that we can to get that information in your hands, so that you can help us adopt a good budget for next fiscal year. The budget hearing, which is the state-required hearing on the final budget, is scheduled for May 20th. I know you all have that on your calendars already. That is a special meeting date, because the way the state's budget calendar worked, we couldn't have it on one of our regular first or third Wednesday meeting dates. It didn't work out with our calendar. So, we had to schedule a special budget hearing to be able to accommodate that, in order to be able to file the final budget by the state-required June 1st. And then, the final CIP budget has to be filed by August 1st. Just in terms of key budget takeaways and comments, as we close the session today, as I pointed out during the five-year forecast presentation, looking forward and projecting our revenues and expenditures forward, based on current information and our best projections for the economic activity in the next couple of years, we see that there's a structural budget, structural budget deficit in our five-year forecast. It's about a 7/10% difference between the average revenue growth rate at 3.5% per year and the average expenditure growth rate of 4.2% per year. We're trying to make some expansions in the areas that we know that you're most interested in, primarily public safety and funding for metro, marshals in the city's parks to add additional security. We're looking at programs in the fire and rescue department to try to reduce our costs while maintaining higher levels of service. We know that we need to fund the homeless courtyard project that we're in the process of building right now. Currently, that is not included in this proposed budget. As you know, you approved a bill draft request to go up to the state legislature. We're still hopeful that something might happen with that, but we're not real positive at the moment. We do have some other alternatives that we'll be bringing to you. If that is not successful, to try to find a way to fund that courtyard project and the ongoing costs associated with it. We continue to work with the Team 2020 ideas. We mentioned at the council briefing yesterday that we had over 400 ideas that were generated through that effort. Many of those ideas are being implemented in this budget, but there's a number of them that are negotiation-related, that we've introduced. Some of them we've introduced during the negotiations this year with the bargaining groups, but that is a, as with all contracts, that is a two-party agreement, so we can't mandate those changes. They have to go through the collective bargaining process. But we're hopeful that that may help reduce the growth rate in our expenditures, at least that's our goal going forward. And then, there are many of those ideas also that will take several years to come to fruition. For example, we're in the process right now of replacing our aging telephone system. That's actually going to save us money, even though it sounds like we're spending money, but it has a payback of only a couple of years before we actually will see that savings. So, those types of ideas and trying to figure out ways to work smarter and work better will help us minimize the impact on services by funding up some of the service areas that are your highest priority. And then, we've made some recommendations with respect to vacancy management. I described the process that we're going through. We're trying to be more strategic over the course of the next several months to try to swap out some positions that are perhaps more important than some of the ones that are becoming vacant over the next several months.
And if I, if I might also ask, because you, we had been asked to look where we might be able to save money. Could you take the Department of Administrative Services and let us know what each of those people do, because that seems, of all the departments, to percentage-wise, have grown most rapidly? And I don't know if we're just taking from one place to another what's happening, but if you could let us know the costs for each of the positions and what the people are doing.
We can. In fact, I know one of the requests we got from Councilwoman Fiore was to give you, I think, a three-year schedule showing how budgets in departments have changed over time.
Okay, that would do it.
So, that will hopefully help with that, with that ask. And then, the last one on this slide was, this is a good opportunity. We're in a period right now where revenues actually have been coming in higher than our budget, so it's a good time to set those monies aside and try to work through the backlog of capital needs that we have as a city. So, we're recommending, as part of this budget, to put a lot of those monies towards those capital needs.
Thank you.
And that is our presentation today. And we thank you for the questions that you asked, but I'm happy to answer other questions. And we have all the department heads here as well, if you had some department-specific questions.
Councilman Coffin would like to ask a question.
Thank you very much. This won't take long. Again, thank you for portraying the estimated cost of homelessness that's scattered across all the budgets. I hope, I don't know if Ted Olivas is watching this, but he, I don't think the team in Carson City has that number, and they need to be able to use that number to show, it's one example of why we need to have Assembly Bill 73 or some other source of funds to take care of that, or we're just going to be displacing more and more of our budget into activities that rob services and frankly endanger the public. So, that, that's a problem. I think I'm happy with what you've presented here. I suppose I would have wanted more out of Jorge's explanation of the CIPs and looking for more of that running accumulated deficit that I think we're running with our capital And thirdly, I'm sorry that the alumni, the Legislative Alumni Meeting up there is the 17th, same day as a council meeting here, because some of us who were former legislators, who have served in local government, really need to be up there to help at least attest to what our teams are trying to tell the legislators. They're under tremendous pressure. At the same time, I think those who have been in both venues, local and state, can vouch for the support we need. Because right now, I think I saw one number, I think Ted and Kelly may have said, "It was like $100 million in unfunded mandates at this point for us." Now, most likely with the other local governments, we'll beat that back, but some of it will survive. And so, you've got that, but you don't have it in here. It's not in our budget.
That's right.
So, a lot could be done in the next 60 days in Carson City or less, if we did make a show up there. And I would like to take the councilwoman up there, and I'll even buy her dinner if she'll go. And hey, we might even be able to call Beers and say, "Beers, come on up," because we need bipartisan representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Gary, I just want to thank you and all of the staff, and so, I look forward to working through this again, as we did last year and every year, as the budget comes forth. I think that the more we do these budgets and the more we request, the more you'll understand what we're looking for. And, you know, as I look at and ask questions on payroll and growths and, you know, these big payouts, it's not because I don't think each and every one of you deserve them, but when I'm looking at a red, you know, a red line and we're in a deficit, we must be responsible. So, I just want to thank you, Gary, for all your hard work.
Madam, Gary, thank you.
Madam Gary?
Madam Mayor Protem, through Madam Mayor Protem, via Gary. In the budget, first budget, meeting we had, I had asked for some information. It might have been sent to me, and if it did, I maybe I missed it. For a specific carve-out, I know it's within the budget of what dollars are being allotted for our Ward Five Works project, specifically overall. I know there's a CIP that's there. What is specifically budgeted for our Hundred Plan, for the revitalization of the historic West Side? What money is being allotted for that specifically? We have our Veterans Plaza, which we talked about, and then, just a breakout for overall homelessness. I would appreciate if someone could get that to me. And like I said, they might have sent it to me, I don't think, but maybe they did. And if they did, I apologize, but somebody needs to send it to me again.
And then, also, last year, we had a ward-specific, like, budget, and I know we looked at that. And I know I have to say, with Ward Six, it's, I'll use our Tulley Springs hay barn as an example. That was our first priority, is to get that hay barn up and fixed. And because of red tape and all this stuff, I finally got you some contractors to donate some stuff, and we're cleaning it up and making it nice. But I would like to also know what the Ward Six budget, ditto what Councilman Creer said, and, and so, where's our money? What are we doing? I know Jerry Walker's working on changing some, some schedules, so we have some of our maintenance departments on weekends picking up the garbages in the park, because they're full, versus that. So, I would just like dates and, and times and dollars on, on Ward Six.
And then, one more I'd like to have, just for discussion. When I first got in office, we traveled looking at homelessness. And as you know, the travel that we did seems should fall under homelessness travel, instead of out of our personal Ward, Ward budgets for, for travel. So, if I travel to National League of Cities, then that might fall out of my, my budget. Or if, but if I'm going to San Antonio looking at workforce, then that shouldn't necessarily, in my opinion, come out of a, our specific Ward budget. It seems like it would fall under the category of the budget of the program that we're traveling on behalf of. And I wanted to know if we could discuss that and if there's any more climate within the council to further sort of readjust those things. I guess the money's the same, but I think we get hit off of trying to assist in programs that are important to our wards. Thanks.
Yeah, we increased the Ward discretionary, we call the discretionary budgets, last year up to $35,000 per Ward. We've maintained that amount in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, but if you'd like to make a recommendation on that, we'd be happy to entertain that.
Well, that would be my recommendation. I mean, look, if we're allotting, I'm gonna say, $20 million towards homelessness, and that includes all the ancillary things that go along with it, should, if we're going to different parts looking at, and if some of my colleagues have traveled with us, I mean, should that fall out of our specific Ward Five office budget? Or should it fall under the homeless budget?
Right.
It seems to me that it should fall under homeless budget, because it's a homeless initiative which we're looking for. It's not a Ward Five, per se, "I'm going to DC for a whatever." That seems to be different than specifically going for whatever it is under the premise of what it is.
You know, and I have to echo Councilman Creer, simply because the way the budget is designed, it's actually designed to attack elected officials.
Yeah.
So my emails get foiled, I just got foiled again, saying, "I want to know where Councilwoman Fiore's gone with the city." Well, I traveled to San Antonio to deal with homelessness. Is that a party? It's part of my city job. So why would that be in my Ward budget? And why wouldn't that be defined? I mean, I don't need people, Las Vegas Review-Journal, saying, "We're going all over the world and all over the country on taxpayer dollar, not realizing we're fixing homelessness." So we really, you guys really gotta get that together.
We certainly will take your direction, and it's been our past practice to have you charge all of your trips, including ones associated with programs, to your Ward discretionary budgets. But if it's your direction to do that differently, we can certainly entertain that as part of this discussion.
Yeah. I would just like to have a conversation about it. I'm not the CFO. I'm not here to tell you which direction to go in, but it just seems as though it would fall under that versus, because it's not really discretionary, right?
Yeah.
It's not discretionary. Discretionary is much different than falling under a specific program that we are working on behalf of.
Mr. Creer, I think that is something we can discuss, to see which way we go and what direction we go. And Gary, you'll make sure we are able to discuss that at some time.
Thank you.
On the item that we have, item 41, before I start losing council members, we don't have to make a motion for acceptance, except that we accept your report. Is that correct?
Well, basically, we're just basically here to present the tentative budget that we're going to be filing with the state.
Right.
So I don't believe that there's any action required today. But we are looking for your direction, and any changes that you'd like us to see with the tentative budget moving forward before we get to the final budget hearing on May 20.
So we don't need a motion. We just need to know that if we want to make suggestions to let you know so that you can move forward.
Yes.
Thank you very much for such an excellent report, Gary. It was really very good. Thank you very much. I'm going to move on quickly to instructing the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements.
Thank you.
And then we will have our final citizen participation. We did have someone, I don't know if they waded through all this, Dorothy Barnes? Is Dorothy here?
She's over there sleeping.
Is Dorothy sleeping?
She's not feeling very well.
Ouch, oh, okay. And we won't bother Dorothy. If she is not feeling well, we will not bother her. But I did call her name here, and if she seems to be getting awake, please let me know. And David Gomez, is David here to speak? David's an owner and president of the Nevada Peace Alliance.
Can you hear me?
Yes, would you please?
Okay, good afternoon, David Gomez.
Thank you.
President of Nevada Peace Alliance, also a CCSD Commissioner with AZAC. On my fourth term, I'm also Deputy Director of LULAC, League of United Latin American Citizens for Education. I'm also a legislative lobbyist for education and a business owner here in Las Vegas. My father built Carpinteria Corporation some time ago in 1977 here, and I believe it was in your district.
It is, on Charleston.
That statue there or that big monument that's there, thank you for leaving it there and putting it in the historical district.
We've asked everybody to keep it there. We've asked everybody to keep it there. It's sort of part of our history.
Yes, because that's a replica of my Uncle Ted, my dad's brother. And he passed away, but, you know, I thank you for leaving it there, so every time I drive by, I get to see Ted, even though he's not with us anymore. As a business owner, I'm here today because I bought a commercial property with my wife on 133 Northeastern Avenue, and I'm in Coffin's area. And there's not an issue with that. It's just that the city of Las Vegas needs to fix some kinks with their business licensure and their business department with license, because I applied for a license, nobody never told me to go to planning. Now, our first business that we have there, we do document preparation, we have taxes, we have services that we help with, tickets and legal, other legal things that we do out of there with attorneys. But when I divided the building up and I followed every procedure, went to the DMV, also did the Secretary of State and my bonds and everything, I actually came out of my pocket almost $4,000. Then when the fire department shows up, they say, "Hey, you know what? I'm sorry to tell you this, but did you talk to planning?" No, I didn't. Nobody told me to, after I already paid the city and I gave all the money to the city. Then they say, "Well, you know, unfortunately, you're not in a zone that you can open a dealership in the back part." And I said, "Well, we have C1, C2 all around us. We have all these different zones around us. What do I need to do?" Well, you know, you need to pay $5,000, and you need to make sure you put yourself on these agendas and get these things done before we can move forward with that. And there's no promise. So after I spent X amount of dollars, that it's obviously not your guys' fault, that no one's fault up here, but someone in that office is not following some kind of procedure and they're not going through a protocol and saying, "Hey, please..."
I think those comments are very good comments to make to us, and I know our licensing person is not here, but Karen, could you just let him know whom he should call? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry, I didn't see you in the shadows there with Robert. Would you, Karen raised her hand there, if you would go talk with her, because, I mean, Mary, excuse me, Mary. And if you would, because she is, and Karen, all of them are working hard, and Mary's working very hard in licensing to make it better, because you're right. And I wonder why sometimes that planning doesn't tell the people to come to our office so they can talk with us also during that time. So you'd want to go to planning and licensing and our office in case there are other problems of which planning may not be aware.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Mr. Coffin.
Thank you. I did see David in a brief recess, was it this morning or this afternoon?
Yes, it was this morning, sir.
And anyway, Edo from our office has met with David, and we're going to try to help in any way we can, if it's possible. Thank you.
Yes, and he did explain to me to talk to Edo, and I did. But, you know, I just wanted to, you know, make, oh, thank you, ma'am. Your honor.
And she will help you, and we are grateful that you come to us and let us know, because sometimes you're so busy with so many things, you don't catch these glitches.
Yes. Yeah, and it's no problem. I mean, as long as someone informs me, and I will follow procedures and do the protocols as required of us as business owners and as citizens here. My son, I have six children here, and that's a lot of children, but maybe I didn't have enough TV, who knows?
Yeah.
But, you know, it's one of those things where I work with the community, I give back to the community, and my services to my own business, it pays for me to be able to volunteer to Clark County School District and to do the legislating lobbyists and different things like that, non-paid, because I ask nothing from no one. I do it as a service because it's my duty and my civil service to the community. I love Las Vegas. It's my city. It's my home. It's my children's home. My son became a Marine. He left Charles I West Prep. I fought for 10 long years for Charles I West Prep Elementary School to be built, with a lot of the ministers in the West Las Vegas area, with Marzett Lewis and a lot of different people that were out there.
And you don't even know that I was the vote that got you that.
I, thank you.
And you didn't even know that some of the people in the ward I represented were not happy with me because I did that, but...
But you know what? It was a good thing, and that was an excellent thing for those kids there, because it's better that they had a school than to have a portable.
And I knew that my ward would get the money donated some other way, because they had more monies behind them, and they did. So then we ended up with two schools instead of one. But I'm very happy that you helped there.
That's an excellent thing, and I appreciate it, because it helps all the children, and it lets them see a hope, and it lets them know that somebody does watch and do care about the things that they do go through.
Yes, so...
You know, but I just wanted to, you know, leave the comment that, you know, I heard some of the things with your guys is with your fleet, you know, you guys should try to look at things like UPS. UPS is one of the largest fleet companies that have fleets, and they just follow the leader, you know, and they have things that break down. I'm pretty sure that you can follow some of those examples. And as an ex-fire for UFC, I know one thing.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
When I used to train...
How long is public comment?
How long is public comment?
Oh, I'll cut it off right now.
I will tell you.
I'll get it out your face.
Obviously, I was over-interested in what you were saying.
But, you know, I appreciate you guys listening, and I just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, some things need to be fixed, and it does hurt when we do run into these brick walls.
Okay, and we thank you very, very much for coming.
Thank you.
We'll move quickly to item 73 before I lose. Oops, he left already, didn't he? I was going to go right to Anthony. And here I...
I'm passing.
And we have Coffin who's passing, and not really, I hope, but...
Well, in a few years.
In a few years, all right? And how about Michelle? Would you like to say something?
So you guys, so do you see this mask that I'm wearing on my face? It's because we are going to be giving these out at our movie in the park for The Incredibles this Friday at 7:00 PM at our Centennial Hills Amphitheater Park. So come and watch The Incredibles and get your Incredibles face mask. We'll have free popcorn and water. And we have completed stuffing our 35,000 Easter eggs for our Egg Stravaganza on Saturday, April 13th at 10:00 AM. We're going to be having two big fields. We're having a special needs field with our own bunny there, and we're having our other field with our own bunny for all the kids to come out and do Easter egg hunt, and it's just going to be amazing. And that same day, on Saturday, April 13th, after we do the Easter egg hunt at the Mountain Ridge Park, Durango Drive in Elkhorn, we are going to listen to our Travis Brass Band at Centennial Hills Park, U.S. Air Force Band of the Golden West. So that's going to be on April 13th at 2:00 as well, and they are incredible. If you haven't heard them, you're going to love them. And I have to tell you, prepare for our huge, huge, big Cinco de Mayo on May 5th, Sunday May 5th, from 1:00 PM to 6:30. We are having our big band, our Jesus Marcos Delso Mexico Band there, and Commissioner Kirkpatrick and Councilwoman Stavros Anthony will be doing, all three of us are doing this big event together, and we're going to have mariachi bands from all of our high schools. It's just going to be huge and big, and tacos and tequila and all the stuff that happens in Ward Six stays in Ward Six, and we're going to have a big party. So come on out, and I'm going to invite the press so they understand all the thousands of people that attend our events out there. So now, some serious stuff, I have to tell you, I'm very excited. We have located Marcus Mendez, who is a 16-year-old male, so he has been located, thank God. And we still have a missing juvenile, Angel Keel. She's 16-year-old female, 5'4", 144 pounds. Please, if you see her, please call Las Vegas Metro Police or our Nevada Childseekers. And I have to tell you, Nevada Childseekers do such an incredible job finding these children. We're also missing Haley Horwitz. She's 14, she's only 14. She's a female. She's 125 pounds. She's got blue eyes and black hair. So please help find Haley. And I want to just say, have a great rest of the week, and we'll see you on our next council meeting.
And Mr. Creer?
Thank you very much, Madam Pro Tem. So I'll be hosting a book signing reception in honor of Senator Joe Neal for his new book release, The West Side Slugger. This book tells his lifelong fight for social justice and his 32-year tenure with the Nevada Legislature. So join us this Saturday, April 6th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the West Las Vegas Library, which is 951 Lake Mead Boulevard. If you have any questions, you can always contact my office at 702-229-5443. April 10th, the Nevada Preservation is a local historic preservation nonprofit who focuses on the retention and revitalization of our community's historic buildings and resources. NPF's newest branch focuses on community revitalization, and NPF recently established a revolving fund for neighborhood revitalization in the historic West Side. The revolving fund is a real estate development tool that will focus on rehabilitating vacant and abandoned properties, starting with vacant homes located within the historic West Side community. The primary goal is to revitalize some of the vacant, derelict housing that's prevalent within the historic and older neighborhoods in the West Side. NPF will restore the homes back to their historic quality, focused on vacant housing that was built in the 1940s, 50s, and 60s. The next meeting is taking place Wednesday, April 10th, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Historic West Side School. For more information, call the Nevada Preservation Foundation at 855-968-3973. Bolden Area Command will host a farmer's market at Liberty Baptist Church on Thursday, April 11th, at 6501 West Lake Mead Boulevard on the corner of Lake Mead and Torrey Pines. They have free, healthy fruits and vegetables while supplies last. You can always contact their office to find out more information. Strong Start Go will host an open house on April 12th from 9:30 to 1:00 PM behind the West Las Vegas Arts Center located 947 West Lake Mead. A fun family event is planned. You will have an opportunity to tour the new mobile preschool and talk to the preschool instructors. Also, information will be available about Strong Start Preschool Academies. Refreshments will be available while supplies last. For more information, call the office, 702-229-5443. April 20th, we have an egg hunt. The City of Las Vegas, the Armed Forces Chamber of Commerce, KCP Power 88 Radio, and other community organizations will host an egg hunt for children between the ages of five and 12 years old on Saturday, April 20th, at 10:00 AM at the Historic West Side School, 330 West Washington Avenue. There will be bouncy houses, carnival games, contests, prizes, live music, special guests, workshops, vendors, and refreshments, and the event is part of the We Are One Community Tour. For more information, visit www.AmmedForcesChamber.com. Once again, we're going to have our Ward Five Community Conversations, and it'll be held on Thursday, the 25th of April, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, back at Tenea Creek Brewery, 831 West Bonanza Road. We had our One in the Morning last week, which went great. Come and join in the conversation, discuss matters important to you. For more information, contact my office, 702-229-5443. The Las Vegas, West Las Vegas Arts Center is registering for Saturday classes and the summer performing and visual arts summer camp, which is absolutely amazing if you haven't seen them. For registration information, visit recreation.lasvegasnevada.gov. And free income tax preparation for seniors and low-income residents. Volunteers from AARP, an Internal Revenue Service Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, offer residents free assistance with personal income tax form preparation and electronic filing at five city Las Vegas senior or community centers through mid-April. This service will be provided at the Doolittle Senior Center by appointment. For more information, call 702-229-6125 or 702-229-6454. Don't forget, you can always get in touch with us on social media, Twitter at Cedric Creer, Instagram, Councilman Creer, and Facebook, Councilman Cedric Creer. Thank you, and thank you to all the voters once again in Ward Five for your continued support. It's humbling to serve you as your Ward Five Councilman.
That was nice.
That was so professional.
That was nice. It sounded like a radio.
I wanted to move quickly. Lastly, I want to say before I get into what has already been scheduled, that April 6th, beginning at 5:00, we're having a thank you, appreciation gathering with food and entertainment and everything, and it's to say thank you for the people who live in Ward One and also for all the staff that has helped Ward One. So I hope as many of you can come, because I've served that 14 years, and I couldn't have been elected last time if someone hadn't just stepped in and taken care of the election, quite honestly. And I couldn't have done anything anywhere near what I've accomplished if it hadn't been for everybody who works here in the city who's helped us. And please bring your families. And also thanking everybody within the Ward One who started the neighborhood associations, who's been in there and who's showed up for short-term rental problems, and who's been here all the time backing what we're trying to do in innovative and exciting ways in Ward One. So come April 6th, please. It's at the park, and I can't remember the name of the park. Sorry. Where is it?
Bob Baskin.
That's what I thought it might be. Bob Baskin Park at 5:00, April 6th. Going to have good food, going to have great entertainment. Bring your children, just have a time and relax, and let's be happy and savor what all of us together have been able to put together that has helped Ward One. I wanted to say a last reminder on the Neighborhood Partners Grant. I know I mention it often, but it's so important for districts that are within the poorer areas. The application deadline is Thursday, April 18th, just about two weeks from now. The program grant's set to $5,000, which must be matched by the neighborhood. to $5,000, which must be matched by the neighborhood, and to be eligible to apply, neighborhood associations and homeowners associations or business associations must have a primary purpose, which is neighborhood improvement, be located within the city of Las Vegas, be registered with our Office of Community Services, have a majority of the association members living or operating businesses in the neighborhood, and demonstrate neighborhood support for the proposed project and program. We've had beautification, we've had fake dogs that were warnings in senior little homes, mobile homes, we've had many, many different things that have come and helped our neighborhood, and it's not hard to raise the matching funds, because for every call you make, for everything you do, you're paid the amount of money that a regular person would be paid, and that's part of the match you make. Then we have our Neighborhood College, the city's new program, which helps educate residents about different city departments, programs, and resources, and the First Neighborhood College Series is within Wards One and Two, although residents from other wards are welcome as well. The program runs seven weeks on Thursday nights from April 18th, which is coming up again in about two weeks, it'll go to June 6th. For more information and to reserve your space in the program, please contact 702-229-2555. And we're going to have a Southern Nevada Health District Baby Bash on Friday, May 3rd, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the District Office located at 280 South Decatur Boulevard, where the old Target used to be located. The event will include immunizations, vision screenings, and a health fair, parents should bring their child's immunization records and insurance card. For more information, please call the Health District at 702-759-0850. And lastly, as we make our jaunt into the neighborhood to see how things are going, we see all those tie, you know, all those very, very high weeds, we've had quite a bit of rain this winter, when rainfall is higher, so are the grass and weeds, and going through the ward last week, we noticed the overgrowth in all parts of the ward, and we want to remind the people who own homes that city code requires homeowners to trim weeds and grass that are over eight inches in height. We realize this has been a wet few months that we've had, we realize that we all have weeds growing highly, we also realize even in the city, we can't keep up with these weeds because they're popping up in our, all over the place. So please be sure, however, as residents, to make sure the weeds are cut or taken away somehow, and I just want to say, thank you, everybody, I'm going to, I'm really having fun these last three months, the mayor told me it was three, so I guess it is, and it's a wonderful group we're working with, we have our disagreements, but I think that we'll work out everything because we're very nice people, all of us, take care, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.
Well done.
That's it.
Well done.